Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
During the current state of emergency due to COVID-19, the public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes depending upon the number of speakers.
Good evening and welcome to an online closed session meeting of the Burbank City Council on Tuesday, April 26, 2022. Mr. City Attorney McDougall, will you please state the items on the agenda? Yes, skip the page? Okay, there you go. Page two. Welcome to Burbank City Council Joint Meeting with Successor Agency, Housing Authority, and Parking Authority on Tuesday, April 26. I'm still learning the job. I have invited Jennifer Becker, Director of the Financial Services and Department, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Becker, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Please stand, put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Madam Assistant City Clerk, please conduct the roll.
Councilmember Frutos.
Good evening.
Good evening. Councilmember Schultz.
Present.
Councilmember Springer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anthony.
Present.
And Mayor Talamontes.
Present.
There will be one period of general public comment tonight. If you would like to participate, please call now at 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin public comment. We have two announcements this evening.
The following are announcements for April 26, 2022. The Burbank Parks and Recreation Department, in collaboration with RJM Design Group, is conducting public engagement to help identify the needs of Burbank residents and stakeholders regarding future improvements to George Isaiah Park, including the park's amenities, facilities, and buildings. You are invited to the in-person community presentation and feedback workshop this Thursday, April 28, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Olive Recreation Center. During this presentation, participants will preview the results of the community outreach, review outreach methodology, and review the plans prepared by community members that attended the Design Charette Workshop on March 16. We look forward to seeing you there. To register, please visit burbankca.gov/isaamasterplan. Please note, space is limited for this event. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one resident-required vacancy on the Sustainable Burbank Commission for an unexpired term ending July 31, 2023. The deadline to submit an application is Friday, May 6, at 5:00 p.m. If interested, apply online at burbankca.gov/BCCapplication. Vaccination proof or medical religious exemption will be required of all applicants. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851, or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
As a reminder, if you would like to participate in general public comment, please call now at 818-238-3335. We have two council presentations on the agenda this evening. The first presentation is the proclamation declaring April 28, 2022 as National Holocaust Remembrance Day in the city of Burbank. Whereas the Holocaust was the state-sponsored systemic prosecution and annihilation of European Jews by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, and whereas over 6 million Jews were murdered and millions more were persecuted, Roma, people with disabilities, Poles, LGBTQ Jehovah's Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political opponents also suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. And whereas the city of Burbank should always remember the terrible events of the Holocaust and remain vigilant against hatred, persecution, and tyranny. And whereas pursuant to an act of Congress, Public Law 96-388, the United States Holocaust Memorial Council designates the days of remembrance of the victims of the Holocaust, known as Yom Hashoah, to be recognized by cities across the nation. Now, therefore, just say, "Talamontes," may the city of Burbank do hereby recognize the days of remembrance on this day, April 28, 2022, in the city of Burbank, in memory of the victims of the Holocaust, and in honor of the survivors, as well as the rescuers and liberators. I proclaim that we, as citizens of the city of Burbank, should work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. Joining us this evening to accept this proclamation are the co-presidents of Burbank Temple Emanuel, Limor Simskin, and Lauren Connor. Thank you both for being here tonight, and welcome.
Thank you so much, Mayor Talamontes, and hello, everyone. Good evening. So, this week, we observe both Holocaust Remembrance Day and Armenian Genocide Remembrance Day. And both of these annual commemorations deeply impact and connect the people of Burbank. This year especially, given what is happening in Ukraine, we need to remain vigilant in our work to protect the lives and the freedom of those who are caught in the political crossfires. I want to pass it up to my work wife, Lauren.
Burbank Temple Emanuel is honored to be part of this community of Burbank for 75 years and counting. We have families that have been with us since the beginning, and we continue to welcome new members of all ages into our community. If anyone here is interested in learning more, check out our website, bte.org, or give us a call, and someone will get back to you. Thank you very much, Mayor Talamontes, and the entire City Council of Burbank for this honor.
Thank you for being here. Next is the presentation of our proclamation declaring April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and April 27, 2022, as Denim Day in the city of Burbank. Whereas the United States Government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and Denim Day has been declared on April 27, 2022, and whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Denim Day were instituted to call attention to misconceptions and misinformation about sexual violence and the problem that many in society remain disturbingly uninformed with respect to issues of sexual harassment, assault, abuse, and rape. And whereas every two minutes someone in America is sexually assaulted, approximately one in five women are raped during their lifetime, and youth under 18 accounts for about 44% of all reported, at least 25% of women experienced sexual harassment in the workplace. About 75% of harassment victims experienced retaliation when they reported it. And whereas the city of Burbank strongly supports the efforts of local agencies such as Zonta Club of Burbank and Family Service Agency to educate our community about the true impact of sexual harassment, abuse, assault, and rape in Southern California, now, therefore, I just say, "Talamontes," may the city of Burbank do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and designate April 27, 2022 as Denim Day, and urge everyone to wear jeans on this day to help communicate the message that there is no excuse and never an invitation to harass, abuse, assault, or rape. I would like to welcome Burbank resident and Zonta Club Area 3 Director Gloria Solis to accept her proclamation and say a few words on behalf of Zonta. Welcome, Ms. Solis.
Thank you, Mayor Talamontes, and greetings to Vice Mayor Anthony, City Council members, and City Manager Hess. Thank you for this proclamation. Zonta International is a 100-year-old organization of professionals who work to empower and support women worldwide through service and advocacy. April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and tomorrow is Denim Day. Denim Day came about because of a case that happened in 1992 in Rome, Italy, when an 18-year-old girl was raped by the 45-year-old driving instructor who was taking her out on her very first driving lesson. He took her to an isolated road, pulled her out of the car, removed her jeans, and forcefully raped her. She reported the rape, and the perpetrator was arrested, prosecuted, convicted, and sentenced to jail for that crime. However, seven years later, in 1999, the driving instructor appealed the sentence, claiming that they had had consensual sex. The case made it all the way up to the Italian Supreme Court, where the conviction was overturned, and he was released. A statement from the court argued that because the victim wore very tight jeans, she had to have helped him remove the jeans, and by removing the jeans, it was no longer rape but consensual sex. This became known throughout Italy as the Jeans Alibi. Enraged by this verdict, women of the Italian Parliament protested by wearing jeans to work the next day. The protests spread throughout the world, even to California, to the California Legislature, where women wore jeans as a sign of solidarity. In 1999, Denim Day was born as a symbol of protest against erroneous and destructive attitudes about sexual violence. The Zonta Club works for a world in which no woman lives in fear of violence, which is why we urge the city council members and the community of Burbank to wear jeans tomorrow in a pledge to say no to gender violence. We ask that you take a selfie and post it on the Zonta Club of Burbank's Facebook page. Again, Mayor Talamontes and City Manager Hess, thank you for lighting City Hall blue tomorrow night as a reminder that the city and its citizens stands with victims and survivors of gender violence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Solis, for joining us tonight in support of Denim Day. The city will be lighting City Hall and the Burbank Water and Power Administration Building in blue tomorrow, Wednesday, April 27. I also want to acknowledge that April was National Volunteer Month in the United States. A special thank you from City Council to all the volunteers in the city of Burbank who donate their time, knowledge, skills, and passion. Thank you for your unwavering service to the community in inspiring youth and other adults towards volunteerism. City Manager Hess, do you have anything else to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have anything for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, report on closed session, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This evening, City Council met in closed session to discuss two items of existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91. The first case was Mark Ellison versus City of Burbank. The second case is Rosenfeld versus Burbank Mayor Just Talamontes et al. Council took no reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Now is the time for joint general public comment. Members of the public may address the council for up to three minutes on any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda items. Remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer, and take your phone off speaker when you deliver a public comment. To participate, please call 818-238-3335. Once again, it's 818-238-3335. Madam Assistant City Clerk, do we have any callers online for public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. As of right now, we do not have any callers. The line has been open. If we just give it a minute, I'm going to confirm that. All right, Mayor, we do not have any callers this evening. It's safe to close.
Thank you very much. There being no public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief response from City Council, City Manager, or the City Attorney. Colleagues, do we have any response? Very good. Thank you very much. That's the fastest response time I've seen all the time I've been up here. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Madam Assistant City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Item number one, adoption of an uncodified ordinance approving a military equipment, funding, acquisition, and use policy pursuant to Assembly Bill 481. Item number two, approve the city council meeting minutes of the joint meeting of April 5, 2022, the regular meeting of April 12, 2022, the special meeting of April 18, 2022, and the dark meeting of April 19, 2022. Item number three, approve the successor agency minutes of the joint meeting of December 7 and 14, 2021. Item number four, approve the housing authority minutes of the joint meeting of April 5, 2022. And item number five, approve the parking authority minutes of the joint meeting of December 7 and 14, 2021. And the last item is item number six, adoption of a resolution extending the local emergency caused by COVID-19.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion.
Councilmember Frutos, motion. Is there a second? Second, Councilmember Springer. Any further discussion? Madam Assistant City Clerk?
Councilmember Frutos.
Yes.
Councilmember Springer.
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Anthony.
No on one, yes on two through six.
All righty, and Mayor Talamontes.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have one report to counsel this evening. The report is a review of the proposed fiscal year 2022 to 2023 city budget. Mr. Hess, Burbank City Manager, please commence this presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for allowing me to take a few moments to make some opening remarks prior to reviewing the proposed budget. I am proud to present to you tonight the proposed fiscal year 2022-23 city budget. Despite being impacted by the pandemic in every conceivable way over the last two years, staff presents to you tonight a balanced general fund budget funding the high levels of programs and services this city and its residents deserve. I want to applaud the city council for sticking to your financial policies and making responsible decisions in response to the pandemic. I also want to recognize city staff for executing on those decisions and managing their department budgets. The city implemented several COVID-saving measures which saved more than $24 million over the past two years and prevented layoffs and cuts to services. Throughout the entire pandemic, we provided essential services without stopping. We continued with our multi-year pension funding plan, providing over $4.6 million in recurring citywide savings to date, and worked with our city labor groups to have all city employees pay half of their normal cost of their pensions on an ongoing basis. And we maintained our commitment to infrastructure, fully funding the city's annual maintenance of effort for streets and roads, and we continue to use half of our Measure P dollars to invest in capital projects throughout the city. As discussed at mid-year, the city's revenues are recovering at a faster rate than anticipated, with most categories remarkably at or above pre-pandemic levels. Ms. Becker will provide detail on all of this in just a few minutes. So, staff is pleased to report that the general fund deficit has been eliminated for fiscal year 2022-2023. The proposed general fund recurring budget before you tonight is balanced, albeit by a very slim margin of roughly $280,000, and that's of a $200 million general fund budget. In fact, all five years of the financial forecast are also balanced, with that surplus growing to $1.7 million by fiscal year 26-27. Additionally, prior savings measures combined with federal assistance has resulted in a projected year-end balance of nearly $30 million at the end of 2022-2023. While we are in a very solid position, there are many economic uncertainties that could impact our projections: COVID, inflation, supply chain issues, the war in the Ukraine, just to name some big few. It is important that we continue to take a cautious approach and make responsible decisions with respect to our budget. Just to reiterate, the proposed budget funds public safety, libraries, parks and open space, reliable utility services, and several capital improvement projects, as well as many other municipal services that provide Burbank residents with a high quality of life. We look forward to reviewing the budget in more detail over the next few meetings. A lot of hard work goes into that process, so I want to be sure to acknowledge everyone who is involved in that process, mainly everyone here tonight. With that, I would love to turn it over to our Financial Services Director, Ms. Becker, and she will run through the rest of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Welcome, Ms. Becker.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Jennifer Becker, Financial Services Director. Thank you very much. If we can go up and bring up the presentation, we'll get started. So, I'm very excited to be back here in person tonight to present to you our proposed fiscal year 2022-23 budget. As you well know, the preparation of our annual budget is a process that takes several months and requires a collaborative effort by city staff in every single department. Many of those individuals are here with us tonight, so I just wanted to thank everyone for their efforts with this budget process, and also let the council know that staff is here to answer any questions you may have as we go through our entire budget book over the next few weeks. I will provide some opportunities to ask questions, but feel free to stop me if you have specific questions on any of the items I'm covering this evening. Oh, goodness. Does not seem to be working. Oh, wait. There we go. Thank you. So, first, I'm going to briefly go over all of the materials provided to you in that white budget binder you received, and let our viewers know how they can access those materials at home. Then we'll do a high-level overview of our total citywide proposed budget, and then I'll kick off our fund-by-fund review with an in-depth look at our entire general fund budget, including our five-year forecast, our fiscal year 22-23 projected revenues and proposed appropriations, and our department budget requests for the coming year. And after we finish the general fund, I will turn it over to Ms. Lindell and her team to present the budgets for each of our Burbank Water and Power Funds for 2022-23. Following that, we'll hear a presentation from the Public Works Department, who will review the Water Reclamation and Sewer Fund and the Refuse, Collection, and Disposal Fund. And time permitting, we will finish the evening with a review of our internal service funds and special revenue funds. So, the proposed budget binder you received this evening contains 29 sections, each with a separate tab. And that very first tab, titled Review of the Proposed Budget, contains a staff report provided for this week and next week's budget presentations, with our general fund budget matrix and five-year forecast attached. Following that is a tab that contains all of the new budget items that were requested by city departments and approved by the city manager to be incorporated into this year's budget. We will be reviewing each of those requests as we go through our department and fund budgets. Next is our infrastructure tab, which includes a summary of the fiscal year 22-23 capital improvement program, which was approved by our Infrastructure Oversight Board in late March. This information will be reviewed during next Tuesday's budget presentations. The following tab is our budget summaries tab, which includes a number of charts and graphs that provide a high-level overview of our citywide and general fund proposed budgets. Also, within this tab, you can find the city's debt service schedule, summary of general fund reserves, our citywide authorized staffing, and a copy of the city council's financial policies. Revenues is our next tab, which provides a summary of all our citywide projected revenues by fund and category, along with a description of the sources of each city revenue source. And then the next 14 tabs cover each of the city's general fund departments, starting with the city council and ending with non-departmental. Here you will find a summary, as well as the line item budgets for each department by division and program, as well as a description of each of those individual units. Following the general fund departments, we have our non-general fund light item budgets, organized by fund and fund type. Here's where you can find the Burbank Water and Power Fund budgets, as well as our other enterprise funds, our internal service funds, including the IT Department, as well as special revenue funds, the Housing Authority, and the Parking Authority. We have three additional sections in the back of the budget, the first being our agreements and contracts list. This list includes all of the contracts for professional services, as well as general goods and services that the city council is authorizing as part of the adoption of this budget. Behind that is a summary of proposed fee schedule changes for fiscal year 22-23, which outlines the changes from the prior year, the percentage increase or decrease, and a justification for each item being requested. And lastly is the final section labeled supplemental materials. This section includes any additional memos or discussion papers that were requested by the city council as part of this year's budget process, and we may add more items to this section in the coming weeks as the budget review process moves along. And for the members of the public that are interested in reviewing these budget materials along with us tonight, or learning more about the budget, you can find it on the city's website at burbankca.gov. There's a link on the homepage that will take you to the Finance Department, where the budget is posted. Or if you prefer to view a paper version, we have hard copies of the proposed budget available for review at the Financial Services Department's public counter, the City Clerk's Office public counter, and at each of the city's three library branches. You can also pick up a copy of our proposed budget at-a-glance brochure at these locations as well. So, looking over our schedule for the next month or so, as I mentioned previously, tonight we'll be covering most of our funds. Next week, we will be moving on to the general city infrastructure plan and review of discussion papers. On May 18, I'm sorry, May 17, we will hold the public hearing on the city's utility rates, and then on May 24, we will have the public hearing and adoption of the entire citywide budget and fee schedule. So, on that note, let's kick it off and begin with a look at our citywide budget. So, our total citywide proposed budget for fiscal year 22-23 is $791,810,038. As you can see by the pie chart here, the largest portion of our citywide budget is our BWP Electric and Water Utility Funds, which make up about 47% of the total budget. The general fund, which is the city's main operating fund, is the second-largest section of the budget, coming in at just under $220 million, or 28% of the overall budget. Overall, the citywide budget is made up of 30 different funds proposing appropriations, including four enterprise funds, seven internal service funds, 15 special revenue and capital projects funds, the Housing Authority, the Parking Authority, and the Successor Agency. We'll present each of these funds as we go through our set of budget presentations, but we will start, of course, with the general fund. This year's total general fund budget of $220 million is just about $16 million, or 7.7% higher than last year's adopted budget of $204 million. This is predominantly due to some one-time items, which we will discuss later in the presentation. The proposed recurring general fund budget of $202 million is about 4.5% higher than last year's recurring budget. Now, it's hard to put this budget into context without talking about all that's happened over the past couple of years, so let's go back and look at that. So let's go back and look at that financial roller coaster ride that was COVID-19 before we talk about where we're headed. So two years ago at this time, much was unknown about the fiscal impact of the pandemic, but we prepared ourselves for a pretty significant economic downturn. Overall, general fund revenues dropped by twelve percent at the peak of the COVID-19 recession, which was April 2020, with some revenue categories declining as much as eighty percent, while others remained largely stable. Ultimately, the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget ended with a general fund recurring deficit of over fifteen million dollars. And although we saw steady improvement as the pandemic rolled on, the twenty-one, twenty-two budget was adopted with a six-point-million-dollar deficit as the country was experiencing the throes of the Delta variant. In response to those anticipated revenue losses, the City Council implemented several COVID savings measures, which included a citywide hiring freeze, the cancellation of many city events and programs that were unable to operate during the pandemic, and the use of one-time funds to continue our pension funding plan. Altogether, these measures saved the general fund an estimated twenty-four million dollars during the two years of the pandemic. The federal government also took action with a robust response in the form of financial assistance. In 2020, the city received one point three million from the CARES Act to support ongoing general fund services, in addition to a number of other allocations to support special programs, such as supplemental nutrition, EMS transportation, and rental and small business assistance. Then in 2021, Burbank was allocated twenty-five point five million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. A key component of the American Rescue Plan, which we now refer to as ARPA, is that it permits agencies to use those funds for revenue loss. So Burbank has essentially recouped much of the revenue lost during the two prior years of the pandemic. So having reviewed where we've been, let's take a look at fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Now you see that I have "post-COVID" heading in quotes there, because I recognize we're not nearly out of the woods in terms of the pandemic actually ending. That being said, it appears that the financial impacts of the pandemic to Burbank's economy are mostly behind us, and we are approaching a full recovery. We are projecting that fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three general fund revenues will surpass the total revenues we received prior to the pandemic. As we discussed during our mid-year financial report in March, our revenues have recovered at a faster pace than economists predicted, with most of our revenue categories fully recovered and in more of a steady growth mode. There is still some room for recovery and improvement in our tourism-based revenues, which of course took the biggest hit during COVID-19. Citywide costs are escalating as well, with the impacts of the pandemic, as well as other economic factors, still having an effect on our day-to-day business. COVID-19 has fundamentally changed the labor market, and recruitment continues to be a challenge in a number of high-demand fields. Of course, this is not unique to Burbank, as labor issues, among another, a number of other factors, have led to supply chain issues and shortages on all sorts of goods across a variety of industries. Of course, when supply is low and demand is high, we get increased prices and ultimately inflation. The December 2021 Consumer Price Index, or CPI, which is a measure of the average change over time in the prices paid by consumers for goods and services in the U.S., came in at seven percent year-over-year. You will see throughout this presentation that it has both positive and negative effects on the city's budget. All that being said, we are extremely pleased to report that the fiscal year proposed twenty-two, twenty-three general fund budget that we are presenting to you tonight is balanced. So because of that great news, I wanted to skip ahead to our five-year forecast chart rather than saving it for the end. You could see those blue lines just slightly edging out the red lines, indicating that our general fund budget is balanced, albeit by the slimmest of margins. Recurring revenues are projected at two hundred and one point eight million, with recurring expenses at a little less than two hundred and one point six million, a difference of about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, or point one four percent of the total general fund budget. That balance drops to under a hundred thousand in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, before increasing again throughout the remaining three years of the forecast, as those remaining revenue categories more fully recover. It's also important to note that significant general fund one-time balance, projected at nearly thirty million, that you see at the bottom of that chart. This grows to over forty-one million by the end of 2027. This is predominantly due to prior actions taken by the council at the beginning of the pandemic, as discussed previously, as well as the revenue replacement dollars Burbank received from ARPA. Now let's take a closer look at those ARPA funds. As the council is aware, we received our first ARPA payment of twelve point seven five million in May of 2021, and we expect to receive our second payment for the same amount sometime next month. Staff has completed the first round of quarterly ARPA reporting, and based on the formula provided to us by the U.S. Treasury Department, approximately seventeen point four million of our allotment is eligible to be utilized under the Public Sector Revenue Loss Category, which is Category C. These dollars will go back to the general fund balance to essentially reimburse the city for revenue losses experienced during the pandemic. Staff is proposing to dedicate the remaining ARPA dollars towards Category A, which the Treasury Department defines as responding to the public health and negative impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. This is the broadest category under ARPA and potentially covers a wide array of projects that are applicable to Burbank, including public safety, park maintenance, and technology infrastructure, with the caveat that the funds are, of course, one-time in nature and must be expended by the end of December 2026. For fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the proposed budget includes a number of ARPA-funded projects under the Technology Infrastructure category, covering several service areas. Some of these technology items include four point eight million dollars for police and fire projects, with the bulk of those funds going towards the replacement of the police computer-aided dispatch or CAD system, which has reached the end of its life. CDD and Public Works are being allocated funding to implement online permitting for our residential and business customers. The Finance Department will be implementing accounts payable automation and payroll self-service time entry, both of which will provide enhanced service and eliminate reams of paper records. And there are several other citywide projects planned, including the next phase of our Mobile 311 system, the enhancement of technology at several conference rooms throughout the city. So let's also take a look at the State of California budget for the upcoming twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. The governor's proposed budget totals two hundred and eighty-six point four billion dollars, with a general fund budget of two hundred and thirteen point one billion. This year's state budget includes additional funding for COVID-19 vaccination and testing, healthcare, homeless prevention and housing, climate change mitigation, and K through twelve education. One notable item that could potentially impact Burbank is the governor's proposal to suspend the annual inflation adjustment for the fuel tax that is required under the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, also known as SB1. While the suspension would provide some relief to Californians for rising gas prices, it would reduce anticipated SB1 revenues that cities rely on for street and roadway maintenance and repair by about five hundred and twenty-three million dollars statewide, which the legislature would then have to backfill with state general fund dollars. So there should not be any net impacts to Burbank's two point four million dollar SB1 funding for twenty-two, twenty-three, but staff will continue to monitor the state budget process and notify the council should anything change with that proposal. And we can't have a conversation about state government without talking about our favorite topic, pensions. The chart on this slide shows us the CalPERS pension rates that have been incorporated into this proposed budget, with the normal cost shown as a percentage of payroll and the unfunded actuarial liability cost shown as a dollar payment for each of the city's three pension plans. Similar to past years, this budget proposes that the city prepay its annual liability payment in July, which will result in the net savings of the city, to the city, of one point one million dollars in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Based on our July 2021 actuarial report, the city's unfunded actuarial liability for our three pension plans combined is three hundred and eighty-five million dollars, and our average funded status is around seventy-three percent. This information is based on CalPERS' June 2020 year-end earnings, which came in at four point seven, but much of this will change in future years due to several CalPERS decisions that have taken place in recent months. As we discussed during the mid-year report, a number of CalPERS actions that took place subsequent to the issuance of those 2021 actuarial reports are not yet factored in our rates that were provided on the previous slide, but most certainly will impact Burbank's projected pension costs beginning in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. First, that twenty-one point three percent fiscal year-end investment return earned by CalPERS in 2021 will decrease the city's UAL payment amount and increase the overall status of Burbank's three plans by as much as ten percent. However, these investment gains triggered the implementation of CalPERS' risk mitigation policy, which they adopted in 2015. What this policy does is lower the discount rate anytime CalPERS achieves earnings of more than two percent above their expected rate of return. So as a result of this twenty-one point three percent return, CalPERS has permanently lowered their discount rate from seven percent to six point eight percent with no phase-in. And lastly, at their November board meeting, CalPERS adopted a new experience study, which included revised assumptions regarding retirement age, life expectancy, and salary inflation. These revised assumptions, combined with the drop in the discount rate, are projected to increase the normal cost rates for each of Burbank's plans by a range of one point seven percent to three percent of payroll, beginning in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Overall, CalPERS estimates that the UAL savings from the investment gains will offset the normal cost increases and still provide a nominal net benefit to the city. But of course, this is contingent on CalPERS continuing to meet their projected rate of return in future fiscal years. And based on recent fluctuations in the stock market, it is unlikely that CalPERS will achieve its expected rate of return for the current fiscal year, which would have an impact on rates beginning in 24, 25. So we'll know more detail about what the city can expect in terms of pension costs for 23, 24 when we receive our next CalPERS actuarial a little bit later this summer. And one thing that has remained constant over the past three years is the city council's commitment to funding our multi-year pension funding plan, adopted by the council in 2019. Fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three will be the fourth and final year of this plan, with forty-one million in additional discretionary payments made by the city to CalPERS to date, with another twelve million planned in this proposed budget. For this year, staff is proposing to utilize redevelopment loan repayment set-aside funds for the eight million dollar general share of the payment, both to preserve our general fund balance and to avoid violating any of the requirements under the American Rescue Plan that prohibits the use of these funds for pension payments. The charts on this slide show you a closer look at our multi-year pension funding plan, now that we are nearing the end of the four years. The blue chart shows the city's total four-year commitment of fifty-three million dollars, with an estimated interest savings of sixty-three million over a twenty-four-year payoff period. Looking at the orange chart down below, we can see the resulting recurring reductions in our UAL costs that the city has achieved as a result of the additional payments. Our nineteen-twenty payment of fifteen million resulted in savings of one point seven million citywide. Our twenty-twenty-one payment resulted in, of thirteen million, resulted in one point four million in savings. And our twenty-one, twenty-two payment of thirteen million resulted in one point five million in savings for this current fiscal year. Altogether, the pension funding plan has achieved four point six million in recurring citywide savings, with three point two million of that savings directly benefiting the general fund. And these successes tell us two things. First, that we would not be here presenting a balanced budget to you tonight without these prior investment decisions being made by the city council. And second, that it's worth exploring making additional discretionary payments to CalPERS beyond twenty-two, twenty-three to keep our general fund savings rolling out into the future years of our forecast. We will definitely bring back a discussion of extending this plan prior to next year's budget development process. Now we're going to switch modes and focus in on this year's proposed twenty-two, twenty-three general fund budget, starting with our projected general fund revenues. As you can see from the many colors on this pie chart, Burbank has a very diverse stream of general fund revenues. Sales tax and property tax are the two largest sources of general fund revenue, representing fifty-seven point six percent of the total recurring revenue anticipated for the coming year. The table shown here provides a year-over-year look at all of our general fund recurring revenues, including the actual receipts from 2021, the adopted and revised projections for 2022, and the projected recurring revenues included in our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget. We're projecting a moderate but healthy economic growth for the coming year, with revenues increasing five point one percent from the revised twenty-one, twenty-two projections. Each revenue category is different in the way that it was affected by the pandemic, but the majority of our revenue categories have already achieved a full recovery, or will do so in 22, 23. It is important to note that a couple of revenue categories, most notably transient occupancy tax and transient parking tax, are still working their way back from the pandemic and thus have more room for growth before we can say that they are fully recovered. These next few slides will examine some of the city's more significant general fund revenue sources. You can find a comprehensive summary and description of each of the city's revenues in that Revenues tab of your budget binder. So let's start with sales tax. The most recent sales tax results we have available are from the second quarter of fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, which is that ever-important holiday quarter of October through December. Burbank's second-quarter sales tax receipts were up nineteen point seven percent from the same quarter the prior year on an adjusted basis. Leading the way were fuel and service stations, up a whopping hundred and nine point three percent. And of course, that's attributable to both rising fuel prices and the return of jet fuel sales at the Hollywood Burbank Airport. Receipts for restaurants and hotels increased sixty-one percent from the prior year, indicating a post-pandemic return to leisure activities such as travel and dining out. And lastly, general consumer goods were up a very solid eighteen and a half percent, which you like to see during the holiday quarter, as it signifies a return to shopping at brick-and-mortar stores here in Burbank. While we don't anticipate this type of growth to continue in the next fiscal year, and we certainly hope that's not the case for gas prices, economists are predicting that inflation will continue to impact sales prices for goods, at least for another year. Thus, we are projecting an overall increase to sales tax of three and a half percent for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Property taxes have been our most stable source of revenue throughout the pandemic. Low inventory and favorable mortgage rates have continued to fuel an extremely strong local housing market, with the median price of a Burbank single-family home selling for one point two million in January through March of 2022. While we predict that rising interest rates may temper the growth in housing prices somewhat in the coming year, we are still projecting moderate growth of three point three percent for property taxes in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. I should note that revenues received next year are largely based on assessments done during the prior year. Utility users' tax is the city's fourth-largest revenue stream with a rate of seven percent that is applied to telephone, gas, and electric usage. While the proposed six percent electric rate increase, along with the rise in natural gas prices, will also serve to increase UUT revenues, this will be offset by reduced electric sales due to conservation efforts, as well as shrinking telecom revenues, as the market continues to transition from phone plans to data plans. Altogether, we expect UUT revenues to increase by three point nine percent for 22, 23. Service charges outperformed expectations in several categories during the current fiscal year, thanks to the easing of pandemic restrictions and the return of several programs and industries that drive these revenues. We can expect more of the same in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, with a return to full activities for all city facilities, programs, and services, such as the Passport Program and the Starlight Bowl Summer Concert Series. A significant uptick in production activity in our local film and television industry will also impact revenues for the safety service provided to our local studios. Altogether, we're forecasting a nine percent increase in service charge revenues in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Now let's take a look at our next revenue category, transient occupancy tax, sometimes referred to as a hotel-bed tax. As I'm sure you remember, travel activity almost entirely ceased at the beginning of the pandemic, with hotel occupancy declining from roughly eighty percent to twenty percent in one month's time, and revenues declining by over sixty percent. It's been a long, slow climb back from the spring of 2020, but now we are really starting to see some positive numbers, with occupancy back over seventy percent last month, as indicated by the blue lines on that chart. You may remember that we revised TOT revenue upward at mid-year by about one point four million, as revenue had continued to outpace projections in the current fiscal year. We expect that pace to continue in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, with revenue growth estimated at eighteen point eight percent. I should point out that our projected TOT revenue of ten million is still well below our pre-pandemic forecast of around twelve million. However, our five-year forecast now estimates that we'll see a full TOT recovery within the next three years, instead of the initial five years estimated at the beginning of the pandemic. Transient parking tax tends to follow along the same lines as TOT. Both revenue categories largely depend on the travel industry, and both took a significant hit during the pandemic. Ninety percent of our parking tax revenues come from lots serving the Hollywood Burbank Airport, and we are now seeing a very nice recovery in TPT, as anyone who's been to the airport lately can tell you that those lots have been pretty full. The chart here shows monthly passenger counts at the airport, with the most recent months shown in blue. TPT revenue tends to mirror airport activity, and while we're not quite back to pre-pandemic levels, we did make significant improvement in 21, 22. We're projecting another five percent bump in revenue in 22, 23, estimating total revenues of three point three million, just a little bit shy of our pre-pandemic peak of three point five million. So before we wrap up our revenue discussion, I wanted to take a moment to review some of the more notable general fund-related changes to our citywide fee schedule. New fees included for this year are container fees for commercial businesses that are mandated by the state of California, the establishment of a brush inspection fee to ensure homeowner compliance within the very high fire hazard severity zone. Some notable revisions to the fee schedule include a restructuring of fees for emergency medical services based on recommendations from a recently completed first responder and ambulance fee study, an increase in residential parking permits from ten and a quarter to fifteen dollars to better align with the city's cost recovery goal of twenty percent, increases to pool rentals and field reservations to offset the cost of staffing, and a reduce of the cost and a reduction in the cost of a typing certification test from eight dollars to five dollars. Now typically, all other fees contained within the fee schedule are increased annually by the Consumer Price Index in accordance with the city council's established cost recovery policy. However, as a result of inflation, the December twenty one CPI came in at seven percent. So in an effort to lessen the impacts of inflation on our Burbank residents and businesses, the proposed fee increases before you tonight are based on a three-year average of CPI, which we calculated to be three point four percent. As you will see later in the presentation, financial services staff is proposing to complete a new citywide fee study in twenty two, twenty three, which will give us the opportunity to ensure that all of the city's fees are in compliance with Proposition two eighteen as well as the city council's cost recovery policy. And of course, the city continues to operate the very successful Burbank Program Activity and Service Subsidy, also known as the PAS program. This provides Burbank residents in need of financial assistance the opportunity to engage and participate in city programs and services. Subsidies are available through the PAS program for a wide variety of city services, including sports and aquatics programs, recreation classes, animal adoptions, and senior and disabled transportation. Managed by the Parks and Recreation Department, the city has over seven hundred residents actively participating in the PAS program. Okay, so we're going to move on now from revenues to review all of our fiscal year twenty two, twenty three general fund appropriations. This year's general fund budget includes roughly one point three million in new general fund recurring requests, net of revenue, in addition to one point seven million in one-time budget requests. The budget also includes roughly seven million for a variety of information technology projects and improvements among our general fund departments, with the majority of those projects being funded by ARPA. Each new budget item was reviewed and approved by the city manager's office prior to its incorporation into the proposed budget. New appropriations were prioritized based on whether they were a mandated expense or how they adhere to the city council's established goals for the coming year, including economic recovery and responsible development, housing and homelessness, sustainability, city services, traffic and transportation, quality of life, and infrastructure. The chart you see here shows how our total general fund appropriations of two hundred and twenty million are broken up by city department. Forty-six percent of our budget is dedicated to providing safety services to the public, including our police and fire departments. Another thirty-two percent is dedicated to our community-facing departments, including community development, public works, parks and recreation, and library services. And just under eleven percent of our budget is dedicated to administrative functions such as finance, management services, city manager, city attorney, city treasurer, city clerk, and city council. These next slides will highlight each of our general fund departments individually, including an overview of their proposed budget and staffing and a look at any highlights or new requests for the fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. We'll present these slides in the order of the tabs you see in your budget book so you could follow along if you choose to do so, or you can refer to that new budget request tab in your binder as well. And we have representatives here from each department to answer questions on any of the individual budget requests being presented to you this evening. So let's start, of course, with the city council office. The city council is our elected legislative and policymaking body, enacting all laws and directing city actions. Among the many things our council does is authorize contracts and agreements, appoint city commissions, boards, and committees, reviews and adopts the annual operating budget. The city council office has a total budget of seven hundred and sixty one thousand and three full-time equivalent positions, not including our five elected city council members that dedicate their time to the city. And they will continue their great work into fiscal year twenty two, twenty three with no new budget requests. Nice job. Next is the city clerk's office, which operates with a total budget of two million and ten point four seven five FTEs. Our elected Burbank city clerk, Mrs. Zep Mullins, serves as clerk to the city council, housing authority, parking authority, and successor agency, and her office is responsible for maintaining all city records, including the Burbank Charter and the Burbank Municipal Code. The clerk's office also conducts the city's municipal elections and coordinates voter registration services with L.A. County. Additionally, the clerk's office operates a wildly popular passport acceptance facility, which offers new and renewal passport services to members of the public. So some of the budget items requested by the city clerk's office for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three include a one-time request of two hundred and thirty six thousand dollars for anticipated expenses relating to our upcoming November election, the upgrade of an analyst position for twenty one thousand, which is offset by increased passport revenues, four thousand dollars for passport-related expenses and supplies, which are also offset by those increased revenues, and a recurring request for records destruction services of thirty one hundred dollars. Next up is the city treasurer's office. Also an elected position, our Burbank city treasurer, Ms. Crystal Palmer, operates her department with a budget of just under nine hundred and ten thousand dollars and a staff of five FTEs. The treasurer's office is responsible for receiving, dispersing, depositing, and investing all public funds and providing monthly reporting of cash balances by fund and reconciled bank balances in addition to regular reporting on all of the city's outstanding investments. And Ms. Palmer and her team will continue this work with no new budget requests in fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. Led by our city attorney, Joe McDougall, the city attorney's office serves as the legal advisors to the city council, city boards and commissions, and all other city officials and staff. They represent the city in civil litigation and other proceedings and protect the community by prosecuting misdemeanors and infractions committed within the city. The total proposed twenty two, twenty three budget for the city attorney's office is just under four point seven million with an FTE count of nineteen. The city attorney has one request for some temporary staffing assistance totaling ninety three thousand dollars to backfill for staff that is scheduled to be on leave in fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. Next is the city manager's office. Our city manager, Justin Hess, serves as the city's chief executive officer, setting the goals and providing administrative direction for all city departments in full accordance with the policies established by the city council. The city manager's budget of two point seven million and twelve and a half FTE also includes the Public Information Office, which provides the city with a comprehensive communication program, including dissemination of information regarding all city services, activities, and events. One new recurring request of just under twenty thousand is incorporated into the city manager's fiscal year twenty two, twenty three budget. This will reestablish the communications manager position that was eliminated several years back and once again provide a full-time dedicated staff member to oversee the city's public information office. This request is mostly offset by salary savings from two other positions currently vacant within the city manager's office. Moving on next to our management services department, with a proposed budget of six point seven million and just over forty five FTE, the management services department provides a wide array of services to city departments and employees, including employment services, employee benefits, labor relations, general liability, workers' compensation, and environmental health and safety. The department also provides a robust training program and support services for city employees as well as our local teens through our youth employment programs. Some of the highlights of the management services budget proposed for twenty two, twenty three include a hundred thousand dollars for additional required medical screenings as part of the firefighter wellness program, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollar one-time request for a consultant to assist with managing the city's current caseload under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Okay, next we'll look at my personal favorite department, financial services. With a budget of six point one million and thirty four FTE, this outstanding department provides a wide array of citywide financial services, including accounting, accounts payable, accounts receivable, revenue collection, fixed asset management, payroll, debt management, and internal audit. Each year, the department produces the city's annual operating budget, capital improvement program budget, and annual financial report, all of which have been recognized annually with awards for excellence from the Government Finance Officers Association and the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. And additionally, the finance department provides centralized procurement services for all city departments. The financial services department has two proposed requests for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three proposed budget. The first is a reorganization of our purchasing division, which will provide additional administrative support and oversight for increasingly complex procurements our staff is tasked with, such as federally grant-funded programs and public construction projects. The second is a one-time request for ninety thousand dollars to complete a new citywide fee study as I mentioned previously. GFOA best practices advise that cities should complete a fee study every three to five years to maintain compliance with Proposition two eighteen, and it's been just over five years since our last fee study was completed. Now, as fun as the finance department is, this next department really gives us a run for our money, and that, of course, is Parks and Recreation. The Parks and Recreation Department maintains and operates forty-two public parks and facilities, offers a variety of recreation programs, senior and human services, and community events. And they do all of this fantastic work with a budget of twenty nine point four million dollars and just under a hundred and eighty-four full-time equivalent positions. So new to the Park and Recs budget this year is the animal shelter, which transitioned over from the police department during the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year. Parks has several proposed requests related to the animal shelter for twenty two, twenty three, including the reorganization of animal shelter staff to broaden operations and improve efficiencies, the addition of a part-time vet tech to provide more services and increase animal adoptions, and an increase in supplies to cover vaccines and microchips for our local pets. The total funds being requested are roughly two hundred and twenty two thousand dollars, of which a hundred and sixty six thousand will be offset by increased revenue for these enhanced services. Parks is also requesting an additional vehicle so that our animal control officers can continue to do their great work responding to calls and patrolling our local parks. Parks and Rec is also proposing to continue our utility box beautification program in fiscal year twenty two, twenty three with twelve thousand dollars of art and public places funds budgeted for this purpose. And lastly, an additional nine thousand dollars is proposed to cover cost increases for special events, many of which are returning or have returned after a long COVID hiatus, including the Independence Day celebration at the Starlight Bowl and the mayor's tree lighting ceremony. The library services department operates the city's three library branches with a budget of roughly eight and a half million and sixty-five FTEs. The department provides access to formal and informal learning opportunities through its collection programs and services that reach seven hundred and fifty thousand people annually. Library Services has three general fund requests proposed in this year's budget. The first is the use of seventy seven thousand in community benefit funds received from a developer towards technology improvements at the central library. Next is the appropriation of a twenty five thousand dollar grant from the California State Library Association to provide adult literary services. And lastly, a fifteen thousand dollar request to provide translation services for official documents as part of the library's commitment to more diverse and inclusive services. Next up is community development. The Community Development Department fulfills many of the city's most critical missions and goals, including protecting and preserving our neighborhoods, providing transit services, land use and transportation planning, and economic development, implementing affordable housing and homeless services, programs, and strategies, and verifying life safety in the built environment. And they are proposing to do this work with a budget of fourteen million and just over sixty-five of the department's thirty-three full-time equivalent positions will be funded by the general fund. Among CDD's budget highlights for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three are a new permit tech position to help issue and process over four thousand building permits and two thousand plan check applications each year. Additionally, staff is requesting a hundred thousand dollars in support of the city's residential parking permit program, which includes sixty thousand in one-time temporary staffing per processing permit renewals and forty thousand in consulting services to perform surveys for new parking permit zone requests. The Public Works Department operates with a general fund budget of eighteen point five million. Approximately ninety of the department's one hundred and ninety-six full-time positions are funded by the general fund. Made up of four divisions, admin, engineering design and construction, fleet and building maintenance, and streets and sanitation, the department plans, builds, designs, operates, and maintains the city's public work system in a financially and environmentally responsible manner while responding to the community's changing needs. Public Works budget highlights for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three include the addition of a senior civil engineer to provide oversight for the department's permitting process as well as management of capital improvement projects, along with a permit technician to help the department process wireless telecom and ADU permits with greater efficiency. These two positions are partially offset by a hundred and forty thousand dollars in additional permit fee revenues. The department is also requesting five hundred thousand in additional funding for engineering consulting services. A hundred thousand of this will be recurring and go towards project management support for a variety of special street design pilot programs or projects that the department is tasked with throughout the year. Two hundred thousand will go towards design review for development plans as well as permit reviews and inspections. And the final two hundred thousand is a one-time request in support of anticipated traffic studies and planning for future traffic calming projects. Up next is our fire department, which provides citywide fire prevention, fire suppression, emergency medical services, and emergency operations management with a total budget of thirty nine point six million and a hundred and thirty-seven full-time employees. The fire department responds to an estimated eleven thousand emergencies annually, including fires, hazmat incidents, regional mutual aid needs, and state and federal strike teams. Among the fire department's requests for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three are four hundred thousand to begin a two-year phased-in replacement of their self-contained breathing apparatus, also known as SCBA. Three hundred thousand to operate a firefighter recruit academy in the coming year, a new civilian fire inspector position, which is offset by fire permit and inspection revenue, a hundred and sixty one thousand in additional funds for brush clearance to increase their number of cuttings and provide strategic removal of dead trees in the hillside area, and a hundred and fifty thousand for the emergency management division to develop a continuity of operation plan for all city departments for use in the event of a major disaster or other emergency. And last, but certainly not least, is our police department. With a budget of sixty two point four million and almost two hundred and sixty-three FTEs, the police department's mission is to protect life and property, provide professional police services, and work in partnership with the community. In addition to the fifty thousand calls for service they respond to annually, the department also provides citywide parking enforcement, operates a state-of-the-art nine-one-one communication center, and maintains a joint air support program with the city of Glendale. For the fiscal year twenty two, twenty three budget, the department is requesting a new police communications manager position. This civilian position will replace a rotating lieutenant position who has been managing the communication center for a number of years and will provide the appropriate level of management and stability for this critical operation. Additionally, the department is asking for an increase to the safety program budget to provide Kevlar pants for the motors unit, which is a safer and more durable uniform for officers on motorcycle duty. So there is one more section in our general fund budget that I wanted to cover tonight, and that is our non-departmental cost center. This is where we budget appropriations that are not specific to any one department. Some of the notable items that can be found in our non-departmental budget is the general funds portion of the additional contribution to PERS as part of our multi-year pension funding plan, the city's annual four point seven million infrastructure maintenance of effort contribution to the five thirty-four fund, and approximately seven million in contributions to the information technology fund for general fund and ARPA-funded IT projects for the coming year. We'll talk more about those individual projects when we present the full Fund five thirty-seven IT budget. So I realize I've covered a lot of information so far this evening, but before I wrap it up, I wanted to summarize how all of the revenues and appropriations we've just discussed fit together to form our overall budget picture for the coming year. We will start at the top of this slide with our total projected recurring revenues minus our total proposed appropriations, which combine to give us a balance of two hundred and eighty one thousand for fiscal year twenty two, twenty three. Now that's our recurring balance. Now we take a look at our one-time or non-recurring funds. We're projecting to end this fiscal year twenty one, twenty two with a general fund spendable balance of over thirty one million dollars. This includes the seventeen point four million dollar portion of the American Rescue Plan funding that the city can report in the revenue loss category. Then we go to the next line, which is the projected use of five point eight million of those ARPA funds for technology projects in the coming year. Another eight point seven million in anticipated non-recurring revenue and non-recurring revenue and resources, including one-time grant funds, the use of other restricted set-aside funds. Then we have our estimated budget savings of $3 million, which equates to about 1.5% of the recurring general fund budget. So out of that available cash, we'll fund our formal reserves and our compensated absences reserves in accordance with the city council's financial policies. We'll appropriate roughly $9.6 million in proposed one-time budget requests and grants for fiscal year 2223, and we'll contribute an additional $8 million in general fund to CalPERS as part of our multi-year pension funding plan. Netting all of these one-time items together, we get a total non-recurring balance of $29.4 million. Now, we add to that our $281,000 recurring balance to get our projected general fund balance of $29,637,157 at the end of fiscal year 2223. So let's take a look at that forecast chart one more time to see how we anticipate the budget to play out over the next five years. I will remind the council, as we look at those blue and red lines, that the budget is balanced by only the narrowest of margins for the next year or two, roughly 0.14% of the overall recurring budget. However, we project both our recurring budget and our cash position to improve over the next five years as our revenues continue their recovery and new developments begin to come online throughout the city. Now, of course, we are thrilled to be in the financial position we are in with both our recurring balance and our cash position, but there are many unknowns still out there that could have an impact on the economy, both locally here in Burbank and around the globe. The pandemic has fundamentally changed the labor force and the way we think about work. Future COVID-19 variants and the war in Ukraine may continue to impact the labor force and cause further disruptions in the supply chains, issues that are all continuing to drive inflation worldwide. Now, looking more regionally, the rebound of travel and tourism, along with the return of our daytime business population to Burbank, will have an impact on our revenue growth, along with any future development that comes online throughout the city over the next few years. And of course, pension costs are always the wild card, as those CalPERS board decisions and year-end investment returns can have a substantial impact on future budgets. Fortunately, prior city council decisions have put us in a strong position to be able to weather those future economic storms. I will remind the council that in addition to our projected spendable balance of nearly $30 million, we continue to fully fund our financial, our formal reserves in accordance with our financial policies. We also retain balances in our compensated absences reserve, our remaining RDA loan repayment set aside, and our Section 115 pension trust. Altogether, the council has $83 million in available unrestricted funds and reserves, which equates to about 37% of the recurring general fund budget for fiscal year 2223. So in conclusion, the fiscal year 2223 proposed general fund budget is balanced on a recurring basis, and not just in this proposed budget year, but in all five years of our financial forecast. We are projecting a remaining one-time general fund balance at the end of 2223 of $30 million, thanks to prior savings measures implemented by the council, an economic recovery that outpaced previous projections, and a hefty amount of federal government aid in response to the pandemic. However, there are still many department needs that were not funded in this budget, and further economic recovery and development will be needed in order to fully accomplish the city council's goals in the coming years. So that concludes our general fund presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have, and we also have representatives from each of our departments here to answer questions regarding specific line items in the budget.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent. Balance is good to hear.
Yes.
Colleagues, questions, comments? Anyone? Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thanks, Ms. Becker, for your report. When you note that there, for example, an increase in service fees of 9% and utility users taxing has a 6%, is that included in the rate, like the electric, proposed electric increase rate of 6%?
So the city receives utility users' tax of 7% on all electric sales. So when you raise electric rates, we assume that the city, the UUT will increase. However, we don't increase UUT projections by that full 6% because we know as a result of the rate increase, people are going to conserve more electricity, and in general, sales won't keep pace with revenues. So that's why we projected a more conservative 3.9%. And of course, UUT is not just electric. We also have a UUT on natural gas, whose prices are increasing, and on telecom, which we've seen decline over the past few years as people shift more towards data plans and away from phone services.
Thank you. And so I think you said that service fees are projected to increase 9%. And so that is in part due to just the increase in people using those services?
Correct. Service fees are not increasing 9%. Service charge revenues are increasing 9%. And that's just a continuation of some of our programs coming back online from the pandemic, and increase in volume of utilization of those services. So, for example, you know, we've, the golf course and the passport and several other services, safety services for the film industry, the volume is going up. We're not increasing our fees by 9%.
Got it. Thank you. And in one of the slides, it noted that there were 700 participants in PAS.
That's correct.
And in here, it says that, to date, 840 Burbank residents have been enrolled in the PAS program. So there are some dropouts? Is that what that means?
Or it's possible that I did not update my slide. I will, I'm looking at the Parks and Rec Director right now. I believe the 800 that's in the staff report is the correct number, so I apologize for that.
840, okay. And I, is there any room to increase that? Is that a big expense in our budget, or are we just including people who would not be able to participate otherwise?
I will defer to Ms. Garcia, but I believe there's not a cap or limitation on how many people can participate in the PAS program.
Good evening, Mayor Talamontes, council members. Marissa Garcia, Parks and Recreation Director. To answer Councilmember Springer's question, yes, there's absolutely always room to increase our capacity. As you'll note, one of our line item requests in Parks and Recreation is a $50,000 increase in our budget to help offset the significant increase in popularity with PAS program.
And we can expect that possibly to increase with inflation and higher expenses on other categories?
Absolutely.
Okay, and there's no cap on that?
Correct.
So anybody who wants to participate in there qualify will likely be able to do that?
Yes, and now that we've resumed near-normal programming, my staff has been really doing a fantastic job promoting the PAS program and reaching out to those particular focused neighborhoods and attending some community events to ensure that we get the word out about the PAS program.
Great, thank you. And thank you very much. And I just have a question for Ms. Goldman, if she's here.
Thank you. I'm curious about the employment help assistance, like through the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic. Are you busy with that? Is there demand? Are residents taking advantage of that?
There, sorry, good evening. Elizabeth Goldman, Library Services Director. We have, the Burbank Employment Connection has been operating out of the library since September 2021. We have seen steady use. We probably, certainly have not maxed out. Our understanding from what we're seeing, as well as talking to our partners that are part of the Verdugo Workforce Development Board, is that a lot of people are still either searching or for what they want to do with their careers. There's still a lot of fluctuation. So we're, I don't think we've seen quite the volume that we might have expected as we're coming out of the pandemic, but we do expect at some point, there's a lot of things coming down the road that may put more financial pressure on families and encourage people to go seek these opportunities for enhancing their skills and finding higher-paying jobs.
So do you actually help them with the training, or you direct them to where they need, where they can get the training that they need to change careers or...
Still on subject enough? Yeah, okay. It depends what sort of training they're looking for. At the library, we provide, we can provide assistance with basic computer skills, as well as some of the more advanced technology skills through the Spark Lab that would be relevant to the media industry. We also provide assistance with the Microsoft Office Suite. We help people, we have a number of online resources where people can get self-paced training, as well as interact with live help online for resume writing, practice job interviews, aptitude tests, practice tests for civil service exams, all sorts of things like that. Where we pass them along to the Verdugo Job Center or other partners is if they're looking for something more advanced technical skills in a specific area. For instance, there's a new biotechnology-focused program that the Verdugo Job Center is just rolling out, and there's programs through the community colleges in the areas. So we bring them in, we put their basic information in the system, we refer them over to the Verdugo Job Center, and depending on what they're interested in, as well as their background, for instance, if they're a veteran, if they're emancipated foster youth, if they're coming out of the prison system, there's all sorts of special programs out there that can direct them to specific job training.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Talamontes. That's all I have right now.
Uh, Councilmember Frutos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to first start thanking the city manager for your budget and the presentation, and to all your staff. It wasn't easy two and a half or three years ago when I called for the hiring freeze, and there was a reason for that. Obviously, we're now reaping the fruits of that tough decision, but I wanted to thank the manager, and I wanted to thank the council members, who we picked up two new council members, and you have allowed us, through your participation, to stay the course. So we're in the positive now. But I also want to acknowledge Councilmember Tim Murphy, who was here two years ago, because the community needs to hear that this is where it started, two years ago, and also former Mayor Emily Gable Letty.
So it was you that called for that freeze?
Yeah, honestly.
I've been asked quite a bit. Who was, I couldn't remember.
I remember the Fire Department was here.
Thank you for reminding me.
We were talking about pay raises, and I called for that, and oh, boy, that eyeball stared at me big time. Oh, my rear end was on fire that night. It was bad. Okay, that was a blaze. Where's the Fire Department? Ms. Becker, the 115 Pension Fund, how much growth in that in this last fiscal year is projected into the next year, too?
Well, like the rest of the stock market, we've seen a little bit of growth and a little bit of decline. We've still netted, I think, let me pull up my summary, we're about 10.74, and we deposited 10.7. So our net growth has not been what we had hoped for at the beginning, but we still are earning more than we would earn had we left it in our city cash pool. So, you know, that's the risk you take with the stock market. Sometimes you go up and sometimes you go down, but overall, we're still netting a cash benefit to the city, more so than we would if we left it in the city's cash pool.
And for the benefit of the members of the community that are watching, in two minutes and three seconds, if you can explain what the 115 Fund is at the council, basically through policy gave direction to the city manager to invest into a 115 Fund?
Absolutely. So a Section 115 trust is a special trust that any pension government agency can invest their funds in. Our funds are invested with CalPERS, who of course also maintains our regular pension funds. And what they do is they offer you options to invest those funds in similar strategies that they use to invest our pension funds. So you are likely to get more of a rate of return than you would had you just left it in your regular city cash pool, because some of the rules for government investing are a little bit more conservative than what we have for CalPERS. So what those funds do is you can put those aside and utilize them at any time for pension payments. So in the future, should our pension increase, or should we want to make an additional one-time payment to PERS, or if we just want to use that for our pension payment one year so we can use general fund dollars for another purpose, we have the ability to do so. So those funds are very flexible, but it allows you to have a larger rate of return without committing to a long-term investment or a non-liquid asset.
Thank you, Ms. Becker.
Was that two points, it was more than 2.3 seconds?
That's okay.
I apologize.
But I just want to make sure the members of the audience knew what we're talking about, the 115 Fund. I'd like to speak to the director. I got questions regarding Parks and Recs budget, ma'am?
Good afternoon.
Okay, so obviously with the transfer of the Animal Shelter from the police budget, I'm just talking dollars, into your department, how much additional money is your department gaining with the reduction of that specific assignment within the police budget into your budget now?
If you can repeat that, I'm not quite sure I fully understand the question.
No, good. So you're picking up the Animal Shelter.
Correct.
That's no longer a function of the Police Department. So there's monies going from the Police Department, now they're no longer there, into your department?
Correct, yes.
What's that dollar sign?
And I left my notes on my desk. I want to say it's roughly about $170,000 is the total net additional cost of the budget. I believe about $115,000 or so is...
So the full budget?
Yeah, the full budget is $2.1 million. But the, there's some costs, because there were some needing to realign, or re, yes, realign the Animal Shelter operations, because the Police Department Administration Division was performing some functions that now Parks and Recreation has to assume. So the net additional cost to the general fund, I want to say is in a neighborhood of like $50,000 to $60,000. So we are having to change some titles. We, you know, consolidated the, we had two part-time veterinarian positions, we're making that to one, so there's some savings there. However, we need a clerical position to do some of the clerical functions, like payroll and some other duties that the Police Department Administration Division would support. Does that answer the question?
No, I guess I'm looking at, because this is budget and we're looking at dollars and signs, I want to know how much dollars signed, we're taking monies from the Police Department that's no longer doing the Animal Shelter function, because I'm trying to find it in the budget.
Yes, it's the 2.1.
And how that, how that equates to additional personnel, like, for example, now you're going to have Brenda going from the police budget into your department and the other control officers. So I'm just trying to figure out how much dollars sign is coming from the police budget.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, if I could, so the transfer is going to be roughly $2.1 million?
From the police budget to the Parks and Recs.
Correct. So that program's roughly $2.1 million, so we've taken that from a police department budget, moved that over to Parks and Rec into their budget. The, of that 2.1, we needed to add roughly about $60,000 net in order to make some additional changes.
Okay. Now, in the budget, you're requesting a shelter vehicle.
Correct.
They already have, I believe, two vans?
Three.
Three vans. So you're picking up an additional vehicle?
Yes, we are also in our budget. We are proposing to add one additional animal control officer position, which we have grant funding for for the next three years. So in order to properly provide our staff the adequate resources they need to do their job, we need an additional vehicle.
And that won't be covered in the 2.1 million?
No.
Okay. That's enough for this round of questioning.
Sure, I apologize, I didn't understand.
No, 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 no. I'm glad the city manager kind of got involved. Thank you, ma'am. My next question, if I may, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, sir, is to Mr. Prescott under CDD.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director.
Under your request for a permit technician, $85,000, what will be the specific duties? What permits will he or she be working on?
Our team of permit technicians will issue permits, take in plan checks, respond to inquiries via email and phone. They manage a lot of our Project Docs workflow. Project Docs is the online plan check submittal. When we ramped up, thanks to the help with our partners in IT over the last couple of years with some of our online access, we essentially opened another public counter. We have the physical counter and the online counter, and so additional staff is needed to fully respond to that.
And under the budget, I was looking at the code enforcement. How is it working on the weekends?
We are currently recruiting for an inspector to do weekend inspection, and in the interim, we have our current inspectors rotating on Saturday code enforcement.
And last question for your department, sir, and thank you for answering my questions, is I've had... is, uh, I've had, it's interesting, this, we're talking about it this week, I've had three, uh, conversations with three different residents throughout the city, uh, that they're very concerned about these illegal food carts showing up, and now they're starting to show up at schools. Will that be under code enforcement? Do you have enough people for that in this budget, or is this something the council should consider on a white paper to add another body for this type of specific enforcement? What are your thoughts as a director?
Uh, code enforcement would respond to complaints about, uh, vendors on the sidewalks. Uh, uh, vendors are allowed in most areas if they are properly licensed. Uh, last week, my team, um, went out, uh, with the, uh, license, business licensing inspector and code enforcement, and let everyone that we knew of know that they needed the license, and they had to leave until they had it, and they complied. And so we plan to follow up on that, um, as we receive complaints or see them out and about ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott, no more questions, can I continue, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, um, Public Works. Good evening, sir.
You know, real quick, if my colleagues don't mind, as long as the person representing the department is up there, and we other colleagues have questions, might as well, if you don't mind.
No, please, yes, definitely. Uh, thank you, Mr. Berkman, how you doing?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council.
Okay, I'll try to be real painless on this one here, and I know about pain lately. Okay, um, engineering consultant services, 300,000, reoccurring 200 one time, could this be covered? Because it's related to traffic, I heard the presentation for, you know, traffic improvements, studies, could this be, instead of coming from general fund, could it be measure R return money versus the general fund money, since it's traffic-related?
Well, it, it could be for specific projects, but we have, um, in the Public Works Department and engineering, we've streamlined going from three sections to two, so we have two sections now of land development and permits, and the capital improvement, uh, program, um, and inspection. So, we, uh, when I first got here, a little after two years ago, um, we didn't have the consultant horsepower to accommodate these peaks, you know, a, a, a successful city with, with council's leadership, and, and Mr. Prescott into community development brings development and permits, and, and development is traffic-related, for example, so those are the three areas for these consultant services, and the one that you are speaking to, that, uh, 200,000 dollars for, uh, traffic specifically, um, is needed, because there's, uh, a different dynamic, you know, it used to be a simple level of service analysis, because we were vehicle-focused, well now we have our complete streets programs, we have bikes and peds and other, um, uh, more complicated analysis to do, so I wanted to make sure that we had the proper consultants available, who have this newer type of analysis to help us, um, deal with our, our success.
Okay, and then, my final question, um, I know you made yourself available to me about, uh, two and a half months ago with Mr. Muller, and you were helping me prepare for tonight's meeting, because I was looking at your budget very closely, but I didn't see in this short piece, the new, and pardon for forgetting the technical name, but the new flux capacitor Wazoo machine up at the dump site that you were talking about replacing, I didn't see it in the budget, but you were kind of alerting me that it needed to be replaced, some big machine up there that costs about, uh, uh, I think it was 400 bucks an hour to operate, and-
The vehicle, um, Assistant Director Molinar is here, so we're talking about the landfill?
Yes, there's some type of machine you were telling me about, and I questioned the cost of it.
Let's see if it could help out.
And we went over, but I didn't see it in-
Councilmember Frutos, I think he was asking for a donation.
Oh, man.
He was alerting you for a future donation.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, through the mayor, uh, John Molinar from Public Works, uh, you, I believe you're talking about the new D6XE that we are going to be replacing our big D9 bulldozer with.
Okay, I didn't see it in the first white, and, and I know we've talked about the cost, and we went over it at nauseam, and I really appreciate the education of the importance of that machine, but I was curious, I didn't see it in your budget on the white sheet here.
It, I believe it's already on order, that was in last year's budget, I think.
Okay.
That's it.
Can you explain to the council members what the new Wazoo machine is?
Okay, yeah, we have a very large bulldozer up at our landfill that is-
What does it cost to operate, because I was focused on that?
It is much larger than it really needed to be, and when we did our optimization study in 2017, they told us, yeah, this machine's a little too big for what you really need to do, and, uh, so we decided we were going to get a new machine. We got the D6, uh, well, actually, we, we started looking into other equipment, and we found this D6XE, which is, it's run more like an electric locomotive, on a railroad locomotive, it has a little diesel pony motor, and that runs all the electronic equipment, everything else is electronics. So it'll spend, uh, I think it's about 50% less fuel than the D9 that we're going to be replacing it with, and actually, the D9, since it's not very old, we probably are going to be able to swap it almost straight across, we hope, because the D9 still has value left in it, at least that's what we're hoping to do. Uh, so it's, it's, it's a win-win.
No more questions?
And that's part of the enterprise fund, refuse.
Okay, well, thanks for making yourself available as I was going through-
Let me ask one more question on the Wazoo, uh, is that going to be available to the fire department?
Uh, I would imagine if, uh, they needed us, we're going to be there for them.
That's what I want to hear, thank you very much.
All right.
Did you hear that, chief?
Police as well.
May I continue, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir, um, yeah, it's up to the council members, anybody?
You're done, and then we'll-
Thank you, sir, I was gentle with you, sir. Okay, uh, Fire Department? Oh, sorry, any questions, Public Works?
Not me.
No?
Uh, Fire Department?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members.
Good evening, sir.
Fire Chief, how are you, sir?
All right, sir, um, thank you for being available to ask my, uh, if I can ask my question. I don't quite understand the 150,000 dollars for a continuance of an operations plan, explain that, why it's 150,000 dollars?
Sure, that's just going to be for private contractual services, for us to be able to, uh, broaden our emergency management preparation, and so in that, the importance of ensuring that we've got a continuity of government plan, uh, a, a fully functional continuity of government plan, to be able to, uh, uh, elicit the, the needs that we'll have from a city standpoint, in the event that we have some type of a major disaster, um, uh, earthquake and things along those lines.
Is this a one-time funding, or is this going to be, again, next year's budget and the year after?
Not correct, this is going to be a one-time fund for this, and again, there's a lot of federal and state legislation that we want to make sure that we're compliant with. Again, just as we had with COVID, we were able to, uh, utilize, uh, uh, our systems and our, uh, our, our executive team to be able to, uh, prepare and, and mitigate those challenges, and from a now, a disaster standpoint, it's that similar facet, we want to ensure that we're prepared, uh, again, from a, a, a city perspective, uh, in the event that we have any type of a major disaster.
Any trucks or paramedic vehicles due to be replaced in this next year's budget?
Uh, it is, uh, not, not this year coming up, but we currently have our truck company that was, uh, from last year's budget, that is, uh, being specked out now, uh, we have additional, um, battalion chiefs, uh, rig as well, and a couple of our, um, utility pickups, uh, but in that, uh, we're looking forward to seeing those completed and operational, hopefully within a year's time.
Okay.
And the water tender, don't forget the water tender.
Of the water, the water-
Now, we have to thank our congressman for-
Congressman Schiff.
For the money, thank you Congressman Schiff for making that happen for our city and through our fire department.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, anyone else? Any questions to the fire department? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, thank you, chief, just two quick questions, um, so to piggyback off of Councilmember Frutos, talking about item number eight, the continuity of government, or continuity of operations plans, um, it anticipates, uh, preparing for the course of a major disaster, what kind of things are we talking about?
That, that, that can be, uh, a, a wide array, uh, of disasters that we're concerned with, obviously, the, the biggest being earthquake, uh, we live here in, uh, in fall territory, fault land, and, uh, that would be the biggest, and as we all know, um, living here in Southern California, that, uh, uh, I'm going to knock on wood here, Councilmember Schultz, but, uh, we spent quite some time since our last significant earthquake, uh, in that too, there's , uh, items, excuse me, in, in that, in any other, uh, wide-scale emergency that we have, major conflagration with regards to wildland fires, uh, mudslides, as we've experienced with that as well, so, anything that would impact our city, uh, that, that would have major, uh, a, a major detriment to us being able to, again, pick up our, our continuity of operations, ensure that we're, uh, providing our services to the community as quickly as timely as possible.
Uh, thank you, chief, just one more question, Mr. Mayor, uh, with regards to item number one, which is the Fire Recruit Academy, I think it's terrific that we're no longer relying on our, uh, salary savings to, to fund the academy, so, moving forward, do you anticipate the need for annual academies to fill vacancies?
Yeah, that, that's an interesting topic, is the, uh, the, the landscape of our recruitment has drastically changed, and, um, we have done a very good job of, of forecasting our needs as far as attrition, but, uh, the, the current landscape, as far as, uh, the demand for firefighters has grown exponentially, and, and currently there is a, a high demand for not only firefighters, but paramedics, and so consequently, it is seen, it is seen nationally, uh, particularly here in the Southern California region, though, what's occurred is the larger scale departments have also, uh, had that same demand, and so unfortunately, uh, uh, we're seeing some of the smaller agencies, such as Burbank, see some of our, our, our firefighters transition to those larger agencies, so consequently, as I stated, that landscape of recruitment has changed, we need to be more agile with how we're able to go through these recruitments, and, and so this, this seed money here will help us to do just that, uh, and we'd have that to be able to initiate a, uh, a recruitment, should we have, again, uh, unforeseen vacancies that occur, the last thing that I want to have is, is where we were several years ago with the forced hire situations that we were at, that was devastating to our agency, and I do not want to see that happen again, so again, the, these dollars here, particularly in, in collaboration and working with the city manager's office, will allow us to be able to be more agile with that recruitment, and be able to capitalize on the cream of the crop that may be out there, again, the demand is high, so we want to be able to capitalize, excuse me, on those, uh, those members that are, or those candidates that are out there for us to be able to draw into our, our Burbank Fire family.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question, chief, I couldn't let this go by without asking a question. Uh, 300,000 dollars for an academy, so, what's your forecast, and about when, would you be looking at 10, 15, 20, in two or three years?
Uh, as far as to, total candidates or recruits? Uh, well, that, that all depends, again, on the dynamics that are surrounding the current recruitments, and as we're sitting right now, what we want to put in that threshold is about that member of five, uh, so again, we don't get ourselves back in that cycle of, of, of having that big demand for firefighters, so, uh, this, uh, these dollars would allow us, again, to initiate that recruitment, to, to keep us at, at a manageable range, uh, should we, uh, unfortunately see, again, outside of attrition and, and so forth, see something, uh, unforeseen, that would see a large member of our, a, a large number of our, um, department, uh, transition out, uh, of, uh, of, of our agency to another agency, we would want to be able to, again, capitalize on that, so, these dollars would help us to get that initiated, if there was going to be a need because of that demand and the, the, the broader number that we may be looking at, we may be having to come back to council to request, uh, uh, some more dollars to be able to assist with that, depending on that total number, but our, our goal is to keep that, 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 that look at five, five and six, six and seven, uh, in, in that manageable range versus getting to that broader range where we're looking at 20, you know, 18 to 20 as we get this last class.
Are your projections of retirements, are they coming pretty close to what, you know, you're asking, how, when are you going to retire, chief?
We're, we're getting close, we're getting close.
Three bad shifts and you're out?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not there, no, I'm not there, but we are, the, the, our classes-
Then I mean, you're asking, I know the Seymour senior members, what are you looking at, right?
Correct, yeah, we do our best to forecast that way, absolutely, project, and then through that, we'll see, obviously, promotions that will go with that too, that ultimately re, uh, equate to firefighter positions, and so we're staying abreast of that, so that we can have a, a, a firm understanding of where that's at, and then be, as best we can, be in front of it, as you well know, there is that reflex time it takes to be able to go through a recruitment, ultimately begin that initial, and then get us to actually an academy, and then graduate, and then actually on the line, uh, working, so, um, we, uh, we, we, we manage, manage that, and keep a very close eye on that, for certain.
I'd like to hear that you're being proactive instead of reactive, you're trying to be, as much as possible, and I also want to encourage, and I know you've heard me say this many a times over my whole time in, on council, maybe we should look at the recruitment phase, maybe that's taking too long, maybe we're asking, we're doing the same thing that we used to do 25 years ago, when there were, you know, thousands of applicants coming in for firefighter and for police officer, that's no longer the, what's happening now.
Yeah, you're exactly right, Mr. Mayor, and, and we have done, uh, just that, we've been able to look at different types of, and modes of, uh, our recruitments to be able to, again, remain more agile with that, uh, different testing exam, for example, FCTC through the state, uh, provides a, a, a different range of, as you recall, once we had had, our recruitments was, we went, we would do a, a written exam, and that list would hold for, for two years, and as members came off of that, be it our department or other agencies, what would, what was left was the balance of that, well, this new model of, of recruitment, uh, or exam allows for that, as it's replenished, that, that, the cream of the crop, if you will, are right back atop, and we would have access, again, to be able to see those, uh, those candidates in our recruitments, so again, that, that's a different model and mode that we've adapted to, to be able to, again, try to find those best and those highest of character integrity to be on, bring on to our agency.
Great, thank you, that's good to hear, anyone else, colleagues, fire department, the chief's here, okay, move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, police department, deputy chief, I mean, correction, uh, Chief Albany?
Just got the mold on.
It'd be worse if I called him Sergeant Albany, I used to call him that, years ago.
You, you actually did, so, uh, that goes back many years, uh, mayor, vice mayor, council members, good evening.
Uh, sir, I was, uh, uh, looking over the budget, and in Ms. Becker's presentation, we talked about 132,000, 750 for police communications manager, 22,000, 540 for motor officer safety equipment, but what I didn't see is in one of the report, in one of the reports that I got for tonight's council meeting preparation, you're requesting one-time monies for 15,000 dollars, which increases your budget 0.3%, what's the 15,000 dollars for? There's no written-
So that's the personal protection, uh, uh, equipment?
Oh, for PPE?
PPE, yeah, so we spend, uh, pre-COVID, about 9,000 dollars a year on gloves and, and, and stuff related to that, uh, uh, this, this year that we're concluding, we're up to 27 and change, and we still have two months left, so that's gloves, masks, wipes, everything associated with that, and I would remind folks, is that it's not only our police officers, we maintain a jail, we have a lobby, we have folks in and out, so, um, uh, we, uh, that's equipment that we need, so, 15,000 is what we're, uh, projecting, because what we don't know is what's going to happen two, three, four months from now, uh, if there's a sea change, if there's not a sea change, then it will, uh, land out about 9,000 a year.
Okay, my next question, and I need the city manager to maybe help me out, uh, it's not a personnel question I'm asking, but it's related to a position within the budget, so you've been chief now for how long, sir?
Well, interim chief from July 13th to December 29th, chief from December 29th to tonight.
All right.
I don't know about tomorrow, but tonight.
Okay, I like it, I like it. So, my question is, Mr. City Manager or the chief, is where is the savings, because obviously you haven't put anybody of your command, again, not personnel, I'm looking at the budget and the position, I don't want to get in trouble by Mr. City Manager, I mean, city attorney here, so, my question is, since we don't have a, in position and pocket, an assistant chief, I was just looking at, I think that's a, uh, increase of 1,500 dollars plus benefits, plus a take-home car, plus pension, so when I'm looking at, you're requesting 0.3% added to the budget with 15,000, but you haven't filled that position, are you planning, not personnel matter, just the dollars and signs for an assistant chief's position, if you're not planning to fill that in your, in the next fiscal year, then I would ask the city manager, what is the savings, and do we have to give him an additional 15,000, when we have a vacant position that I believe can absorb, because I, where's that money going, since he's been chief, um, city manager or?
Go ahead.
Uh, so, so basically, uh, council member, uh, you're, you're asking if there's sufficient salary savings from, um, underfilling the deputy, uh, police chief to be able to, um, uh, use that instead of, uh, um-
Increasing, 0.3%.
So, so we could certainly do that, I, I think Courtney, uh, would-
I don't let Courtney do the math on that, and just for clarity, is that, if, if that position, that's a differential, and it's not persible, so, uh, uh, if, uh, you know, that position, uh, is filled, it is not persible, meaning that it's not pension base, uh, that person would retire as a captain, so, but let me do a better case, uh, study, so if I had left as deputy chief and retired, actually, I would have retired as a captain, because it is just a differential, but the mask is complicated, it is really complicated, that's why I'm going to have, uh-
Well, that's, I, I'm just asking for the dollar signs, and-
And again, uh, tomorrow may be a different day, I don't know.
Yeah, and, and, and again, if, if, and, and my rationale, and, and through the city manager, is that if we're not going to fill that position in next year's budget, then obviously that savings from the department's budget should come back to the general fund, and- the department's budget should come back to the general fund and it could pick up.
Carries over.
And if I, yeah, yeah, zero point three plus, I'm looking at twenty-two, five forty, then I'm saying, well, okay, the deputy chief has a take-home car, that costs insurance, it's a city vehicle, city, so there's a lot of savings there. And I'm just trying to watch the people's dollars. That's why we go through the budget process and that's why council, I'm asking this question. That's it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Good to see you guys. It's actually not that complicated. The police department is actually not budgeted for a deputy chief position. We're budgeted for four captain positions. So the deputy chief is actually a specialty assignment that is made and when that assignment is made, they get twelve percent of their base pay. So we're actually budgeted at a top step for a captain position and should we decide either this fiscal year or coming fiscal year to assign a deputy chief, then they would get twelve percent on that base pay. So the actual salary savings is inverse of probably what you're looking for. So if we took one of our four captains, so that spot is currently filled by a captain.
Not to cut you out, but here's where it's kind of tough to understand. So Captain Albany gets promoted to the assistance position. I get it's not persible, not pension, but he still gets a twelve percent increase if I heard you right. So that twelve percent increase still has to come from somewhere. So all I'm asking, we're saving twelve percent since he's been acting chief to chief and if we don't have a, an assistant chief next year, that twelve percent should be either going to that zero point three percent increase and that still gives additional monies to help support the twenty-two, five forty. Because somewhere, that twelve percent is going to come from the general fund if he puts, again, I'm not doing personnel, but if he puts a assistant chief tomorrow or next year in the budget, then great, that's going to cost the general fund twelve percent. And if we're not going to fill that position, I want to know now what's going into the next fiscal year because I'm still trying to, like the five of us, we're trying to make sure we stay in the black. That's my reasoning for question, council member.
So salary budgeting is not an exact science. When we put together the salary and benefits budget for the next year, we look at all staff at a specific point in time. And we say, what step are each of those folks at? How much increase are they eligible for the next year? Who's making what differential? And based on the, the knowledge that we have about our current staff, that's how we put together and develop our budget for the next year. So if that deputy chief position was not currently being occupied, meaning there was nobody receiving that differential, at the time we developed the budget for next year, we would not have budgeted for that differential because it, it wasn't currently being occupied. Now, if there was somebody in the budget, and that would have, I guess, been about February or March that we based those salaries on, then we would see the differential show up in next year's budget. But I would just point out that's, you said it's a fifteen hundred dollar a month differential, I believe, or approximately?
I kind of calculate approximately.
About twenty-five thousand a year.
Yeah.
You know, compared to the police overall salary and benefit budget, it's a pretty small percentage, so.
Well, it's small, but when I'm looking at the twenty-five thousand a year and we're requesting for twenty-two, five forty from the general fund, and we're still carrying the deputy chief twelve percent funding because technically it's in this current year's budget, so I'm looking at the budget going forward, I'm like, wait a minute, there's, there's this twelve percent, twenty-five thousand dollars that's somewhere that we don't have a body, so that should go back into the general fund for other things. Or it could actually pretty much either cover the motorcycle officer's equipment or that additional, zero point three for PPE, fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, and then, sorry, sorry. And then we just approved the UWASI grant money, which the fire department got PPE equipment in, in that grant, how come the police department, and that would save the budget under the police budget fifteen thousand dollars or zero point three addition? I'm just looking at the budget what I got over the weekend.
Mr. City Manager, please carry this.
Sure, if the council's so inclined, we could certainly use the existing, the incremental difference between that differential and what the captain is, which is a little over a thousand dollars a month. We could use that since the chief's been appointed chief back in July. So we almost have about nine months at, you know, so I think it's roughly about fifteen hundred a month is that twelve percent increase going from police captain to deputy chief, that's the differential. So that's nearly fifteen thousand. So what we could do is use that existing, and I don't know if he's going to fill that anytime soon, but it's nearly fifteen thousand dollars. If we wanted to use existing money, existing savings from that difference of not having a, underfilling basically a deputy chief and not providing that differential, we could carry that over into next year for that PPE. It's fifteen thousand out of the sixty-two million dollar budget, so we, that's not, it's up to the council, we could certainly do that.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate, trying to find that money, council member, Prudos. I, of everyone up here, I'm probably the most critical of our police budget. However, I will say, if we do that now and we, for lack of a better term, nickel and dime that fifteen thousand, what in essence we're saying to the chief and the rest of the staff is, if you don't fill your positions quick enough, you're going to lose that budget. And what I don't want to do is use a budgetary method of forcing the chief to choose a deputy before he's ready to do so. I want to be able to give him the leniency in a given fiscal year to make the right personnel change and not be forced and constrained by us trying to lock him in with the budget. So I, I'm willing to allow it to be discretionary to the, to the chief, it's only fifteen thousand, and let him decide on his own time when he's found the right captain to promote or whoever he wants to bring up.
Here's what we have that's in place, mid-year appropriations. And that's when it comes to council. So if he put in a deputy chief several weeks or months from now and we get mid-year appropriations that we do twice a year, that money goes back. But let me tell you a story that a young council member found out that he kind of went at odds with the last fire chief. This went on for over ten years. There was over five hundred thousand dollars a year that was budgeted to put a firefighter on a truck and they used it for overtime. It wasn't until I went through the whole budget. And it was, it was a tough discussion, but no, the budget to me has to be very strict because this could, this could go on for years and that money will add up. And then when we're tight for resources, I want to be very strict on the people's money. I don't care if it's public works, CDD or Park and Recs. Bottom line is, this could be managed from the savings. That's not taking away the position, which I agree with you, sir. I'm not here to nickel and dime the chief of all people. I'm his biggest cheerleader, but nothing against the chief, but I'm just going through the numbers of the budget. That's what's on their agenda and I'm trying to watch the people's money. And if it's not being spent, then you know what? We can use it for other things, like you always used to say, we can use that money to help out homeless, you know, anything that will add up. But, and, and, and your point, and what I agree, Vice Mayor, is that if he says, hey, I'm going to put in, you know, a deputy chief within the next two or three months, great. Mid-year appropriation or all he has to do is say, hey, I need to, through the city manager, I need twelve percent from the budget added because I just filled in a deputy chief spot at a council meeting, we approve it and it, he gets that money. So it does not stop the chief from ever putting an assistant chief if he wishes. I'm just looking at the dollars and signs and that money will add up quick. But thank you.
Sure, I would like, I'd ask the chief, it was, would you be comfortable with that policy decision there to be able to give you the opportunity at mid, mid, mid-budget?
My position is, just tell me what to do, I will make it work. Okay?
Yeah, we're not making policy here.
Right.
This has happened for years.
Yeah, that's why we go through the budget.
This is nothing new. This discussion has been going on for years.
Okay. I mean, Jess can tell you about the big books and you got to cut how much, three million? So this happened, that's, that's why we go through the budget, sir. And I've been on the hot seat several times.
Yes, sir.
Do you have more police questions or?
Let me ask my colleagues and see.
Thank you, Chief. It's not, it's not against you, I'm just looking at the dollars and cents, sir.
I understand.
Anyone else?
You were still a good sergeant to work for.
Yes.
I have, yeah, I have a question going back to the animal shelter. The, our Parks and Rec director mentioned that it was two point one million to bring it over to Parks and Rec. By your recollection, last year, was that about what we were spending when it was in the police department or was it different?
It was two point one million. It was two point one million and then, then we're, it'll be May thirtieth, it'll go to, check that June thirtieth, Parks and Recs and wish them the best.
Wish them well.
All right, that's all.
It's a gift, yeah.
And you know, the animal shelter was a different animal, for like a better word, because you had a lieutenant, you had officers that were part of the animal shelter. Now in the Parks Department, you're not going to have officers, you're not going to have lieutenants, I don't think.
No.
No, so.
It'll be staff by Parks and Rec.
Any, any safety officer, whether it be a fire or a police officer, those are high-dollar individuals. We all know that.
Yes.
Everybody out there is going like this. But anyway, chief, on this police communications manager, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven fifty, will be replacing a lieutenant that oversees the communication center?
So a lieutenant that's been on a rotating basis to oversee the comm center. This is something that we have wanted for many, many years to civilianize, completely civilianize or non-sworn that, that, that position. And, and if you recall, was it last year or year and a half, a good word, my subject, the jail manager was last year?
Two years.
Two years ago, to have a jail manager, a non-sworn jail manager. And that, that model has worked well for us. Most law enforcement agencies our side will have a non-sworn manager. So we believe that this is the best practice moving forward and there's continuity in the chain of command for those non-sworn people versus lieutenant that they may see infrequently. So you have stability and you also have a career path for non-sworn folks too. There's a variety of career paths that they can pursue now. So this is something that is needed and we're looking forward to it moving forward.
Now let's reference a career path, in-house or in other agencies?
In-house, but, but here's, you know, that's, that's valid. I mean, do we want to be the folks that develop folks for other agencies? And we're competitive right now and we have folks that are interested, especially on the non-sworn side, in coming to Burbank to work. So we're always at risk of that. The fire department just lost their assistant chief to the city of Santa Monica. That's great for Burbank because they want our folks, so we become competitive and we do everything we can to keep them here.
Okay, now, and I remember we talked about, not last year, the year before, about we were having a manager or somebody to oversee all the videotaping, body worn camera taping. It was going to be a big struggle, there was a big situation because of keeping those tapes for a certain amount of time. How are we doing with that?
So we're doing well. So we have one admin analyst that is currently overseeing that and then that admin analyst subordinates to a sworn lieutenant. So as far as managing that program, our body worn camera, in-car camera system, it's working out well right now.
That's good. Excellent. Thank you very much. Anyone else with the police department? We're through? Chief? Have a seat, chief.
Thank you. It will do.
Anything else?
I'm done, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, that's fine. You know, I'm going to go back around to the, to the departments that I wasn't able, I didn't institute the rotation that we had here, the last few departments, which was a great idea, Mr. Mayor, but it was a little late. It was a little late. Let's see, let's go back to, I made notes, I did, I really did. Anyone want to talk about the city clerk's office?
Yeah, they're doing great.
Okay, excellent. Especially the passport service, right? City council office, anyone? All right, I'm just going back, city attorney's office?
I have one.
You have one question, there we go, see?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It wouldn't be a meeting without me grilling our city attorney on something. Sorry, Joe. So, Mr. City Attorney, I did have one question on the temporary staffing. So I see that you mentioned here at peak levels, the city attorney's office had twelve attorneys, which you currently do, if I'm counting correctly, and nine support positions, and I think you currently have seven. So just wondering if you could explain the rationale, why pursue the temporary staffing as opposed to seeking a full-time position?
The city attorney's office is playing well with all of the other departments that have excess needs. The city, I've worked for the city for going on seventeen years and Burbank has been very financially responsible. So I asked for additional positions and I applaud our strong financial. The city manager indicated that we do have some one-time funds and so we're going to have to float with temporary staff. We have had an incredibly difficult time recruiting. We've had positions open for more than a year that we recruited and had almost no candidates. We're paying twice the cost in temporary services as it costs for the city to retain a full, permanent full-time and it's, it's very difficult. All of the departments are going through this, so we set aside our request, we'll be renewing it next year, but we, we do need to, we have one temporary employee we would like to keep as long as they will stay. It's a very strong labor market for legal staff and we're trying to keep up. All of the support departments at the city are trying to keep up with the city's advancing mission. There's a lot of demands. This will go to help cushion. We've also had people grow their families with the city of Burbank, but that creates overlapping leaves as well. So it's not only vacancies, but Burbank is a good place to work and raise your family, but that also creates ongoing staffing demands.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the city manager's PIO department. I've got one question, Mr. City Manager. The communications manager position?
Yeah.
At nineteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine, is that going to be a part-time position?
No. So what we were...
Nineteen thousand is pretty reasonable.
Not bad, huh?
Yeah, not at all. Good job.
What we were actually able to do was offset that by one clerical, one and a half clerical position, so that's the executive assistant in the city manager's office, as well as we're underfilling a executive assistant in the council office. Mr. Thompson is, I think, a senior clerk versus an executive assistant. So, so that has worked well for us, especially over the last two years. So we, the main goal for us was twofold, was one, we have the assistant community development director that's currently overseeing PIO as well. We need to free her up to concentrate on housing and homelessness, so that's a big deal. And then we also need additional resources for that PIO. We need to have some concentration there. So this kind of gets us both. So for this one, we kind of get a twofer, so to speak, because we'll be able to enhance both PIO as well as get McFarland back to be able to concentrate on, on CDD. So, so that's kind of the, the plan.
Sounds good to me. Excellent. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't miss the opportunity to ask our city manager on the spot, follow-up to that. So what are the deliverables with getting the communications manager back? What is it that they're going to be able to do that maybe hasn't been accomplished over the last few years with the cost savings in place?
Yeah, I think Ms. Wilkie, who actually oversees the PIO, I think overall, you're going to have a more, better dedication to that department just because Ms. McFarland right now, she is, you know, split in many different directions. So just having that, you know, concentration within that department is huge. So both from a graphic, illustrative, expectations, social media, print, relations with our papers, my Burbank, those type of things, you know, training, whatever it is, we hope to enhance all that website, mobile three-one-one. So we're kind of excited about providing more resources to that and just boosting our numbers with respect to all aspects, whether it's the website, social media, et cetera. So hopefully Ms. Wilkie will have a better answer.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I don't know that Judy Wilkie, sorry, assistant city manager, and I don't know that I have a better answer, I can just probably enhance that a bit. One would be, I just want to first say that Ms. McFarland has done an excellent job over the past few years taking on an additional assignment. That was not an easy task in terms of what her normal job is and then to take this on. And I think she's done an excellent job and has brought the PIO into a place that we were not. I mean, from the website to our social media presence, talking points, just, you know, press releases, just everything that we do. You know, I've been here thirty years and I've seen that grow exponentially in the last couple of years under her leadership. So I want to say that, that she has done an amazing job in that role. And as part of that, she has done an amazing job to work with that staff and to enhance that staff and to change that staff a bit as well, right? So there's been some new positions added, they've changed. We used to do a huge video presence and now that has changed and things are easier now in the way that you can... We used to do a, a huge video presence and now that has changed and things are easier now in the way that you can do video. So, I think that she's done a great job to, to groom a lot of that staff, to bring in new energy, new ideas, and I think that you've seen PIO grow under her leadership. So, I think that's part of it. I think where you're really going to probably see, you'll see deliverables in PIO for sure, based on what the City Manager said, there'll be a more concentrated effort for that person, not feeling pulled in a couple of, of areas. But I don't want to say that anything's, that we've missed the boat in any area, because I don't think that that's the case. But I do think that where you'll see some changes is that in community development, I think there'll be some, some deliverables that have maybe not been able to be focused on in that arena, since Ms. McFarland will be able to kind of step away from that and, um, be there to take on that, that assignment and those responsibilities, because we all know that that area has grown, not only via economic development and all that has occurred via COVID, but also her, her role in homelessness and housing. And we know that that is a huge effort of ours as we move forward, and we can never have enough staff in those areas. So, that's, you know, just being, her being able to be more concentrated in that arena will be very valuable for the city. So, um, I think that all in all, um, you know, we're in that position now where it's, it feels right, it's the right thing to do to, to, to let that, that department grow in a different way. And the great thing is, we still have Ms. McFarland here to help nurture that and to help ensure the, the success of that, that department. So, um, that's all that I would add to that.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. And, and Ms. Wilkie, I just wanted to be clear, I, I think Ms. McFarland's done a phenomenal job. And so, while I'm supportive of this agenda item or the budget request, yeah, it's because I know that she has an awful lot on her plate in terms of housing and homelessness, economic recovery, which are the council's top priorities. So, I'm glad we can lighten her load just a little bit, so she can focus on those things, and appreciate the answer.
Well, now she can, uh, take a deep breath, not having to work with council members and mayors, that'll be a, a big relief, thank you very much.
Nah, she's going to miss that, but she'll still be working with you, so.
Great, thank you. Anything, nothing else for City Manager? Okay, you're lucky. Uh, Management Services Department? Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you. Um, on the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the ADA consultant, what will that person do?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Springer, uh, councilmembers. Beth McClinton with the Management Services Director, uh, Management Services Department. Thank you for the question. Um, so what we are looking to do is, we're looking to bring in an ADA consultant to help us manage case, our caseload, and also help us to identify improvements throughout our process. So, what we were trying to do is, we are always trying to look for ways to improve our processes. And when we reached out to our fellow, uh, agencies, Glendale and Pasadena, what we found out is that our caseload is enormously higher than those agencies. And the reason is because they outsource a large piece of what they do. So, for example, over the last twelve months, we had about two hundred and forty-eight cases that we, uh, dealt with in-house with our one staff person. Glendale, uh, had, they outsourced most of their caseload. They had, um, about five cases that they actually did in-house and all the rest of them, they outsourced. For Pasadena, they have more of a split model, where they dealt with about fifty to sixty cases in-house, and then they outsourced or had a consultant deal with the rest of them. So, where our caseload is so much higher is because we deal with, um, ADA that arises out of workers' compensation cases. Pasadena and Glendale both outsourced those particular cases. And then, the other thing that is very unique to, uh, Burbank and the Management Services Department is we actually do Title II cases as well. Title II is public access to government service cases. So, if you have somebody in the community that needs assistance, that needs a reasonable accommodation to be able to access public services, Management Services does those cases as well. And no other HR department in Southern California that we talk to actually does those cases. So, it is likely those cases and our workers' comp cases that we would outsource to a consultant, who's going to have much more specialized information and knowledge to deal with those cases, and will also be able to give us some ideas and pointers on how we can improve our processes internally as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? So, by contacting Glendale and Pasadena, we learned that they were doing, using a different format?
That's right. So, we're always trying internally to figure out ways that we can provide better services to our, our departments. Um, and ADA has been a, an area that we know that we want to improve in. And so, we did a survey of, we looked at Glendale, we looked at Pasadena, we looked at several of the other agencies that we kind of talked to regularly about HR items. And this was the big glaring thing, is that we internally do a lot of cases that other agencies outsource, because they're very specialized, because caseloads are higher, uh, for all of those reasons. And so, we said, okay, it looks like that is really what the best practice is, and that's why we're, uh, bringing this before you this evening.
Now, as far as, do we have the expertise to handle some of those cases?
So, we do, um, we do, we do. Um, we are very fortunate that our Management Services staff partners very closely with the City Attorney's Office. Um, and so, we have built up a lot of expertise, um, within that area. But it is true that some of the Title II things, sometimes there's research that has to be involved, we have to look at case law with the City Attorney's Office. So, those cases can be more complicated. Um, and workers' comp is really, we're, we're trying to improve our processes there as well. Um, it was a longstanding practice where we didn't engage in the ADA process with workers' comp cases until somebody was permanent and stationary. The best, the best practice that we have now learned by going to conferences, seeking outside counsel, kind of trying to do our due diligence to do the research, is that really ADA and workers' comp should be running parallel. And so, we need to engage with workers' comp claims right when they start. So, we're doing those in parallels. Um, and that's also a big reason why our caseload is so high. And really, those workers' comp claims for ADA, uh, the, those other agencies outsource those as well.
So, we realize that we're trying to do too much?
Uh, in essence, yes.
And this is, that's what it comes down to.
In essence.
I appreciate you thinking about that and implementing something moving forward, that'll be great. Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you. So, the two hundred and forty cases, is, is there, two hundred and forty-eight cases, is there a typical case?
So, um, of those, about two hundred of them are employment cases, right? Uh, so, two hundred are employment cases, or they're cases that come out of the workers' comp system. About fifty of them, uh, a year would be those Title II, uh, public access cases. So, you might have, in the employment side, you might have, um, an employee who is injured off duty, right? And they can work limited duty for a little while, and then they would come back, we would accommodate them on a, on a temporary basis. You might have somebody who's injured at work, they're in the workers' comp system, they're off for a while, but then they can come back and have, uh, restrictions. We figure out how to accommodate them in that situation. Um, you, you might have somebody who's got permanent restrictions, and perhaps they need some sort of permanent accommodation, so we've worked through that as well. Um, you might have also recruitment accommodations, if we have a candidate going through the recruitment process, and they need some sort of accommodation to be able to participate in that process, the ADA staff works with our recruitment staff to take care of that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, real quick, can we, uh, partner up with these other cities and maybe take advantage of some of those resources by working together?
Um, you know, that's a great idea, uh, idea, Mayor, we'll definitely have those conversations. Um, we recently had a model with our reprographics, um, equipment, where we did, um, we took advantage of a bid that had already, had already, um, taken place through another agency. Um, so, we have connections with those agencies, um, we know what consultants they're using, there may be something in the purchasing world that we could work out with that. So, we'll definitely take that under advisement.
I mean, I know the Fire Department uses it, I don't know if the Police Department uses it, when they purchase their vehicles. Fire Department's piggyback on LA County Fire or LA City Fire. So, it's nothing new out there, it's just a matter of looking into it and-
Absolutely.
Getting some, uh, right?
That's a great idea, we will definitely take that under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Anyone else? Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Uh, Financial Services? Oh, you're up, Miss Recker. Any questions from, for Financial Services? I just had one question, you mentioned three to five years for the study?
Uh, yes, so, the Government Finance Officers Association, that's our national organization that sort of makes recommended best practices for, uh, things like studies or audits. Um, they recommend that, uh, you do a citywide fee study every three to five years. So, I know, um, those of you who were on the council will remember, when we brought the study to you five years ago, uh, we, it, in, uh, concurrence with that, adopted that, that City Council Cost Recovery Policy, right? And that policy says that we're going to collect certain fees at certain rates of cost recovery and, uh, increase it by CPI every year to keep up with that cost recovery. Well, over time, the CPI doesn't always necessarily reflect the city's costs. So, occasionally, like, uh, you want to start from ground zero, look at your fees again, how much city service is going into those fees? How many staff hours, uh, you know, does it take to issue a permit or provide, you know, different services? We'll look at that, we'll, we'll break down each fee that we charge basically throughout the city, figure out the number of staff hours, the supplies, the overhead, and determine, uh, what the cost is of providing that service, and then apply it against the cost recovery policy to determine at what rate we should be collecting through city service fees. So, some may go up, some may go down, but rather than just always using CPI as a factor, you really want to kind of take a new look at that, um, at least every, uh, three to five years, because ours is so large, we're such a full-service city that, you know, five years is probably about all we can handle, because it'll be, you know, pretty close to a year undertaking for us to go through that.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I've got a question for the Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Garcia. And I had marked down already the animal shelter vehicle, uh, was asking how many they already had, and you were asking for additional one. But I also noticed Burbank on Parade, there was twenty-two thousand dollars budgeted, for Burbank on Parade.
I believe the Burbank on Parade budget is in the, um, Burbank Water and Powers budget, but let me confirm.
Oh, in that case, all right, wait till you hear.
I apologize, yes, twenty-two thousand for Burbank on Parade. I was confused with the-
Thank you for making me look good.
I was confused with the Burlington River of Roses Association.
Oh, there you go, yeah, that's true.
I, I probably gave Don a heart attack, but, um.
You didn't know you had Burbank on Parade, huh, Don? Uh, welcome to Burbank. So, is, that's going to be staying in there, what's the status of the organization itself?
Correct, so, the organization, uh, Parks and Rec is liaison to, to, um, Burbank on Parade. We are in, uh, frequent communication with them. Because of the pandemic, um, they suspended their parade. Earlier this year, they were hopeful that they could have a parade in the fall. Uh, but about a couple of months ago, they confirmed to us that they're not going to be able to put together a parade for, um, the twenty-twenty-two calendar year, but they are, uh, planning to do the parade, resume the parade next year in twenty-twenty-three, around the same time that they normally, uh, would do it.
Great, thank you very much for the update. Uh, Library Service, that's all I have. Oh, you have one more? Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, really quickly, um, I wanted to ask about item number five, which has to do with the, uh, low-cost vaccine clinic to the public for the animals. Um, I think this is terrific. I was just wondering, are there going to be income requirements, uh, attached to those who are eligible to participate? Will it be the income requirements of the PASS program, or what do the details look like right now?
Uh, so, no, it wouldn't be income eligible or, or based on your income. We just know that, um, we would be able to provide, and, and if, if I'm mistaken, I'm sure Ms., Chris Smith, uh, who will be overseeing the animal shelter permanently, um, can, can elaborate to my response. But really, it's just providing, um, by doing it in-house, we would be able to provide, um, provided at a lower cost than perhaps residents could get going to their vet, or going to other locations.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Thank you, go ahead, Vice Mayor?
Uh, yeah, just a follow-up on that. So, so just by operating that vaccine clinic, it's just going to be cheaper? It's like our passport program, we, we can offer it through the Clerk's Office at a little bit cheaper than if you go to your-
Yes, and, and I will just kind of, you know, with the caveat that, you know, the animal shelter in, in this short period of time that, uh, we've been co-managing, they are a very resourceful group, who are, uh, really similar to Parks and Recreation, right? We, we operate, we do a lot on, on a rather, um, limited budget, where we seek partnerships, uh, we seek, uh, grants, and, uh, that is the model that, um, they have been working under, which we, um, would just continue supporting, and that will also help with our, you know, keeping our, our, uh, service high and costs as low. And, um, the PASS program does serve the, uh, adoptions, so we are able to provide, uh, reduce costs for pet adoptions through the PASS program. And again, it's just something that we're going to continue, um, promoting.
Just a follow-up on that, uh, earlier, we mentioned that it costs the same amount to run the animal shelter through the Police Department, so we're not really seeing any cost savings switching to Parks and Rec. But are we getting better services, more services, is that the impetus behind that?
Absolutely. So, while the animal shelter under the Police Department has been doing a fantastic job, uh, we believe that under Parks and Recreation, because of, uh, marketing, we have dedicated marketing, uh, staff, um, there's a lot of cross-promotional opportunities. We do a lot of community events in which we will have the animal shelter, as they were just most recently at the Spring Extravaganza. Um, we just believe that through, uh, by them being under the Parks and Recreation Department, we, um, it is our goal to see, uh, increase in pet adoptions, um, just enhancing the already fantastic service to the community, just making it even better.
Okay, okay, great, thank you, appreciate that.
Uh, Ms. Garcia, I see another, uh, item in regards to the utility box beautification program?
Correct.
Twelve thousand dollars, and this is funded by the Art in Public Places?
Correct, so, the Cultural Arts, Burbank Cultural Arts Commission and, uh, Art in Public Places Committee, um, have developed a really fantastic partnership, by which one group has some funding and the other group has, uh, a fantastic program. So, they work collaboratively. So, art, we use Art in Public Places funds, which are funds that the city receives through developers. So, these are not, uh, taxpayer dollars, it's money that developers pay to the city in lieu of onsite art. And so, we're taking a portion, only twelve thousand dollars, um, and it's about a thousand dollars per, uh, utili-, utility box. And so, the Cultural Arts Commission, um, administers this program, by which they do a call for artists, um, have a committee that selects the artists, and they paint these utility boxes. So, yes, that twelve thousand dollars will add, um, an additional twelve utility boxes in our community that will be painted.
So, Cultural Arts Commission has the creativity in the brains, but Art in Public Places has some money, in essence.
Yes, and, and, you know, it really is that the limited, you know, Art in Public Places Committee's, um, responsibilities are very limited and confined to, um, uh, public art, and their focus traditionally has been on, um, installing more permanent, long-term, actual art installations in the city. So, yes, absolutely, Cultural Arts Commission has more of that creativity. And so, they're trying to find a way by which they could, um, enhance our community, and so, it's, you know, a mural, we're going to find a way to make that mural, uh, be as permanent as possible, hence the ability to use those dollars.
A lot of those monies count from also the developers, obviously, that, the building that goes out throughout the city, right?
Correct, it's all, it's all developer money.
Those are large amounts, I mean, when a percentage of the development goes towards art.
Correct.
Whether it's, whether it's inside their building or outside, they have to, I don't know what the percentage is of the, of the project.
It's one percent of their construction costs, not including parking, so parking structures are not included in that calculation. I believe it's one percent for the first fifteen million, then from the fif-, from fifteen million to twenty million, it's three-quarters of a percent, then it drops, uh, to half of a percent.
Okay, that's all I've got, anybody else? Thank you very much, thank you, Ms. Garcia. Uh, just one quick question to the Library Services Director. Welcome back. Um, LA County Grants, do we apply to LA County for any grants?
Um, uh, generally for the library, no. So, LA County operates its own library system.
Right.
That has many branches, and then cities can choose to opt out of that and operate their own library. So, to my knowledge, LA County generally does not have grants that are open to the independently operated public libraries, such as our own.
But there are some cities that have got the money from LA County to build their libraries.
Oh, for construction?
For construction.
Okay, um, that-
You're not aware of that?
Um, well, that's, in, again, to my knowledge, that is generally a situation- Well, that's, again, to my knowledge, that is generally a situation where, for instance, the, um, county has been operating it and it's been handed over to the city, or there were some agreements from many years ago. I'm not aware of any ongoing funds for something like that. If you are aware of anything or have a person that I can ask about that, certainly let me know.
We'll talk about it.
Generally, there's much more available to us at the state level rather than the county level.
Okay, thank you very much. One more question to the Community Development Department, thank you for coming up here and your patience with me. Mr. Prescott, and this was already asked, welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Permit technician?
Yes.
And I noticed under the Community Development Department is asking for a permit technician at eighty-five thousand plus. And the Public Works Department also asked for a permit technician at eighty-five thousand plus. But the Public Works Department says it's got partial revenue offset. Do we foresee any revenue offset with your request?
Well, the revenue that comes in from the collection of permit fees.
So, so yes, is that what you're telling me, or no? I was just comparing the same position, one says revenue offset, the other one doesn't, leaves a blank.
Yes, it, it's possible, so each department tracks their permit fees separately depending on what the services are for. Uh, you may remember that last year, uh, we did add several positions for, uh, community development, uh, with regards to permits. So I believe we sort of already took advantage of those increased fees to, uh, add positions last year. Whereas Public Works, we, we didn't really add positions, so we still had that sort of fee increase that we could use to offset the position this year. So I don't necessarily know that we're gonna see another increase in permit revenues for CDD that would be enough to fund their position for this year, but it's quite possible. We in finance are pretty restrictive, if you're going to call something revenue offset, we want you to validate that you actually are going to receive the revenue. So it just, uh, maybe, you know, the way we looked at each of those, uh, revenues for those specific types of permits that each department does, it may differ between, uh, Public Works and CDD as far as how the revenues are tracking.
I like your answer, quite possible, that's, I'm going with that. Thank you very much, council members, anybody else have any questions? Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yes, um, thank you. In the, this is a pandemic and response question related to housing and... So in the 1.3 million CARES Act, we, is that where we allocated like rental and landlord assistance?
Yes, that's correct.
Is, did we spend all that?
I believe it's all spent, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, in full.
So was that eight hundred thousand dollars, do you remember what that amount was?
It was two, two separate pots, right?
Yes. The 1.3 was the general fund.
Yeah. Mayor Belo Marcos? Marcos Gonzalez, can I ask that?
Okay, and, um, so now we refer, well, the, the state is wrapping up, I guess their housing is key program.
Yeah, yes.
So our residents who need help, okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, uh, council members, and, uh, Marcos Gonzalez, Housing Development Manager. The CARES Act funds that we received were received in two phases. Phase one, we received approximately six hundred, over six hundred thousand. And phase two was about one point two million, um, over a period of twelve months. And that's through the CARES Act.
Okay, so how much of that went to help our tenants and landlords through the pandemic?
Uh, for the rent assistance programs, we, we had, we allocated a total of about, uh, almost five hundred thousand for rent assist- rent assistance. We leveraged that with some, um, County Measure H funds to bring up that total, um, amount.
Okay, and so now if we are contacted by somebody who needs help, we put them in touch with CDD? And then, then you in turn put them in touch with, um, Home Again or?
Right, with the CARES Act funds, since those have been, that those have been all exhausted.
Right.
We do have other resources available, so when the public does contact, uh, council, we would appreciate that referral coming to myself or the, um, or Mayor Leland. And we can make sure that it gets to some of our other service providers that have other funding.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you, anyone, any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor?
Sorry, Marcos.
One more question.
Just to follow that up, while you're there. Um, so just to clarify, uh, the, um, the housing is key, or the, it ended in April, right? And there's no money coming from the state for June, May and June, is that right?
Well, we're housing the key, we're referring to housing as key, we're not a direct recipient of those funds. Uh, any tenant or landlord could apply directly to the state. So those that did apply to the state, um, who met the deadline of March thirty-first, their application is still in the queue, so they may still be able to get assistance as they're working through all the applications that they, that the state received.
Um, do you know of any, uh, assistance coming from the county? I had heard something on June first, the county is putting together something similar. Do you know about this, or no?
Uh, no, I'm not too familiar with what the county is gonna have available, but I'm sure that they're looking at, I know they were looking at tenant protections, um, so they might incorporate some funding for that.
Okay, and if anybody has a problem now, if they hadn't applied already, you're saying reach out to CDD?
Uh, when it comes to, uh, some other forms of, like, say, rent-to-assistance, not housing as key, since we're not managing the housing as key program. But more for rent assistance, we can try to put them in touch, the household, um, to other programs that may be able to help them.
Okay, alright, great, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no other questions? Okay. Let's move on, Jennifer.
I wanted to thank the council for your very engaging questions. Um, if we have no further questions on the general fund, I will go ahead and turn it over to Ms. Lindell and her fantastic team to present the BWP budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Lindell. And you have the Burbank on Parade.
Thank goodness I don't have that because I do not recall it, thank you, Honorable Mayor.
You're gonna start building floats over there.
Yes, well, we do that. Vice Mayor and, uh, council members, really appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight to present the Burbank Water and Power budget. On our March board meeting, our board unanimously recommended this to, for us to carry this budget forward to city council members. So I'd like to start my presentation by giving you the opportunity to hear from the Chair of our Board, Mr. Robbie Brody, and also another board member, Mr. Felipe Escondar. And I believe we've got them on the WebEx.
Yes, hi. Ms. Lindell, I'm here.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Brody, so we'll start with Mr. Brody.
Hey, Mayor Talamontes, and council members, Gasha, you know, I'm just always beaming from ear to ear when I get to participate in a council meeting. I'm just so proud to be a volunteer for our city, uh, I'm probably one of the few volunteers that will speak tonight. But thank you for your confidence in me and Mr. Escondar and us. We've had a very tumultuous couple of months with our BWP board, but I want to share with you that all of our original board members reviewed and vetted the budget that you're gonna hear about tonight. And council members, I, I want you to know, I know you know it, but we take this so seriously. All of us come to these budget meetings with our binders and fifty Post-it notes with, uh, a ton of questions from all of us or the BWP staff. In fact, Mayor, you, you and Marissa, you, you freaked me out when, when you started talking about Burbank on Parade. I thought, oh, man, I know this budget forward and backward, but I don't remember that page. You know, the Burbank Water and Power operates with three goals, and that's delivering sustainable, affordable, and reliable power to the residents and businesses of our city. I'm gonna ask you to, to look at, at my focus on this budget, which is reliable. And Mayor, you've mentioned once or twice tonight where other departments have been proactive, and I think that's what you're gonna see in the water and power budget. Reliable is what I am all about. I want any resident or business owner, whether it's a movie studio or a hotel guest, or a small business, or any resident in any home or apartment in our city to flick a switch and have power with no delay. And I can tell you, when I go to work, there's always a lot of water cooler talk about, my power went out last night, my power went out this morning, my clocks were off. That is not a Burbanker who's talking because that does not happen in our city. How to do it? Well, you've gotta preserve our infrastructure with the needed improvements. There's been a lot of can-kicking even in my time on the board, and I think this budget is going to resolve those issues. The costs to repair and replace are up. And, you know, when I, when I'm at our, our BWP meetings, I see people wearing what I think are too many hats. And I know that Ms. Lindell is very aware of that, where I say, well, who's working on this? Well, it's the same person that's working on that. And I think that the staffing challenges are being met in this budget. In terms of sustainability, I think you're gonna see that our budget has an eye on three things. Efficiency, conservation, and renewables. And I'm very proud of Dawn's forward-thinking approach, uh, in these areas. Finally, I'm just gonna say affordability, even with the rate increases that you're going to hear about, BWP remains among the lowest water and power rates in all of Southern California. What do these increases mean for me? A very small homeowner by the Jostman Senior Center, an increase of about ten dollars, ten dollars a month. So, you know, I have to answer for my board to city council, and I'm very proud to do it. And I just want, I'm here to say that your board supports the twenty-two, twenty-three BWP budget. So thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm gonna, I leave the nuts and bolts to Dawn, and I know Mr. Escondar always has some nuts and bolts to add. So I'm gonna pass the baton to him and then on to Dawn, so thank you, council members.
Thank you, Chairman Brody, and good evening, Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you this evening. And as Mr. Brody said, I have some of the nuts and bolts to cover, but Mr. Brody provided an excellent segue. One of the things that we review across the many items, the metrics that we review every single month as a board with BWP staff, are our reliability numbers, and I just wanted to build on what Mr. Brody was saying. You've heard staff on occasion mention five nines. Ninety-nine point nine 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 percent, that is our reliability for the electric. When you flip that switch, as Mr. Brody said, those lights come on ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the time. That's not by accident. One of the things that I wanted to mention was that it's important for us to speak about water and power, and particularly BWP as a utility, not the sum of our water and electric rates, which you'll hear about from Ms. Roth Lindell later, but the value proposition that BWP brings. The utility is a community-owned utility that's only as strong as the community pushes BWP to be. We as a board, and especially as the residents and those who call into the customer service center, push BWP regularly to be very, very strong, and we continue to build that utility. You heard earlier the Finance Director mention that, uh, speak about the wild cards, the wild cards that we don't know about. There are several wild cards that we do know about this evening. Those wild cards, and I will use the buzzword and the word that we've been kicking around this past several months, the inflation. Inflation has gone up and is impacting the utility significantly. You'll hear Ms. Roth Lindell mention different numbers later, but I'll give you one number, or a few numbers, actually. Substation component costs, we have several substations, which are the backbone of our reliability in this city. Substation component costs are up on average sixty-seven percent. EVC conduit, which the utility uses a lot of, miles and miles of, are up four hundred percent. Metropolitan Water District, which has a meeting this week, it may have been today if I'm not mistaken, but you'll hear about that. Rates are up sixteen percent. On the electric side, as many of you council members will recall, electric rates over the past several years were lagging behind inflation, and electric rate increases were not implemented during the initial portion of COVID. That was by design of excellent management from the utility. And now we have to continue that so that we can make sure that the utility is well-structured and has the resources to continue building on reliability. We continue to build the value proposition of the utility and build upon what Mr. Brody mentioned. And we are unfortunately not immune to the inflation factors and certainly not immune to the drought that's impacting this entire state. It is a crisis in California, and being a city that does not own any water rights beneath us, it's important for the community to know that we have to buy every single drop of water that we go through. And so the last thing I'll leave you with is, while this is an extremely difficult decision that the board was unanimous in recommending to all of you, we believe as a board that it is important for us to continue to support staff. And as all of you know, my professional job is on a staff side at a city, and so I don't take this decision lightly, that we made this recommendation. This is a very difficult choice for all of you as the policymakers, and it's been a pleasure for all of us as the board to continue to grill and work alongside the utility and particularly Ms. Roth Lindell and all of her staff. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Roth Lindell, and again, it's a pleasure to serve at your pleasure. And thank you all for having both Mr. Brody and myself here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Escondar. So with that, we'll bring up our presentation. And we'll click through the first page. There we go. So this is our mission, to safely provide reliable, affordable, and sustainable utility services to the city of Burbank. As mentioned, our reliability, uh, for water actually is ninety-nine point nine 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 percent, so, uh, five nines of reliability in water, and for electric, it's ninety-nine point nine nine six percent. We do have still, um, among the lowest, uh, regional rates, both for water and electric, even after the proposed rate increases. And then we come to sustainability, and sustainability has been a little bit more challenging for us and is going to continue to be more challenging for us over this next, uh, decade and three-quarters as we work toward our ultimate sustainability mandates for the state. We are, uh, we've got a purple arrow there representing water, we are at nineteen percent recycled water. And we've got a green arrow there representing electricity. Uh, this year, we have been able to achieve about forty-seven, or forty percent, excuse me, about forty percent procured renewable energy. However, that will fluctuate because we have contracts that are going away, and we've got to negotiate new contracts. Let's move on. I want to talk about the challenges, so we'll start in the upper-left corner and then sort of go around in a circle here. For COVID-19, this does continue to impact especially our electric revenue on the commercial side. We have not seen this rebound and are typically seeing about nine percent lower revenue than we were pre-COVID. We are also still seeing a steady caseload, in fact, tonight I have two people subbing in for their bosses because two of my direct reports have COVID. We have seven, uh, utility employees now who, who do still have COVID. So we're seeing that impact still, uh, with us. For regulations, we are seeing an increasing regulatory environment, and, and regulations that have been there are really starting to kick in. And these regulations have teeth. So our most expensive is SB one hundred, which requires us to acquire a renewable generation of sixty percent by the year twenty-thirty and, uh, and one hundred percent by the year twenty-forty-five. And of course, at your pleasure, we are aiming to have one hundred percent greenhouse gas-free or greenhouse gas-neutral, uh, generation by twenty-forty. If we miss getting to sixty percent by twenty-thirty, we face up to one hundred and forty-seven million dollars in fines. So it is worth it to us to make the investment necessary in renewable contracts and staffing now to avoid that. If we're gonna spend one hundred and forty-seven million dollars, I want to buy solar and storage, I want to buy wind contracts, I want to buy geothermal, and I want to, um, have the staff available to make those things happen. Because even if we get that fine, we still have to meet those targets, and we will be spending both the fine money and the target money. In the six years from 2015 through 2021, Burbank Water and Power only moved the needle one point five percent. We have to move that needle twenty percent in the next seven and a half years. We didn't move the needle because we weren't staffed to do it, and we've got to make the change to make that happen. To give, let's see, to give you an idea of scope, this year we are including a ten-million-dollar project to put solar on the rooftop of the Regional Intermodal Transportation Center at the airport. That solar is four acres, and we're adding storage with it. That will help to cover about one-half of the airport's load. Sounds like a lot of power, doesn't it? It's actually one-quarter of one percent of the load we have to meet in the city. So that gives you an idea of the scope we must invest in, in order to meet our renewable targets. Magnolia Power Plant, another area where we're seeing regulations, particularly in stormwater. Now, Magnolia Power Plant is accountable for testing the stormwater runoff. The I-5 runs right behind the plant. Our tires have zinc on them. The zinc comes off of the tires, lands on the pavement, and gets washed down into our power plant. We don't use zinc in our power plant, but we have zinc in our stormwater, and we are accountable for remediation for that zinc. And so we are paying for a remediation plan to, and we have paid fines on our stormwater contents, and we are working on a remediation plan that we are implementing, and that is in this budget. Climate change. We continue to see the effects of that, and it's directly impacting our cost. One way that it impacts our costs is that we had to develop a wildfire mitigation plan. We have to do that every single year, renew and review that wildfire mitigation plan. You all will see it in another few weeks, this year's version of that. You've heard mention of the drought. That, of course, impacts our water revenue as we encourage our customers to not buy our product. It is a crazy business model, but we do need to ask our customers to continue to conserve, to meet our drought, our drought conditions and our governor's goal for us. For supply chain, we are seeing impacts there that are coming out of the COVID pandemic. Our Inner Mountain Power Plant supplies us with steady baseload power. We normally have eighty-nine megawatts of allocation, but because of the delivery issues in getting coal to Inner Mountain Power Plant, they've had to cut back. And so instead of eighty-nine megawatts, we have eleven right now, eleven megawatt allocation. We're saving most of our allocation to help this community through the months of July, August, and September when it gets hot. So what are we doing in the interim? We have to buy power, much more expensive power, off the market. This is expected to continue through next year, so we have budgeted for that. We are seeing delays such as this for a single-phase pad-mount transformer. Used to, we'd order it, it would take two to three months and we'd have it. Now, when we order it, they're telling us two and a half years if they'll let us place the order. Many of the vendors are not taking orders anymore because they have too much of a backlog, and so we can only get on a list to place an order. So we are struggling with supply chain. Our chlorine supply is something that Richard Wilson and I look at every single day. Without chlorine, we can't deliver safe drinking water to this community. We've had our chlorine supply dwindle to under five days. Now, we have been able to get chlorine, but at one point, I was calling Marissa Garcia to see how much chlorine she had on hand. They use a different kind, as does Ken Berkman. We actually put in an additional dual system to be able to use the kind of chlorine that they have in case we weren't able to get the normal chlorine that we use. We have been able to keep it, they've done just-in-time deliveries for us, and we do have a couple of weeks of supply on hand right now. Workforce recruitment and retention. We have, we have been hit a little bit, not too much, because we're such a great place to work, but we have been hit a little bit by the Great Resignation and increased retirements. And we're also seeing that we have changing needs. So we need to do retraining of our employees, and we also need, as employees leave, to reassess the kind of position that we have. We need more analytics, we need more in technology, we need people who are skilled and have the ability to learn solar plus storage, how to engineer it, how to train on engineering it, because we're going to be doing a lot of that, and then also we'll be working to train our IBW workforce on maintaining solar plus storage, because we are going to use a lot of rooftop space here in Burbank. Distributed generation requires a different way of managing electricity. We're really good at moving it from one place out to all the need. Now we've got to manage pulling it in from multiple places and then sending it out to the need, and that requires specific software. So again, we need different, a different kind of workforce, and so we're modernizing the positions and looking at what we need for that. We are building twelve thousand five hundred units, housing units here in the next, well, I guess we have thirteen years left of our fifteen-year window, and that's after building only five hundred and fifty units in the past twelve. That means I need staff who can engineer. We were generally turning around development requests in two to three months, now it's six to nine months, and I don't find that acceptable. So we need the staff to handle that, and you know what? That'll be covered by aiding construction costs. So it's a net-neutral add for us. Moving on to aging assets. We have two hundred and seventy-six miles of water pipe, and thirty-plus miles of that is over one hundred years old. It has served us very well, and it is becoming brittle. So we are seeing increased water main breaks. We are watching this very closely and using new technology that Richard Wilson will talk about to make sure that we're only replacing the pipe that absolutely is coming to its end-of-year life. We have thirty-four pipes that cross the Verdugo Fault. Those pipes bring water from where we store it into the city, and I know the fault has been pretty quiet for a long time, but it doesn't mean it's going to stay that way. And I would not be doing my job if we did not make sure that we are replacing those lines and keeping them ready to be able to serve this community through at least a medium-sized quake. Our customer expectations are continuing to change, especially in the arena of communication. People want to be communicated to in the way that they like, which might include online chat for some and includes full-touch people for others, and we will continue to provide that. Tech innovations give us the ability to avoid additional cost and delay in the asset-based replacement. We are also upgrading systems so that we can have safe renewable usage, as I mentioned, and we're learning a lot about new technology around batteries. So we will continue to focus there. I want to talk a little bit more about inflation. Let's move to the next slide. In addition to the delays we've seen with chlorine, the cost of chlorine is up ninety-eight percent, virtually double from where it was one year ago. And Metropolitan Water Board unanimously passed, instead of a sixteen percent increase, a ten percent increase with five percent per year, knowing that they are pushing out necessary increase to a later year. That did save us one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. That decision saves us one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars this coming year and another one hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars the following year. Let's see, for electric, substation cost is up thirty to sixty percent. We had the Golden State Substation that unfortunately suffered a fire in, I believe, 2019, and we had priced that out at nine million dollars. We went through the RFP process, and it's actually going to cost us fifteen million dollars to replace that substation, and that is one-year difference, not even quite a year difference. Natural gas prices are up fifty percent, and renewable contracts, which were on a nice downward trend over the last decade, are now coming up thirty-five to fifty percent, and we cannot delay anymore. We have got to buy renewable contracts so that we can meet our sixty percent by the end of this decade. So we will continue to keep our eye on those. We've got a top-notch negotiator in AGM, Mondip Samra, who is watching that and negotiating for us and needs support to do that. I've talked about the coal supply already, but I do want to mention fiber, which supplies our one Burbank and also supplies revenue that helps to offset electric increases. The cost of fiber has gone from a dollar twenty per foot to three dollars per foot in this last year. So while this past month, the overall Consumer Price Index was up eight and a half percent, for us, we are seeing much bigger variances than that. Let's go on. I have to brag a little bit about the BWP staff, and this is my brag slide. They have really stepped up to find every possible penny. For the last twelve months, we have been tracking cost savings and cost avoidance, and they have come up with about twenty, a little over twenty-five million. And we worked through our legislative process with our California Municipal Utilities Association and with SCAPAs help to identify what we needed to do to apply for the California Rearage Payment Program for electric and the California Water, Wastewater Rearage Payment Program for water. We are still working through that for wastewater. That brought our customers another two and a half million dollars to help offset a rearage that they incurred through the pandemic. I am super proud of what we've been able to do, and we are building in to the budget that we expect to have additional efficiencies this year. Okay, let's look at budget authority by fund. So here is what this looks like. Electric is, we are asking for forty-two, almost forty-three million dollars more than we did last year. It's a twenty-four-point-four million dollar increase in capital. I mentioned the ten million dollar project for the four acres of solar plus storage, and we are also rebuilding two substations. We've got eleven million dollar increase in power supply costs, which is primarily around getting renewable contracts. We've got a three-point-four million dollar increase in salaries. Most of that comes from the negotiated MOUs and expected increases. Some of it comes from adding additional, four additional staff specific to electric plus one additional staff in our finance area for regulations related to electric. We will be asking for somewhere between sixty and seventy million dollars in bond to help us build out the capital that we need for, or help us get the capital, that money that we need in order to build out additional solar plus storage throughout the city. We budgeted for sixty, but we may end up at a slightly higher number. For water, we are asking for almost an additional fifteen million. That is a thirteen million dollar increase in capital. It's for additional pipe replacement, as I mentioned, and it's also to help us replace a reservoir. We have a reservoir that if we fill it more than halfway full, it leaks. So we've essentially cut the capacity of this reservoir by half, and it's just that old. We've got to replace it so that we have adequate storage. And in the face of a major drought, I think storage is really important for our water so that we've got what we need and can store it when we can. Magnolia Power Plant is up just about one point four million, which is primarily due to the increased cost of labor. Again, just the MOU to keep labor at market. It also does, though, include the stormwater improvements that I mentioned, and an increase in insurance as it ages. Tyotin is actually below where it was a year ago, or this year, because we're doing a lot of maintenance work this year that we will not need to repeat next year. Street lighting is slightly up, primarily due to the increase in developments that we see throughout the city. And then communications is actually down again from this year, and that's because, again, this year we're doing a bunch of maintenance on our comm that we will not need to repeat next year. And then I want to talk a little bit about pensions, so we'll move one more slide. This is our portion of the pension prefunding plan, and it's our last year of prefunding. This does save us about twelve-point-three million dollars in interest for electric and another almost two million dollars in interest in water. So again, a place where we can find, where we can find a way to save, we are doing that. So with that, I am going to ask Riyad Slayman, our Assistant General Manager of Electric Services, to come and talk about the electric fund. Riyad.
Thank you, Dawn. Again, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. Riyad Slayman, Assistant General Manager for Electric Services. And were we using the, were we using this?
Just tell them.
All right, sounds good. So, next slide, please. So we'll start off with what's driving our rates this fiscal year. We're looking to begin with about seven million dollars in under collection. And under collection is when our revenues are not enough to cover the cost to deliver electricity to the citizens of Burbank, and we'll dig into that a little bit more on the next slide. We'll be seeing higher O and M and capital costs due to inflation, which is more than seven percent this last year. With the limitation on IPP, which is our coal power plant, we've lost a very cheap power source, which we have to replace with more expensive power source. And not only that, we'll also need to acquire renewables to meet our mandates, and the renewables are the most expensive power sources on the market. We also need to pay for the demolition of IPP and its conversion over to green hydrogen. Capital financing is for the bond financing, which is like our mortgage payment, and we're also anticipating lower sales due to COVID. Overall, we'll be finishing fiscal year 2223 with about thirty million dollars in under collection. We can lower that down to about twenty million with a proposed six percent rate increase. Next. A little more information on under collection. Again, under collection is when our revenues are not enough to cover the costs of delivering electricity. And this graph shows how we get to seven million in under collection at the end of this fiscal year. In fiscal year sixteen seventeen, which is shown on the left, we started with about four-point-eight million in under collection from the previous year. With the two-point-one percent rate increase, we finished at only one million dollars in under collection. We increased rates by the total of only one percent over the next four years, and the result of that was a under collection balloon to about ten million dollars. After the two-point-five rate increase in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, we're anticipating to finish the year with under collection around seven million, and that's how we'll start fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, as I mentioned in the previous slide. Next. Here are some highlights of the budget and our assumptions. We're anticipating two-point-seven percent load reduction primarily due to COVID. Inflation is above seven percent, which is much higher than our historical average levels, and our renewable portfolio on average for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three will be forty percent. In order to maintain our reserves and to cover our costs, we're requesting a six percent rate increase and sixty million dollars in bond financing. And fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is the last of four years of unfunded pension liability prepayment in that we've committed to. So I discussed earlier, energy costs are higher, and there's a need to invest in long-term renewable contracts. Next. In the next five years, our renewable mandates will increase to fifty-two percent, eventually going to sixty percent by 2030, and the goal of a hundred percent GHG-free by 2040. And that means we'll need to constantly look for and negotiate more renewable contracts and additional transmission to bring those renewables into Burbank. We'll be paying for the IPP decommissioning and its transition over to green hydrogen. We'll also continue to make investments in sustainability, piloting new technologies, and installing local solar plus storage. Next. Here are some ideas that we're considering for the future. These were not included in the proposed budget in front of you today. We'll be looking at GHG reduction projects and reevaluating our staffing needs. We'll be exploring an update to our financial reserve policy. We'll need to build out more transmission and add more local We'll need to build out more transmission and add more local solar plus storage to our portfolio. We'll be looking to replacing the olive unit with renewable Peker units. And there's consideration for a new rate structure design and possibly additional pension liability prepayments. So this graph shows our cash reserves from fiscal year seventeen, eighteen on the left and projecting out to years twenty-six, twenty-seven, which is on the right. Cash reserves are used for many things, including stabilizing rates, emergency funds, and reducing borrowing costs. It's extremely important for BWP to stay above the minimum reserves, which is the red line on this graph. You can see that based on our projected spending, we'll be below minimum reserves within fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three and into the foreseeable future. As I mentioned before, we'd had years of zero percent rate increases, and that was at the expense of cash. Now that we actually need the cash to build renewables, we need to increase rates so we don't fall below the minimum reserves. Next slide. And so looking forward with the sixty million dollars bond financing in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, and the proposed rate increases that follow, we'll find ourselves back in a strong position by fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. Next. The bond financing is estimated sixty million dollars at three point five percent with an annual debt service of three point two million dollars. Next. The bond will finance some of the biggest infrastructure improvements that we've made in decades. And this includes two substations for twenty-seven million, fifteen million in four KV to twelve KV conversions that will modernize and strengthen our grid, and ten million to build local solar plus storage in support of our renewable portfolio standard. It's important to note here that based on the bids recently received from vendors, the two substations will cost more than fifty percent from what was forecasted here. Next. So the graph here shows where BWP's power comes from, AKA our power mix. So compare our power mix from fiscal year two thousand one, two thousand two on the left versus the proposed power mix in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three on the right. The biggest change that can be seen is the inclusion of renewables, which is in green, growing from zero to forty percent. IPP coal, which is in red, has been reduced as we venture into renewables from forty-five percent to just fourteen percent. Natural gas, which is in purple, has increased since MPP was not online in two thousand one. It went online in two thousand five and contributed to the increase in natural gas mix you see. Our share of nuclear is consistent, and large hydro is decreasing due to the drought conditions at Lake Mead. Next. One of the ways electric utility performance is measured is by the reliability. And so one reliability metric is SAFI, which stands for System Average Interruption Frequency Index. Oof. BWP's five-year average is zero point four one, which means the typical Burbank resident experiences one outage every two point five years. In comparison, PG&E is at one, which means a typical PG&E customer experiences about one outage a year. So as you can see, Burbank has the lowest value of SAFI amongst neighboring utilities, and this is a direct result of strong infrastructure maintenance practices. Next slide. So in addition to the low frequency of outages, the duration of the actual outage for Burbank residents is very short compared to the rest of the nation. The Burbank resident experiences a yearly average of only ten minutes without power due to outages. And this industry benchmark of SEDI, which stands for System Average Interruption Duration Index, shows BWP at the lowest end of the benchmark at ten point eleven minutes a year. BWP is looking to maintain this outstanding reliability by continuing to invest in our workforce, which is, which has some of the quickest response times in the nation. Next. So this chart is a comparison of our residential rates along with our neighboring utilities and others across California. The known rate increases are shown in orange, and if you don't see an increase, that just means we don't know the amount. Because the fact is, the issues facing BWP are industry-wide, and everyone's rates will be increasing over the next few years. For example, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, PG&E rates increased by six percent. SCE increased by thirteen point four percent, while Burbank took no increase in response to the pandemic. In fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, PG&E increased rates by twenty percent. SCE increased rates by nineteen point four percent, and Burbank only increased rates by two point five. With this said, we have to, much like other utilities, invest in our renewables. For example, Glendale and Pasadena, who are right above us on this race chart, were at forty percent renewables five years ago. It's five years ahead of us. So we're likely to see the gap between us, Glendale and Pasadena, get closer in terms of rates over the next few years, but we believe we could still retain relatively raw rates. Next. Here's what the proposed six percent rate increase will look like on an average electric bill for an apartment and a single-family home, both during the average month and during a summer month. Next. As we look at the income statement, electric fund budget drivers include rate recovery from prior periods, higher energy prices, IPP coal issues, investments in futures sustainability, inflation-driven higher O and M expenses, and a decrease in demand. As the net income shows, we're projecting to lose four point four million dollars this next year. Next. This is a view of our five-year capital plan. In fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, there's a proposed fifty-six million dollars in capital improvement projects with another seven point two million dollars in aiding construction for a total proposed budget of sixty-three million dollars. You'll notice this dips down quite a bit the following year in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and that's mainly due to the fact that we have to budget the total cost of large multi-year projects in their first year. These projects include two large substations and the Ritzy Solar Project. We're in a position where we're just barely meeting our renewable mandates, and we got to move to sixty percent renewables in eight years. And the Ritzy Project is part of that effort. In the following years, we'll be working on additional renewables and the replacement of our electric AMI system. Next. Here's a list of capital improvement projects that make up the fifty-six million dollars being budgeted in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Of note are the two stations and the Ritzy Solar Plus, Solar Project. We also have a four KV to twelve KV conversion, which will provide our distribution system with the capacity to handle future EV, solar, and additional housing. Next. Aiding Construction, or AIC, are projects that are fully paid for by developers. In previous years, we budgeted closer to two million dollars a year. But given the dramatic increase of developments coming through the permitting process, we've increased our budget to reflect this at seven million dollars. That's a two hundred and fifty percent increase from prior year. This is the five-year outlay, capital outlay budget. In fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, you got two, two point seven million is for the materials such as transformers and meters, and you have seven hundred thousand in specialty field crew vehicles and equipment. For information technology, you have one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and that's for the electric share of the city IT allocation for costs such as licensing, hardware, and software. Next. And so to end my portion of presentation with this graph, since I feel that it's a true reflection of our new reality as a utility. So this graph shows the number of field visits based on requests from residents and small businesses for new or upgraded electrical service. In orange are the field visits, and the blue is confirmation issuance, which enables a resident to get a building permit. You'll notice that customer requests have doubled over the last decade, and the trend, the trend is driven by residential solar and battery storage technology, EV loading, and accessory dwelling units. We've anticipated, we're anticipating this increase will continue as state housing mandates take effect, building electrification surges, and EV adoption increases. So the work has doubled, but we haven't really added any labor to address it. We've been diverting labor resources to support these services to our residents, but that comes at the cost of deferring maintenance and longer wait times for other services. These positions being requested tonight will help support these and other mandates that have been imposed on BWP over the last decade, as well as the large amount of developments coming our way. That concludes my portion of the presentation, and I'll introduce Sean Aquino, BWP's Administrative Officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slayman. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. My name is Sean Aquino. I'm the Administrative Officer for Burbank Water and Power. And this evening, I'll be sharing some updates about our employees and our customers. Our employees are at the heart of our organization, and our vision is that our employees go home as safely and as healthy as they arrive. One of the ways we measure that is by tracking our OSHA recordable injuries. And last year, we had our best safety performance in over ten years with an OSHA total recordable injury rate of two point five per one hundred full-time employees. In twenty-eleven, this number was at thirteen point seven injuries per one hundred employees. And BWP is committed to continuing to take deliberate action to ensure our employees are as safe as possible. Two new proactive practices that have shown success are safety stand downs and environmental health and safety walks. This year, we had a safety stand down after a significant near-miss event, and a root cause analysis was performed, and it revealed that three-way communication could have avoided this outcome. The safety stand down shared these findings. We invited employees to discuss their thoughts and reviewed the three-way communication process. In addition to this, BWP has started performing monthly environmental health and safety walks where BWP leaders walk with their teams throughout all the various premises in Burbank and look for potential safety hazards. Action items are taken, documented, assigned, and followed up until closeout. This ensures BWP is taking the deliberate time necessary to ensure our employees and our premises are as safe as possible. Next slide, please. There is no doubt that the role of the utility is changing. And for the last decade, we have primarily focused on reliability and affordability, and we've excelled in those two areas. But now we must truly balance sustainability. Looking forward to the future, in order to meet these challenges, the utility is requesting six additional staff for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. State mandates and customer demand are driving up development in Burbank, which is driving a growing workload in electric engineering services. Our estimates show a need for five new positions. However, this evening, we are requesting two new engineers to support new development and infrastructure development, replacement. The engineering section is seeing an unprecedented amount of development, requesting including large site developments, major housing developments, and accessory dwelling units. In the last decade, BWP has energized about four hundred new residential units. But based on the current proposed development, BWP is on the path to energize more than two thousand new residential units in the next three to four years. This is a tenfold increase in the amount of development. Wait times for a new service or solar upgrade, which used to take a few days, now take three to four weeks and could take up to a month or more without proper staffing. Feasibility studies used to take a month, and now they take six months, leaving our community waiting. In power supply, we simply do not have the staff necessary to perform the required work to stay compliant with sustainability mandates. We have completed one contract in the last five years. Well, in the next eight years, we will need to finalize six to eight major new contracts in order to meet the sixty percent renewables by twenty-thirty mandate. These contracts typically take one to two years to finalize and are not guaranteed even after a year of working with multiple partners. And we are not staffed with enough people to manage this work and are at risk of a hundred and forty-seven million dollars in penalties if we do not comply. The need in power systems is estimated to be four positions. However, this evening, we come to you requesting two new principal power resource planners. These positions are critical to BWP staying in compliance with regulatory and legislative mandates and to assist with new projects such as energy storage and renewable resource projects within the city. Water Services is requesting one project manager as we modernize how we manage our water infrastructure. With a new automated metering system expected to be installed in the next year and new leak detection technology, we now access and manage an increasing amount of technical information, which will enable us to provide our residents with increased transparency on water usage and management. This is especially important as we adapt to permanent drought conditions and plan through the lens of One Water for California. Our Finance Division is requesting one new senior utility accounting analyst to meet increased workloads driven by the increasing complexity of new accounting standards and additional reconciliations and reporting requirements, which simply require more staff time to complete. These requests are based on a careful analysis conducted over the past year where we discussed and then prioritized our staffing needs in order to ensure that we balance affordability, reliability, and sustainability for the community. These requests represent the crucial foundational roles required in order to manage the business effectively. Next slide, please. So next year, BWP will be completing a reorganization focused on driving improved efficiencies across the organization, managing the growing infrastructure replacement and development within the city, and modernizing position titles to better reflect the skills, knowledge, and abilities BWP needs in order to position the utility for success. An example of what we'll be looking into is modernizing the titles of employees who work on our customer sustainability programs. Currently, we are utilizing customer service representatives to assist in the management of our programs, and BWP is requesting four upgrades to marketing specialists in order to bring in the appropriate skills, knowledge, and abilities to effectively create, manage, and improve customer programs. Next slide. BWP has a suite of customer programs targeted at engaging customers in our sustainability efforts and ensuring that rates remain affordable for our most vulnerable customers. Our energy-water efficiency programs provided our customers almost one million dollars and assisted our customers in saving over eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This resulted in four point seven million kilowatt-hours of energy saved, twenty-five million gallons of water saved, and one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five metric tons of carbon dioxide emissions avoided via our energy efficiency and electric vehicle programs. This is equivalent to removing four hundred passenger vehicles from the road for one year. Next slide. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, we had many customers participate in our sustainability-focused programs. However, due to COVID, we had to pause all programs that required customer contact. This impacted participation in the Home Improvement Program and the Low Income Refrigerator Exchange Program. These are popular programs that we've recently restarted with onsite customer visits. Next slide. We are here to serve our community, and we measure this bi-annually along with our peer municipal utilities. This past year, we measured the satisfaction of residential customers, and seventy-nine percent of residential customers are very satisfied with our services. This is fifteen points, percentage points higher than the average of our peer community-owned utilities. Next slide. This upcoming year, we will be measuring business customer satisfaction. Our last measurement in twenty-nineteen showed us that eighty percent of our commercial customers are satisfied, which was nine points higher than our peer municipal utilities. Next slide. In the twenty-twenty-one residential survey, we took the opportunity to ask customers about their support of renewable energy. Overwhelmingly, Burbank residents are in support of moving towards a sustainable future, with sixty-five percent stating we should accelerate our plans, and of those, almost seventy percent would pay at least five percent or more to do so. Next slide. It is important to note that even among those who said they did not want to accelerate the adoption of renewable energy, sixty-two percent agree that we must meet the minimum requirements. In total, eighty percent of the residents surveyed support this transition. Next slide. Burbank Water and Power understands the need to keep our services affordable, especially for our most vulnerable customers. In fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, we had over two thousand households participate in our customer assistance programs, and we ensured the distribution of one million dollars in discounts to the community. Next slide. In addition to this, BWP applied to the state of California and received two point two million dollars to assist electric customers with their past due unpaid balances and water customers with three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for past due unpaid balances. These funds will be applied to reduce their outstanding bills. This assistance reduced BWP's total outstanding electric debt to two point four million dollars and five hundred and thirty-seven thousand in total outstanding water debt. Next slide. Now, this year, BWP is requesting a six percent increase in electric rates and a nine percent increase in water rates. This was not an easy decision, but it is the prudent path to take to maintain the reliability our community deserves and to make meaningful strides towards renewable energy. We know not all residents will be able to afford this. We know not all residents will be able to afford this increase. So in fiscal year 2223, we will be widening the safety net and expanding the criteria for qualification to assist those who may not be able to afford the rate increases. Current income-qualified customers must have a household income of less than $60,000 for a family of four to participate in our existing programs. The new program will increase the income qualification up to $92,000 for a family of four, in line with the Parks and Recreation's PASS program, and it will provide customers with a monthly discount to help offset the costs of these increases. This new program will be funded by the $1.1 million of approved and unused COVID-19 relief funds. And with that, I'd like to introduce Mandeep Samra, the Assistant General Manager of Power
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. My name is Mandeep Samra, the Assistant General Manager of Power Supply. Today, I will be providing an update on our Joint Power Authority projects and the Street Lighting Fund. Magnolia Power Project, or MPP, came online on September 22, 2005. MPP is a 310-megawatt, highly efficient and very reliable natural gas power plant located right here in Burbank. MPP is under a Joint Power Authority because it is financed under the Southern California Public Power Authority, or SCAPA. BWP is the operating agent of MPP, and the project is very unique because it is shared with five other participants. Anaheim has the biggest share, followed by Burbank, then Glendale, then Pasadena, then Colton and Cerritos. Next slide. As the operating agent for MPP, BWP runs the unit and is responsible for the operations and maintenance of the facility. The increases in our operations and maintenance of over $1 million is due to combined factors of labor costs increasing, insurance costs increasing, and supply chain issues. In addition, the increase in the capital expenditures of over $400,000 is due to our stormwater mitigation efforts that is a compliance mandate. Next slide. The Tyotin Small Hydroelectric Facility came online in September 2006 and is located in Washington State. It is a 14-megawatt renewable resource facility. Similar to MPP, BWP also is the operating agent for Tyotin, and it is also a Joint Power Authority because it is also financed under SCAPA. So the facility is actually shared with two participants at 50% each, so it's Burbank and Glendale, with Burbank sharing seven megawatts total. In total, it adds two percentage points to our renewable resource mandates every single year. Next slide. Overall, we are seeing a slight decrease in the Tyotin budget because a lot of the operations and maintenance, we actually did this year, so that is why you're seeing a decrease. Next slide. So I'm going to now cover the Street Lighting Fund. Next slide. The Street Lighting Fund is made up of 1.54% of our retail sales. That is where the line for transfers comes from. Overall, the cost for street lighting is going down because many of our streetlights have already been replaced by LEDs. We are seeing utility costs go down by over $322,000 based on the way utility costs are now being allocated. With the increase in developments across the city, we are seeing a $340,000 increase in aid and construction funds, which is going to be used to meet increased customer demand for street lighting. The capital line item you see right there that increased by over $1 million, it's due to the increases in costs for LEDs, and this is really the supply chain and labor issues we are seeing across the board. Next slide. So this graph walks you through the impacts of changing out our streetlights to LEDs, which consume less energy and are more efficient. The bar chart shows that our energy usage is declining over time, and the area chart shows that we are almost 82% done with our LED changeout. The LEDs will be completely changed out by the end of 2024. So that is the end of my presentation, and I'm actually going to hand it off to the Manager of Telecommunications, Daniel Lippert. Thank you.
Good evening, Members of Council. I'm Daniel Lippert, the Manager of Telecommunications at BWP. Could we bring up? There we go. One Burbank is a part of the Electric Fund, Fund 496, that serves the business community by providing fiber optic and internet services to local businesses. Excellent. Here's a sample of some of our customers. We're largely focused in the entertainment, medical, and hospitality industries. Excellent. Beginning in 1995, the program started with dark fiber leases, which is simply renting out our infrastructure we aren't currently using to companies that could take advantage of it. In 2010, we began offering lit services, which are networked and internet services over the top of our otherwise unused infrastructure. Our current revenues are approximately $4 million a year, and it's important to note that these are revenues that would otherwise need to be collected through electric rates. So every dollar you see on this slide has contributed to reduced electric rates over time. Excellent. In addition to direct revenues, owning and operating our own fiber optic network saves the city over $1.5 million a year. This includes $515,000 in savings to other funds within BWP, $621,000 in savings to city departments such as libraries, parks, and recs, and IT, and 373 savings to the Burbank Unified School District. Excellent. The Communications Fund, Fund 535, provides phones and radios to police and fire as well as to the non-safety departments throughout the city. Excellent. The proposed budget for Fund 535 is relatively unchanged from last year. Our revenues will be flat as we're not proposing any changes to the internal rates that we charge other departments. Our operating expenses will be slightly reduced due to a truing up of capital labor credits, and our capital expenditures will be reduced as a large capital project we're currently undertaking this fiscal year will be completed. And now, I'd like to introduce Richard Wilson with our Water Department.
Thank you, Daniel. Honorable Mayor Telemontes and Council Members, my name is Richard Wilson. I'm the Assistant General Manager for Water Systems, and I'm here to present the Water Fund budget. Next slide, please. This slide lists what is driving our rate increases. They are being driven by the need to recapture revenue that was undercollected last year. Undercollection is a term that means that the proposed rates do not produce enough revenue to cover the cost to deliver water and electric services. I'll repeat it again because it's a very important point. Undercollection is a term that means that the proposed rates do not produce enough revenue to cover the cost to deliver water and electric services. The rate increases are due to several factors. First, undercollection, as I just mentioned. Second, inflation. Labor and material costs are increasing. The cost of chemicals alone, as Don mentioned earlier, have almost doubled. Three, higher water cost. MWD is increasing their rates 10% over the next two years. And fourth, lower sales due to the drought. Note that even with the fiscal year 2223 rate increases, we will still end the year undercollecting our revenues by over $3.6 million. But we are working our way toward full cost recovery. If we were to achieve full cost recovery today, we would need a 20% rate increase. That is the projected undercollection, even with the proposed 9% rate increase included. Now, that is too much, but we do need a larger rate increase this year to make up for previous years. Next slide. The cumulative effect of undercollecting and how we got to where we are is illustrated on this slide. At the top are the rate increases in percent by year. For each year, the impact of new rate drivers, such as increased material or water costs, cost savings, and the revenue from that year's rate increase are added together to give the total undercollection for that year in dollars. Note that the absence of a rate increase in fiscal year 2021 had a considerable effect on our rate recovery, even with the fiscal year 2122 increase the next year. The amount of undercollection at the end of each year and its cumulative effect shows that the undercollections have more than tripled since 2016. Next slide. Moving into fiscal year 2223, we expect the utilization of the Burbank Operable Unit, our treatment plant, to be lower due to capital work at the Valley Pumping Plant. That work will require planned shutdowns and reduced flows during part of the construction, and concurrently, our Manager of Production and Operations, a 30-plus-year veteran, will retire. Water supply costs and chemical costs continue to rise during a period of high inflation and decreased water use due to the drought. We are also doubling our conservation spending to 2% in a greater effort to educate our ratepayers on the effects of climate change on water supply and the continued need to conserve. We are investing in our future by replacing critical pipes and reservoirs, adding equipment to our distribution system to enhance water quality, and upgrading critical pump stations. The loan from the Electric Fund will be paid back this fiscal year, and the cash flow balance was adjusted to reflect this. Next slide, please. Looking out five years ahead, we will continue to modernize our infrastructure that will serve Burbank for generations to come as we spend the bond proceeds to modernize our water system. As we do so, we will develop rate plans that balance affordability, reliability, and sustainability. Water supply costs will continue to rise, and the effects of climate change is here to stay. We must adapt by investing in our water system, by continuing to conserve water and reduce water loss, and increase cash reserves to stabilize rates. As we do this, we will continue on a path toward full cost recovery. Next slide, please. We plan to build a sustainable workforce that will meet future challenges, such as increased development that requires more engineering and plan reviews, increasing the number of miles of pipe replaced, and using new technologies that will require data analysis to assist with project planning. However, this budget does not include the future staffing needs. We will examine these needs in the near future. We also did not include revenue loss due to a drought extension, and we did not include additional MWD rate increases that would include capital projects not yet approved by their board. Next slide. This slide compares water bills for smaller homes. With our proposed 9% rate increase, our water bills continue to be among the lowest in the area. Next slide. This slide compares water bills for bigger homes and tells the same story as the previous slide. With our proposed 9% rate increase, our water bills continue to be among the lowest in the area. Next slide. With our 9% increase, our water bill is the lowest in the region. In fact, in fiscal year 2223, our rates are lower than what our neighbors were five years ago. Next slide. This slide shows the rate impact on a small and medium home. The water bill for a small home will increase $4.24, and a medium home $6.45. Next slide. On the left of this graph is the amount of cash reserves in millions of dollars, and the years are shown at the bottom of the graph. The gold bars represent our reserve balances, and the blue bars show the bond spending to modernize our infrastructure. The red line shows the minimum reserve level, and the green line, the recommended reserve level. With our proposed rate increases, our reserves reach recommended levels in fiscal year 2627. Note that the rate increase is shown does not account for the construction of the Delta Conveyance Project. We must be at the recommended level to make sure that we are prepared for emergencies such as wind and firestorms, mudslides and earthquakes, and other similar emergencies, perhaps a more potent virus than what was recently experienced, to ensure that we have cash on hand to provide business continuity and minimize service interruptions. Next slide. This slide shows the published Metropolitan Water District rates through 2032 for treated and untreated water. These rates only include projects approved by MWD during their last two-year budget cycle. Future capital spending on projects not yet approved by MWD's board are not reflected in these published rates. Next slide. This slide illustrates how our use of treated water, our most expensive water that is purchased from MWD, shown in blue, has decreased by nearly 2/3 since 2004. Meanwhile, Burbank's use of groundwater, our lowest-cost water, shown in yellow, orange, and green, has increased over the same period and now represents approximately 75% of the potable water that we deliver to customers. Also notable is the increased use of recycled water, approximately eight times more than what was used in 2004. Maximizing groundwater and recycled water helps Burbank maintain the lowest rates in the region. Next slide. The Water Conservation Act of 2009, known as Senate Bill X7, required water agencies to reduce water use from 2009 levels by 20% by 2030, which equates to a new total of 155 gallons per capita per day, shown by the dotted green line. Since 2015, Burbank's per capita water use has been below this level. After the drought in 2016, water use increased, but with a reduction in lawn watering frequency to three times per week and an aggressive educational and marketing campaign by BWP's Marketing and Customer Service Department, we have averaged 134 gallons per capita per day. The effect of the drought is estimated as we move forward into its third year, and we do not expect a full bounce back in water use. And with legislation establishing lower indoor water use, we expect per capita consumption to drop. Next slide. The income statement shows that expenses exceed income by $984,000 and points to the fact that we continue to undercollect. We have aggressively operated our production facility to minimize the purchase of treated water from MWD and maximize the use of our least expensive water, the water that we store in the ground, and is illustrated by the reduction in our water cost adjustment charge expense. Our five-year capital plan includes investments to modernize our infrastructure, paid for by the $25 million bond issuance. Much of the work is pipeline replacement, reservoir improvements, and distribution system water quality improvements, and will start in fiscal year 2223 and will be completed within the next three years. The projects just mentioned will begin in fiscal year 2223 and includes a substantial increase in AIC work, aid and construction work, work paid for by developers due to the increased number of development projects. The total capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2223 is just under $22 million. The majority of the recycled water projects will enhance and increase storage and add new pipelines. Next slide. The bulk of the $476,000 fiscal year 2223 capital outlay will include additions to the vehicle fleet. Large multipurpose flatbed truck, $200,000, a vacuum truck, $100,000, and two extra cab pickups totaling $150,000. The remaining $24,000 will be for technology projects. Next slide. At the beginning of the presentation, Don mentioned that we have 278 miles of pipe here in Burbank, and we have approximately 30 miles of pipe that are 100 years old. All of this pipe, all of this 30 miles of pipe, is aged cast iron. It gets very brittle with age. The break and leak history by calendar year is shown in the graph on the left. As you know, Magnolia, we're working on Magnolia, if you've been down that street lately, we're replacing that. replacing that pipe. That pipe has had four breaks within the last two years. Using machine learning, satellite data, and ultrasonic devices, BWP is working to deliver the future by incorporating new technologies that will help us prioritize pipeline replacements and target ratepayer dollars to where they are needed the most. Next slide. To summarize, BWP will have an increased focus on sustainability and investing in our infrastructure to maintain reliability. We will continue to balance affordability with prudent financial planning, and will invest in our employees to meet our challenges. I will now introduce Miles Collins, our Rates Manager, to present the proposed electric and water rates.
Oh, he's a bad guy. Thank you, Richard. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Miles Collins. I'm the Energy Services and Utility Rates Manager. I'm going to review the proposed electric and water rates for fiscal year 2223. Specifically, I'll give an overview of the customer types and rate structures for both electricity and water, and review the proposed rate increases for the next fiscal year. Next slide, please. This table summarizes the rate structure by customer class and rate component for the main customer classes for electric. The columns show the different customer classes, with residential on the left, followed by small, commercial, medium, commercial, and large, and extra-large commercials when we move across to the right. Overall, we have about 53,000 electric customers. Residential customers make up over 85% of the customer base, but account for just 30% of consumption. The small commercial rate class comprises 10% of customers and 7% of consumption. Medium, large, and extra-large commercial customers make up about 3% of customers combined, with medium commercial customers making up 17% of consumption, and large and extra-large about 40%. The rows show the different rate components for each customer class. The three bill components are fixed charges, demand charges, and energy charges. Fixed charges cover costs that are the same for each customer account, such as billing, collections, and customer service. Fixed charges also recover costs that can vary by the type of site infrastructure for which residential customers distinguishes between apartments and single-family dwellings. Small and medium commercial customers pay a monthly fixed charge based on whether they receive one-phase or three-phase power. Demand charges cover costs related to system capacity and are based on the maximum demand for a 15-minute interval during a billing cycle. Residential and small commercial customers do not have this component. Medium commercial customers have a single demand charge, and then large and extra-large customers have two separate components to the demand charge that cover different types of costs related to peaking. Energy charges are based on units of energy consumed, measured in kilowatt-hours per month. Residential customers pay tiered rates, where the first 300 kilowatt-hours is less expensive and additional kilowatt-hours are more expensive. Non-residential customers are charged by the time of day and season that they consume electricity. The energy cost adjustment charge helps cover the cost of generating, purchasing, and transporting electricity. We have fewer water customers, about 27,000. The reason for this is that most customers in multifamily dwellings have one meter for the entire building, so the landlord receives the bill and incorporates the cost of water into rent. We see the same pattern of consumption as with electric. Single-family make up 70% of customers, but 40% of sales volume. Multifamily and commercial customers are about 25% of customers and 35% to 40% of volume. And recycled water, which is not potable, is about 19% of sales volume. The water rate structure is similar to the electric structure in that it has fixed and variable charges. The fixed charge structure is based on the connection size, for example, 1-inch, 2-inches. The larger the connection size, the higher the monthly charge. It covers the costs that are similar for each account, such as meter reading and billing, and also costs that increase with increasing connection size, such as meter testing, repairs, and replacements. The quantity charges are determined based on the monthly volume of water consumed by the customer. For residential customers, the charges increase by tiers. For non-residential customers, potable water rates vary by season, with summer and non-summer rates. Potable water customers also pay the water cost adjustment charge, which covers the costs related to purchasing and producing water. For recycled water customers, the quantity charge does not depend on season, and the water cost adjustment charge does not apply. This slide outlines the implications of the electric rate increase, specifically for residential customers. The proposed rate increase is 6%, and we are proposing to apply the rate increase evenly across rate components. I will note that we plan to conduct a cost-of-service study in 2022. This study would provide quantitative tools for making more varied adjustments to rates, rate sizing rate components, and potentially changing the structure of rates for certain customer classes in the future. For this budget cycle, we propose that the rate increases are uniform. Each component of the bill increases by 6%, and thus the overall bill would also increase by 6%. This table shows the impact of the rate increase for residential customers. The customer service charge increases by .55 from 9.21 to 9.76 per month. Service-sized charges vary by household type and increase proportionally from 8 cents for apartments and condos to 51 cents for larger, single-family homes. The tiered energy charges, an ECAC, increase by fractions of a cent for each component of those charges. And the bottom of the table shows a bill comparison before and after the proposed rate increase, and it has four illustrative bills. The average annual usage for customers in apartments and condos in 2021 was 340 kilowatt-hours, corresponding to a monthly bill of just under $60. These customers would see their average monthly bills increase by $3.56. In summer months with higher electricity usage, average uses increased up to about 500 kilowatt-hours for multifamily customers, with bills just over $90. For this level of consumption, monthly bills would increase by $5.40. Single-family customers have a slightly higher fixed charge and higher average monthly consumption. Average monthly consumption in 2021 was 710 kilowatt-hours, with bills that would increase from about $132 to roughly $140 per month. Average summer usage was as high as 1,100 kilowatt-hours on average in 2021, corresponding to a bill of just under $207. This bill would increase by $12.39. This slide shows the implications of the water rate increase for residential customers. The proposed overall rate adjustment is 9%, as discussed during the budget presentation earlier. We adjusted the increase differently between components, with a slightly higher increase to fixed charges than to volumetric charges. The rate differentiation between components takes an initial step towards stabilizing revenue to withstand fluctuations in consumption due to severe drought, while staying well within guidance for fixed versus variable portions recommended to encourage conservation. It also balances the adjustments within each customer class to prevent cross-subsidation between customer classes. In other words, the overall rate increase for each customer class, taking all components into consideration, would still be 9%. A cost-of-service study for water, which we are also planning to undertake this year, would provide a quantitative basis for making more substantial adjustments to the water rate structure if warranted. We're aiming to increase the water availability charge, which is the fixed component of rates, by 13%. This charge is based on the meter connection size, and is the same for residential and non-residential customers. This charge would increase by $2.04. The water cost adjustment charge increases by 9%, which is the same across residential and non-residential customers. It covers, as I mentioned, the cost of purchasing and producing potable water. The quantity charge is the other volumetric portion of rates here. This component varies between the residential and multifamily commercial. To obtain the appropriate portion of revenue requirement for each customer class, so for residential customers, it would increase by 6.25%. Water bill impacts will vary by the number of people in a household, the type of landscaping, the presence of a pool, watering habits, and season, et cetera. If we use residential rates, sorry, if we use residential water consumption in 2021 as a guide, 25% of monthly bills during the year would show increases of $4.17 or less. Half of the water bills would be $5.62 or less. 3/4 of the bill increases would be $7.60 or less, and then the remaining 1/4 of monthly bill increases would be greater than $7.60. This slide shows the impacts of the proposed increases for multifamily and commercial water rates. Whereas the fixed charge still increases by 13% and the WCAC by 9%, the quantity charge increases by 7.3% in order to collect the appropriate portion of the revenue requirement for this customer class. The fixed charges are at the top of the table. You can see that the fixed charge is $6.52 per month for a 2-inch meter. The quantity charges are based on time of year and increase by 15.5 cents per 100 cubic feet from June through October, and by 7.2 cents per 100 cubic feet for all other months. The WCAC increases by 18 cents, identical to residential. And the bottom of the table shows the impacts to monthly bills for two illustrative businesses. A coffee shop with a 1-inch meter and 30 HCF bill in the summer would see an increase of about $11.47, whereas a supermarket with a 2-inch meter, a 500 HCF bill in the summer would see its bill increase by about $164. Next slide, please. This slide shows the timeline for the rate implementation process. The point on the left shows March 30th, which is the date that the 45-day notice of public hearing was mailed to customers. The arrow indicates tonight's meeting. If we move down the timeline, we see the date for the public hearing for the rate increase would be May 17th, where we would request council approval for the proposed rates. The city council approves the proposed rates. They would be implemented in the billing system beginning July 1st. As Sean covered earlier, we don't take the rate increases lightly. We know that they place a burden on customers. We have information on our website and also customer service representatives who are available to discuss options for financial assistance. There are programs for renters, homeowners and landlords, small businesses, income-eligible residents, and unemployed residents. This concludes my presentation. I will reintroduce Don Rothlindell for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Miles. That is it. Questions?
Thank you very much. A lot of information there. Lots of information. Colleagues, any questions? Comments? Vice Mayor?
I just have one question on the slide here. The quantity charge for multifamily and commercial is different than single-family, just on the proposed rate increase for July 1st. 7.3 versus 6.25. Everything else seems to be exactly the same, but why is that a little bit different there?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The reason that that percentage is different is the water cost adjustment charge is the same adjustment across the different residential, or across the different customer classes. We adjusted that quantity charge in order to prevent cross-subsidation between the customer classes, so that we would have, on average, a 9% increase for the residential customer class, 9% for multifamily commercial, and then recycled. So, the different customer classes have different volumes that they use per month, so the fixed charge might make up a greater portion of the residential rate than it would for multifamily commercial. So, since a greater portion of the revenue that's fixed charge comes from the residential customer class, we don't have to increase the quantity charge as much to get that overall 9%.
I see what you're saying. Okay. All right. So, all right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you for all the presentations. So, are MWD rates going up 10% or 16%?
In between the time when we initially communicated, we thought their proposal was initially 16% over two years, but instead, the board voted for 10% over two years. So, that saved us $133,000 in this coming year's budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
You know, through the course of the presentation, I heard a lot of labor cost increases, which is unusual. I mean, obviously, we didn't hear that from the other departments, but you emphasized, most of your department has emphasized labor cost increases due to MOUs and whatever other factors. You also emphasized future staffing needs, and undercollections was throughout all the presentations, right? So, what kind of cost-cutting efforts has the department, or any efficiencies that you've implemented? Before we get into all these raises of, right?
Yes. So, let's go to my Bragg's. Oh, we've lost our, we've lost our presentation. If we move to, if we take a look at our slide in your, I think you have the handout there. Let me find it. Slide number five shows our cost-cutting. So, we have found $25 million in cost-cutting and then additional $2.5 million on using the state's arrears program to reduce customer arrears. So, part of that is by selling excess energy when we had it. Part of that is with renegotiating our contracts. By renegotiating our contracts, we were able to save $5.5 million over multiple contracts. We did prepayment of our, I believe that's our water loan. Is that correct, Bob? So, Mr. Lou, thank you. So, we prepaid a water loan with our new bonds at a lower interest rate, so essentially refinanced our water mortgage and saved $382,000. We've identified so far $397,000 in grants that we have received. We are applying for a lot of grants. We've got a grant in play right now. We've got a $16 million project, and we have applied for a grant that would cover 12 million of that. It requires a $4 million match. We also have another grant that we've applied for that would help us cover the $4 million match, and multiple. We are looking at that. Anything that we can get through the infrastructure bill, we are going hard after those. We are investing staff time to do that. For cost avoidance, we've saved $4.4 million over multiple process improvements, looking for those efficiencies on how we can do things faster, better, and cheaper. For technology upgrades that we can directly attribute cost savings to, we've identified $379,000 there. And then other, which is a wide range of things, including things as little as getting a deal on office supplies, or doing an early-bird application for training and saving there to broader, you know, broader savings, again, $1.1 million. So, the staff is really recognizing that we have to find every possible dollar that we can, and they have really stepped up to make that happen.
I appreciate that. Those are large numbers, obviously, and I just want to make sure the community hears those things, right? Because all we're hearing is rate increases here, we need more personnel here, we need more stuff here, we need here, we need 10 more trucks here. So, what are we doing in the meantime? And that's part of the, that people don't see.
Yes.
Obviously. You're doing a lot of work to grant, and that's one thing that I've always said, grants. If there's grants out there, bring them to Burbank. Okay? I know it takes a lot of work, and I know staff sometimes would like to shy away from it because cost-benefit issue. I have to put a lot of time and effort into it to get a million dollars. So, but nonetheless, when you do, when you are successful with your grants, I want you to come back and tell the council. So, the residents hear it.
Absolutely.
You know, and I just, it's one of those things that obviously we hear raising your, raising your rates, and now we hear, obviously, Metro went from 16 over two years to 10 over two years. So, it can be done. And I guess, I appreciate those, those charts that you've shown us over the last 10 years or so of kicking the can down the road. And it comes to, obviously, it's the council's, you know, fault, because ultimately, we approve them, right? We give the blessing, let's do it. The residents are happy because they get a 0% increase. We're all happy, but nonetheless, what is it? The uncollectibles, undercollections, just keeps increasing, increasing year after year. So, I appreciate, you know, the presentation. It was very clear and concise. It brings, it makes a good picture to the residents of where we've been and where we're headed if we don't do something else. headed if we don't do something about it and stop kicking the can down the road. So nonetheless, any other comments? Someone else?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you to staff, and I didn't get a chance to say earlier, so putting BWP to the side for a minute, I'm very proud of the budget that's been presented to us. We're in excellent financial condition, and I look forward to continuing the conversation. So thank you to all the staff members and department heads who worked on that. With regards to BWP, outstanding presentation. It answered most of my questions, and I know that it's not easy to be the bearer of tough news, but I completely agree with your comments wholeheartedly, Mr. Mayor. Think you hit it right on. The only question I had related to slide 40, where you were talking about the expanded assistance programs, and I had two questions on that, and you can answer them in whatever order makes the most sense. With regards to, it's labeled as new assistance program, and what I, I'm assuming that's the lifeline rate assistance, some sort of expanded version of that. I guess I wanted a little more clarity on what that program will look like. It says new assistance program, and then specifically the benefit in the middle column, to be determined utility bill amount. So I was wondering, sorry, to be determined utility bill discount. I was wondering if you could just speak a little bit further to what that might look like, and is that going to be online come July 1, if rate increases are approved?
Our aim is to have it online by July 1, so you will see it come through to you, to council for approval in June. We'll be taking it to our board at the beginning of June, and we're still defining what that looks like. So we wanted to make sure that we widened the, you know, the coverage from the $60,000 to include the $92,000, which is consistent with what we do in our past programs. So we wanted to make it available to more people, and we want it to cover the cost of the rate increases. And so we're looking on creating that program that will cover the cost of the rate increases for this year for those customers. Unfortunately, our Assistant General Manager, Janine Edwards, over sustainability, marketing and strategy, who's developing this, is out tonight with COVID, so she is probably farther along than I can describe for you, but I know she's working hard on that.
Thank you. So the only other bit of feedback, just for the next time, it comes before council. So specifically, when it comes to the new assistance program, what's labeled there, I would just want to confirm whether there's any other eligibility requirements. Right now, it seems to be only an income requirement. The reason I was asking about if it was some extension of the lifeline rate assistance program is that that clearly applies to older households, disabled households, so I just want to know if that eligibility requirement would be dropped in the expanded program or if that would still be part of it, so.
I believe the lifeline is a federal program, and I know Dan Tunncliff is here and probably can speak to the lifeline program, as he ran it for several years before Janine.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Telemontes and council members. Lifeline is, the lifeline program is a program that we've created in Burbank, so it's, we have a very deep discount for our eligible customers, so 40% on their electric rates, and they also do not have to pay the utility user tax. So it is, it is a Burbank creation.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And I don't believe, thank you, Dan, very much, I don't believe for the new assistance program that we are dropping the other programs. I think we will keep the lifeline program in place, and this would be in addition to.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. That answers my question, and again, I just echo the mayor's comments. The only thing I would add is that we are dealing with the climate crisis, and no time is ever good to tackle that issue, but we've been kicking the can down the road a really long time, and we literally cannot afford to do that anymore, and I'm speaking for all of our kids and our grandkids. It's time we act. Thank you, Don.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that presentation, Don. I wanted to ask a little bit about the funding mechanism for BWP in general. Under state law and our city charter, if we're underfunded, is, are we allowed to give grants from our general fund, just one-time monies, to shore up anything that we need in emergency funding for BWP, or is it pretty much that we have to balance the BWP expenditures with the revenues coming in through rate payers?
We do have to balance the BWP revenues with the expenditures, so they really are two separate funding streams. It would be possible for us to borrow, much like water borrowed from electric, but then electric had to pay back wat, or water had to pay back electric. But we would, we eventually have to catch up. The rates must cover the expenditures, because it's two different sources of funds and two different uses of funds. Ms. Becker, would you like to expound on my answer? Okay. Okay. If you're comfortable, I'm good.
Just to be clear, what would happen, theoretically, what would happen if we didn't raise rates and yet we needed funding mechanisms and BWP borrowed money against, say, the general fund and wasn't able to pay that back? In theory, what would occur down the line?
Yeah, I think we'd have to have a plan that we would pay it back. I think we would have to pay it back. We would use our cash reserves, so that's what we've done through the course of the pandemic, is when we took those 0% rate increases, we just dug into our cash reserves to meet our needs. And then this past year, we had not only the pandemic and electric, but we lost our turbine in Lake One, and, you know, what we thought was a $1 million problem turned out to be a $5.4 million problem with all of the additional things that they found wrong with it and the supply chain issues in bringing in those parts.
Good evening. I think Ms. Lindell covered that answer pretty well, but I would just add that, you know, any dollars loan to the general, from the general fund to another fund, you're taking liquid available cash that the city might need in the case of emergency, and you're tying it up. Not that I don't think that utility wouldn't, you know, pay it back and be on schedule, but, you know, you're also then limiting your available resources for other city services that the general fund provides.
And Ms. Becker, these funds are separate under state law, under city charter. What's keeping these two revenue funds different?
Well, there are restrictions for utilities. Obviously, utility revenues can only go for utility services. I mean, that's written into law. The general fund is an unrestricted fund. There are no restrictions on what you can spend general fund dollars on, so if the council were to choose to spend that or to contribute towards the utility, they could certainly elect to do so. You're not breaking any law or violating any law by doing so, but the purpose of having an enterprise fund, of having a utility, is that it's supposed to be able to pay for itself, like any enterprise fund you have. That's, it's run like a business. So if you look at your financials, you know, the expenses of that business have to be covered by revenues, just like if you were running an independent business or an independent public utility. That's sort of the point of having an enterprise fund. So if an enterprise fund were reliant on the city's general fund to make payments or contributions to run that enterprise, it's not really truly operating as an enterprise fund.
And would we, if we did that and ran it out of deficit, would we be ineligible for certain grant funding and other types of revenue streams or opportunities?
No, we would not be ineligible for grants, but when you need to use general fund unrestricted dollars to support your business-type activities or your enterprise funds, it does affect your credit rating and your bond rating, right? Because what you're telling Moody's or S&amp;P or whoever is looking over your financials is that you can't independently support your utility, and it's reliant on general fund dollars. So not only does that affect the bond rating for a utility, but it also affects the bond rating for the general fund, because they'll look at your funding and see, well, this general fund is subsidizing other funds and therefore has more obligations than a typical general fund of a city, right? Because it's now subsidizing business-type activities that really have nothing to do with the general fund.
Continuing on that questioning, what is our current credit rating?
AA1, which is just below that AAA bond rating, so of course, we do everything we can to keep it there. We were fortunate to be one of the few cities that didn't see their bond rating decrease as a result of COVID, so of course, I like to do everything in my power to keep it where it is, right? That's our ultimate goal, is, you know, where it is or better, right? So.
And then last question, what happens if our bond rating decreases?
Well, I mean, it increases your cost of borrowing. It's just like your credit score if you're going to take out a mortgage, right? Your bond rating determines how much in interest you pay when you go out and borrow money. So just like your personal VICO score, right? You need an 800 or above to get the best mortgage rates. It's the same thing with bond rates, right? Every city, every agency has a credit, a credit rating, businesses have a credit rating, and it absolutely determines the cost of borrowing money down the road, and I know that's something that BWP just did and the general fund may be looking to do in the future, and so, you know, to us, it's really important to maintain that strong credit rating and show that Burbank is, you know, a reliable and fiscally responsible agency, and I know we've prided ourselves on that reputation for a number of years.
Okay. Thank you. The, oh, go ahead.
The only thing I would add is for electric, we're at a AAA, which is really good and really important, because we're about to bond $60 million. I mean, we want that at the lowest possible rate, and then water, we are.
Water AAA.
Oh. Okay. Got that backwards, darn it. So double A minus for electric and AAA for water. Thank you, Bob, for that correction. So in that, you know, again, to keep, we want to be able to borrow at the lowest possible expense. It just saves us and our rate payers from paying more.
I should add, when it comes to analyzing bond ratings, one of the things that raters look at is your ability to raise revenues. Now, because BWP has shown the ability to raise revenues over the years when they needed those revenues, they actually have a higher bond rating than the city's general fund, and the reason for that is because it's not so easy for the general fund to raise revenues, because in California, taxes are restricted to, you know, an election. You can't just raise taxes whenever you want, or even by council vote. So BWP actually has a stronger, their water division has a stronger bond rating than the city's general fund because of their ability to provide enough revenues to support their operations.
I just want to repeat something Ms. Lindell said under your breath as you were walking away from the microphone. Keeping those bond ratings high saves our rate payers money.
Yes.
The reason I go through this line of questioning is, so the people at home, when they look at their bill and it's anywhere between $4 to $8 more per month, what we're talking about is a very small financial investment from our rate payers so that we have a long-term economic and sustainable growth to pay for the things we need to pay for, the pipes that we need to replace, the electricity that we need to change over, all of the green renewables that people are demanding. And so there are so many mechanisms in place that prevent us from doing, you know, a switcheroo with the general fund and just doing one-time monies. We're really locked into keeping our BWP funds soluble, and the folks at home need to know that, yes, it is going to be a couple more dollars a month, but what we're doing here today and why the BWP board is on board with this and why everyone working on these projects is showing that, yes, a couple dollars is worth it, because in the long term, you're going to be saving more money. We are going to be keeping the funds soluble and our credit ratings high, which saves us more money in the long term. So we're all up here, you know, delivering, yes, a few dollars of bad news, but in the long term, this is better for the city, it's better for our rate payers, it's better for our environmental needs for water and power and everything that we do to keep the city running and functioning. So thank you for going through this long explanation with me, but I wanted the people at home to know that we're looking out for the best interest.
Maybe on the bill, we should stamp a AAA rating or whatever our rating is. Councilmember Springer?
Yes, I have one more question. It's on slide 59, and it says, "MWD rate projections exclude water supply investments for the Delta Conveyance Project, desalination, direct potable reuse." So how do they bill us for that? Our part of it? And when do they do that?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Springer. MWD is on a two-year budget cycle, so their board approves their two-year budget cycle, and that would include the projects that are budgeted in those two years. Any projects that are outside of that two-year cycle are not budgeted, so we are not paying for it. So for example, for the Delta Conveyance Project, we are paying for the planning portion of that project and all of the environmental work that goes with it. That was budgeted, it was approved in MWD's budget, so we are paying for that through the rates and charges that we pay. But for example, we're not paying for the construction of that project yet, because we're not there yet. We will pay for it when the time comes where we have a design and we have a construction cost, and that project will then go to MWD's board for them to vote on whether or not they want to fund it. Does that answer your?
I think so. So the 5% increase, do they just kind of decide, well, we're going to charge you now for, you know, some research on direct potable reuse? Or do they, do they charge us separate from the 5% rate? Do they charge us separately from a rate increase? That's my question.
It's all baked into the rate increase, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Frutos?
Thank you. So going to our water storage that we have throughout the Southern California area, if, as it's getting worse, bless you.
Bless you.
So as it's getting worse, and, you know, we keep hearing of more water cutbacks, does this budget also cover the cost of if we decide to bring some of the water from our storage to here?
This budget includes moving water from our own storage in, and it covers the cost that we believe we'll be paying to Metropolitan Water District for the next two years. Well, we only are doing a one-year budget, so really only for the next year, but, and then it also is covering the cost of some capital projects to enhance our storage, so that, to fix that reservoir that is leaking at 50%, and then also to enhance lines from storage in.
Which reservoir is that?
Which reservoir is leaking there, Richard? Reservoir 2.
Which is located where?
In Burbank.
Where specifically in Burbank is it located?
Come on up.
Because I'm sure the residents would like to, well, where's the storage at? What are we talking about?
It's just above Olive, if you were to go up in the hills.
Okay.
And to answer your question about MWD and the storage, we pay a demand management charge, and that funds local resource projects. So the desalination projects that MWD funds, some of the recycled water projects that they help communities like us fund, all of that is also paid in our rates and charges. So when we, when we pay our bill, we are funding these local resource projects that Met puts together to help, to help build local resiliency here so that we have local supplies within MWD's service area.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Don, I've got a question. Would you, in just thinking aloud, a two-year budget versus what we currently have as a one-year budget? What are your thoughts on that?
I think that is the wiser way to go. I think it puts us in a place, most of the projects we're looking at are not a one-year project, and so we really are already thinking in terms of a multi-year budget. We actually prepare a pretty solid five-year budget and an also potential look out the 10 years. It gets a little murkier in the second five years, but I believe we should be budgeting a two-year budget. It would match what Met's doing. Anaheim, for example, they already do a multi-year budget and have for years, and I just think. For example, they already do a multi-year budget and have for years. And I just think it makes a lot of sense to do that. And then it gives us the ability to plan, it gives the citizens an advanced look and, and the ability to plan for the increase this year and a planned increase next year. Um, LA DWP has rates that, um, they actually have four, four kinds of rates they just pass through that never come even before their council. So different utilities have different, um, processes, but I think a multi-year process is the right way to go.
You know, several years ago, the city had a two-year budget. We worked on a two-year budget. You, you remember that, Mr. City Manager? Uh, I don't know why we left it, but go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, Ms. Mayor, thank you. I mean, uh, I think you bring up a good point. I would recommend maybe, uh, if, if council is so inclined, it's looking at that for all the, all four utilities. I think that's what works well. Um, I think for the other funds, it's probably important to, uh, review those. I mean, like tonight, I thought there was a really good discussion about general fund. Just because we do change priorities, uh, year to year, but they're doing multiple capital projects, multi-year capital projects that would really help from that stability, especially enterprise funds, knowing at least, uh, two years out that they could plan a lot better. So if council is so inclined, we would, uh, certainly explore that idea.
I would recommend to my colleagues to go ahead and at least look at it. I mean, there's no harm in looking at it. Speaking to the general manager, she says it's great. There's several, uh, obviously, uh, other cities that are doing it. Why not? At least look at it, right?
I agree. The other thing it will do, um, as, uh, Mr. Slayman just reminded me, is it's less administrative cost. And again, anything we can.
There we go. That was my question about efficiencies and. Colleagues, any other questions? Go ahead.
Not so much a question, Mr. Mayor, but I've actually had coincidentally the same conversation with, uh, Ms. Lindell a couple times. I'm in complete agreement with you.
It's my idea.
It's your idea. It's your idea. Yeah, I know. It's, it's, it's Mayor Talamontes' idea. I'm just saying, I think it's a winning idea.
You talked to her about Mayor Talamontes' idea. That's what you.
I didn't know it was his.
He was talking to her about a winning idea. Anyway, uh, anybody else?
And I thought it was Sharon's idea when I was talking to her.
Councilmember Springer?
Did, did we recently redo that reservoir? Reservoir two, um, Ms. Lindell wasn't here. Was the other one? Oh, okay.
We did. We recently did reservoir one.
That's where the Centennial Park is on top of.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Just one last thing to add. I mean, for the people up here, I know we cycle elections every two years, so I think a budget would be, a, a two-year budget is fine. I don't think it'd be, um, inappropriate to, to recommend that.
Perfect. He's coming back for a discussion. We can discuss it. Thank you very much.
Sir.
Excellent presentation. Next item, Public Works. Water Reclamation and Sewer. And then the Refuge Collection and Disposal. And the non-general funds.
Good evening, Mayor Talamontes. Okay, good. And council members. Should we go ahead and wait, or?
No, go ahead. He'll, he'll catch up whenever you're ready.
Keep moving forward?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, council members. I'm Steve Walker, Assistant Public Works Director, Wastewater Systems. I'll be presenting the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget for the Water Reclamation and Sewer Enterprise Fund, also known as Fund Four Nine Four. Next slide. We'll begin with a fund overview comparing the improved budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two on the left with the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three on the right. The total budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is approximately twenty-two point six million dollars, which represents an increase from the prior year of about one point four five million or six point eight percent. This is mainly due to increases in capital improvement projects, a vehicle purchase, and increases in contractual costs. The total budget includes the following three main categories. First, capital funding, shown in red, is about three point seven million. Second, material supplies and services, or MSNS, shown in orange, are about sixteen point eight million. And third, salaries and benefits, shown in green, are about two point one million. Next slide. The total sewer fund revenues for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three are estimated at approximately nineteen point two million dollars, which represents a slight reduction from fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two of less than one percent. The total expenses for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three are estimated at approximately eighteen point eight million, which represents an increase of about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars or two percent over the prior year. Year-to-date expenses for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, as of April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, are approximately eighteen million dollars. With the highlighted changes to revenue and expenses, the sewer fund is projected to have a positive change in net position of four hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Next slide. The cash reserves for the sewer fund are healthy. The beginning cash balance for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is estimated to be about thirty-one point eight million. With a positive change in net position that we discussed, and after depreciation and obligations, it is estimated that the fund will have an ending cash balance of approximately twenty-nine point eight million. The required reserves for financial policies, which includes sixty days working capital and funds for future capital construction, are approximately eight point one million. In addition, the reserves for the Hyperion Sewer remain at approximately ten point three million. Burbank has continued to make payments to the city of LA in twenty-twenty-two, which we will discuss in more detail later in the presentation. In summary, the estimated unrestricted cash balance for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is eleven point four million. Next slide. We're proposing a two percent increase in sewer rates for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. It's important to mention that this is the first proposed sewer rate increase in three years. The rate increase is needed due to contractual increases from the city of LA for the conveyance, treatment, and disposal of wastewater, capital improvement projects, and inflationary impacts to labor, chemical, and electrical costs to operate the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant and the sewer collection system. In addition, it will help ensure that we maintain the proper fund reserve balances. With the recommended increase, the flat rate for sewer services for single-family residential properties will be twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents, which is an increase of fifty-one cents per month. Next slide. This chart provides a comparison of Burbank sewer rates versus inflation over five years. For reference, the inflation metric used is the Consumer Price Index for Urban Consumers, or CPIU, which represents the price of goods and services purchased by urban consumers. Between fiscal years eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen, twenty, Burbank sewer rates, shown in blue, were approximately the same as inflation, shown in orange. For fiscal years twenty-twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two, Burbank sewer rates were lower than inflation. And as mentioned, there were no rate increases during that time period. For fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, Burbank sewer rates are projected to be significantly lower than inflation, as shown on the right side of the chart. Our goal is to keep rates at the level required to ensure that we have a financially stable enterprise fund, allowing us to provide safe and reliable wastewater services. Next slide. This chart provides a comparison of sewer rates for single family, single-family residential properties in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, between Burbank and other cities in Southern California that have generally similar wastewater systems. As you can see, Burbank's, Burbank's proposed sewer rate of twenty-six dollars and seventeen cents continues to be lower than most other cities in the region and significantly lower than the cities of San Diego and Los Angeles. We have been able to operate the sewer system efficiently to keep rates low for Burbank residents and businesses. In addition, we have made capital improvements to the collection system, the Beechwood Pump Station, and the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant to improve sewer system reliability while keeping rates constant during the pandemic. Next slide. Sewer service charges cover the necessary cost for the operation and maintenance of a variety of wastewater facilities. These include two sewer pump stations and the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant, which is operated under contract by Suez Water Environmental. Suez recently merged with Veolia Environment and is currently undergoing a corporate name change. There are two, I'm sorry, there are numerous regulatory compliance requirements that have to be met under two NPDS permits. One for the treatment plant process discharges and the other for the production of recycled water. In calendar year twenty-twenty-one, the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant continued to generate and BWP distributed approximately one billion gallons of recycled water for use in industrial applications, at construction sites, and for landscape irrigation at city parks, the DeBel Golf Course, and in roadway medians. Next slide. In addition, the city's collection systems crew performed hydrojet cleaning and root cutting on the two hundred and thirty miles of city sewer pipelines and maintained three thousand eight hundred sewer manholes. The photo on the left shows our combo truck, which has jet flush and vacuum capabilities and is used for sewer maintenance. It is noted that this vehicle is at the end of its useful life, and it is recommended for replacement in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The sewer crew also performs video inspections on numerous city sewer mains to evaluate pipe condition so repairs can be prioritized and completed when necessary. The photo on the right shows our CCTV van used for this work. Next slide. I'll highlight two CIP projects. The first is the Providencia Phase Two Sewer Improvement Project, which will join the completed Phase One Project near the new IKEA and will provide pipe capacity upgrades. The alignment continues under the I-five freeway and MTA right-ofway and then along Providencia Avenue and Barney Street. The design has been completed and encroachment permits have been obtained from both Caltrans and MTA for work in their right-ofway. The project will be advertised for construction in September, twenty-twenty-two. The cost to complete the project is one point six million dollars, and it was fully funded in prior fiscal years. Next slide. The second CIP project is the Chandler Phase One Sewer Improvements. It is located between California Street and Lake Street, and it will also provide capacity upgrades. The scope of work includes about nine thousand line, lineal feet of sewer line upsizing to approximately eighteen to twenty-four inch diameter pipe. The improvements will, will reduce the amount of sewage entering the LA Hyperion System and will convey flows to the Burbank Water Reclamation Plant for treatment. The estimated cost for engineering design, which is scheduled to ta, to take place in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, is approximately five hundred thousand dollars. The total project cost is estimated at approximately six point two million. Next slide. Our public's work, our Public Works team has had numerous negotiation meetings with the city of LA between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-two to continue resolving the ongoing sewer flow and billing dispute covering the last thirteen years. I am pleased to report that to date, Burbank has made payments to LA, which total approximately twenty-four point nine million. Reconciled payments in the, in the amount of eighteen point five million have been made for ten years, covering flow years nine, ten, through eighteen, nineteen. An estimated payment in the amount of six point four million have been made for three years, covering flow years nineteen, twenty, through twenty-one, twenty-two, the current year. All payments to LA have been based on a plain read of the contract, which covers the conveyance, treatment, and disposal of wastewater. It should also be noted that Burbank is currently maintaining the Hyperion Reserve Fund in the event that additional payments are required to resolve the matter. Next slide. That concludes the presentation. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you for the presentation, colleagues. Councilmember Schultz?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One very quick question. Back on slide number three, um, I saw there's about a two, two hundred thousand dollar reduction in non-operating revenue. Uh, could you remind me of, of what that's attributable to?
Uh, actually, that's mainly, uh, a reduction in interest that we're earning on money. Since we've made the payments for Hyperion, we have less money that we're earning interest on.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you. Uh, next we have John Mulliner. We'll present this, the Refuge Enterprise Fund. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Mulliner.
Good evening, Mayor Talamontes and Burbank City Council. I'm John Mulliner, Assistant Public Works Director over at Street and Solid Waste, and I'm here to present the refuse budget. Oh, and I've got to do slides. All right. Go to the next slide, please. I'll start with an overview of our numbers. The left column represents last year's budget and the right column this year's. The red portions are capital expenditures and the orange are material supplies and services, or MSNS, and the green salaries and benefits. As you can see, the overall twenty-two, twenty-three refuse budget increases about five percent over last year's. This is due to increases in capital expenditures for vehicle purchases and projects and increased material supplies and services for consultants and supplies needed to comply with state mandates. Next slide, please. Our total revenue showed an increase of about six percent over last year. This is primarily due to a proposed four percent rate increase. Although we have cut back where we can, our expenses are still higher than our revenues. So even with proposed rate increase, we are spending nearly seven hundred thousand dollars more than we are generating in revenue. This deficit continues to widen in the outgoing years, even with the proposed increase. We have sufficient cash reserves to cover this deficit in the short term, but we will need to continue to find efficiencies, cut expenses, and raise rates as necessary in the years to come. Next slide, please. Our cash reserves show a starting balance of thirty-four point five million dollars and an ending balance of about thirty-four point two million dollars. Our standard reserves for financial policies and equipment purchases were nearly ten point five million dollars. Our landfill closure reserves are at about seventeen point four million. And so the refuse fund is near, is healthy, but we are spending more than we are bringing in. Next slide, please. There was a two percent rate increase last year. However, in the prior five years, there had been only two one percent rate increases. This year, we need a four percent rate increase in order to start catching up with the demands put on, put on us by the state mandates. With the increase, a typical household in Burbank will be paying an additional dollar thirty-four per month. That accounts for nearly two-thirds of our residential customers. Now let's talk about our rate history. Uh, Stephen already went over what CPIU is, so I won't go back over what that is. Um, but the numbers on this chart both started in the same point in two thousand and eleven. Um, when both, when the applicable percentages were applied to both the Burbank rate and the CPIU. Over the last ten years, Burbank rates have increased only an average of one point five percent per year, including this year's four percent rate increase, while the CPIU averaged two point three percent per year. So even with this year's proposed increase, a typical customer is paying three dollars and four cents less per month than they would be if we had used the CPIU to add to our rates. Shows we've been able to keep our rates much lower than the inflation rate. Now let's compare some rates. There is typically a wish to compare ourselves with our neighbors. However, our city's solid waste section is a little different than most others. Our neighbors Glendale and Pasadena's rates don't truly reflect an apples-to-apples comparison. For instance, Pasadena has no landfill, and they have progressive fines and fees, which we are heading towards. and they have progressive fines and fees, which we are heading towards. Glendale has a ban in commercial collections and subsidizes fees by selling tonnage in their landfill. Our programming and operations are more in line with full-service cities like San Francisco and Los Angeles, and they reflect where we are going to need to be to be in compliance with the state mandates. Now, I'd like to introduce some new fees. Commercial services are not bundled, trash, recyclables, and organics, as our residential collections are. It is more likely for us to need to mix and match carts and bins to bring our businesses into compliance with the new mandates. So we need rates for each of our recycle and organics carts and bins. Commercial recycling cart fee will help us offset costs of collection and processing of recyclables at commercial premises. Next slide, please. The commercial organics cart fee is a part of our Senate Bill 1383 mandate and will help offset the costs of collection and processing of organics at commercial premises. All of these new fees shift the costs onto the commercial business that is receiving the service rather than the other rate payers. What services do our fees cover? Our solid waste collection staff collects trash, green waste, and recyclables. They also provide weekly bulky item collection, which includes Christmas trees, electronic waste, and appliances and mattresses, averaging over 19,000 bulky collections a year. We added a special handling fee a couple of years ago for appliances and mattresses because these items are not landfilled and each one requires specialized handling and separate vendors to dispose of them safely. Our recycle center oversees Senate Bill 1383 compliance, organics diversion to a composting facility, recyclable processing, and universal waste collection. Our landfill ensures that operations are above state standards and airspace utilization is minimized. As always, our street sweepers follow trash collection within two business days to ensure our streets stay clean. And now to our budget drivers. Though we've been holding rates as low as possible for several years, we will need to increase rates in the next few. The things that driver increases are compliance with state mandates, and this includes additional temporary staffing for things like mattresses and appliances and bringing on consultants, among other things, to maintain compliance. Salary and benefit increases in PERS contributions, capital purchases of equipment, vehicles, carts, and bins, upcupping capital projects, the set aside for future landfill closure, and insurance costs. We will do our best to incrementally smooth rates and avoid large increases. Next slide, please. Got it. Additional rate drivers are the recent state mandates related to recycle and organics. The most recent state mandates for organics and recycling are Agenda Bill 341, Agenda Bill 1826, and Senate Bill 1383, and they are draining our resources. Green waste costs alone rose about half a million dollars last year. And this year, we will be shipping out organics with our green waste, which will cost an additional $9 per tonne, or about $300,000 more per year. We are still seeing a loss of revenue from the collapse of the global recycling market as well. All these mandates require staffing and funding, and we are projecting rate increases to keep up with them. I want to elaborate a bit on a couple of the aforementioned organic state mandates. AB 1826 and SB 1383 are for organics diversion and greenhouse gas reduction. AB 1826 required the city to divert at least 50% of our organics by 2020. SB 1383, or Senate Bill 1383, places further requirements on the city based upon how the statewide organics diversion has progressed. The goal is to reach 75% diversion of organics by 2025. We are working with our consultants and CalRecycle to implement a work plan in order to achieve the 2025 goal. We will need to increase funding and staffing resources in the coming budgets to support and maintain Senate Bill 1383 compliant programs. Public Works Recycle Center is responsible for coordinating with the city, county planners, waste processors, waste processing facilities, recyclers, commercial businesses, residents, and edible food recovery organizations to make this happen. And I want, next slide, please. You're off one. That's okay. Go to the next one. And I want to switch to one of our other drivers, capital projects that we will soon be doing. Next slide, please. In the last couple of years, I have let you know that we were looking into the feasibility of placing a composting site on our active landfill as one of our strategies to comply with state mandates. There are many technologies out there and many vendors promising remarkable results if we will only purchase their equipment. After looking into many various methodologies, we have reached the conclusion that currently, the only viable system is some form of static pile composting. The most common form consists of open winrows of organic material, much like the picture on the screen, placed over a perforated pipe. A vacuum is applied to the pipe and air is pulled through the organics and it runs through a biofilter to remove any gases and odors that are created. Another newer form is in vessel composting, and we are watching it closely as it seems a likely candidate as well. We will continue to move forward with this project and keep our eyes on many of the upcoming technologies. There are several out there that have yet to prove up in California and permitting will be their biggest hurdle. In our conversations with the Air Quality Management District and the Water Board, they both said that the methodology we have selected is the only one fully permitted in Southern California. Another project, which I have mentioned in the last couple of years, is the landfill liner project. This will be the last liner expansion of the landfill and involves moving 550,000 cubic yards of material, shown in red in the picture on your screen, to the areas in green. Once removals are completed, the area in red will be lined to create a barrier between our trash and the water table. The project cost is estimated to be around $15 million. The project was slated to start construction in 2023. However, our landfill staff are doing such a good job in filling the remaining space that we may be able to push the project out even further. I can't say enough about our landfill staff and their leader, Curtis Jordan, the landfill supervisor. Together, they have turned our landfill into a model that others can only hope to emulate. Next slide, please. And I'd like to highlight one thing here. In March, you approved the ordinance that will allow us to implement the most far-reaching solid waste mandate in many years. In this next fiscal year, we will be implementing the ordinance and beginning enforcement. We have purchased the green food waste pails depicted on your screen to help facilitate organics diversion with our residential and multifamily customers. So what's coming? So the next fiscal year, we have a lot to do. We'll be rolling out our residential and commercial organics collection programs. The residential portion is comprised of getting our residents to place organics, such as food scraps, into the green waste carts. The commercial program is much more involved. We'll have to assess every business and provide source-separated recycling and organics collection. Some businesses may receive waivers, but the status told us that we need to keep going back to those businesses to ensure that the waivers are still relevant. We also have to do a great deal with edible food recovery and are working to partner with a nonprofit to take that on. Finally, we have to enforce both the residential and commercial programs. We will be using consultants to get things started, but we will need to staff up to provide the compliance and enforcement mandated by the state. Next slide, please. To wrap things up, the Refuge Fund is healthy, but we need a rate increase to keep it so. We have several state mandates that are keeping us on our toes and several exciting projects in the wings, and we are continually looking at efficiencies within our operations. Thank you for your time, and we are available to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. I just have one comment in regards to that slide. You mentioned that we're pushing back the $15 million improvement. So is that going to cost us more because we're pushing it back? Or did you lock in the $15 million?
No, it's not locked in, but it's based upon when we can do it and when it needs to be done, as far as our fill sequencing at the landfill, too. So it's sort of driven by how well they're working up there. And the other thing was, funding wasn't really available until you approved my financial assurance in earlier this year. There is some extra money in the closure account that CalRecycle and I are working on to figure out how much that is, that we'll be able to leverage that into the project. So it's kind of cool.
Great. I know several years ago, you took the council up there for a tour, and that was exciting to see what your workers had come up with and developed to prolong the life of the dump up there.
Absolutely.
How's that progressing?
It's progressing well. It's, right, the last check, I think it was 109 years? 106 years. So, you know, the recycling thing hit us really hard and they brought it back and it's gone down again, depending on how much plastics they have to take up, you know, in residuals from the recycle center. And that's just a tough thing that we've had to deal with, with the recycling market downturn. It just ate up some of the landfill space.
Now, the monies that come from the recycle center. I put my recyclables in the blue bin. Let's take it and it's taken to the recycle center, I would imagine. Who gets the monies from there?
There is a commodity fee, which the city will receive if the market gets favorable enough. And we have just seen some returns in that. It's not very much because the market has just not gotten, not really recovered. Cardboard seems to be the only thing that's kind of recovering right now.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Colleagues, any questions, comments? Yes, Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you for the presentation. The only thing I would add is, speaking as one council member, I'd like to see us learn the lesson. You know, BWP tried to keep those rates affordable for a long time, and that was a good aim, but I think we're well past that point. And with Senate Bill 1383 and a lot of other projects down the pipe, I'd rather see steady rate increases rather than trying to defer it and having to pass an enormous increase down the line on our residents. So I just wanted to share my two cents. I appreciate where you're going with it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Springer?
So do you think cardboard is returning as feasible because there's just so much of it right now?
I would think that helped. Yeah, the COVID pandemic just created a mountain of cardboard, obviously with Amazon and everything else that's out there. It's just, I think that there's now a demand for that content.
Thank you.
No other comments? Thank you very much. Excellent.
Thank you. And I will reintroduce Jennifer Becker, the Finance Director.
Colleagues, we're heading up to the 11th hour. Can we get a motion to proceed?
Motion to proceed.
Okay, all those in favor? Hi, good. One motion several years ago that I made not to proceed. You guys.
Hello again. I will ask that we bring up our last and final PowerPoint presentation of the evening. We've been through quite a number of slides. And I'm going to finish off our evening with presenting to you our internal service funds, special revenue funds, housing authority, parking authority, and successor agencies. So let's get started. And so earlier tonight, I presented you with the general fund budget, and you've of course heard from both BWP and Public Works on each of their enterprise funds. So now we're going to present all the remaining city funds. Just like earlier, feel free to stop me if you have questions as I go through. And of course, we have representatives from our departments to answer questions on each of these funds as well. So we'll begin with our internal service funds. Internal service funds are used to accumulate funds for specific citywide purposes, such as insurance or equipment replacement. These required funds are collected from participating city departments and funds through a nondiscussionary budget line item in their budget. The city has seven internal service funds, all requesting appropriations this evening. The first two are managed by Management Services, and those are the General Liability Insurance Fund and the Workers' Compensation Fund. Next is the first of two internal service funds managed by Public Works, the 532 Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. We have our 533 Office Equipment Replacement Fund, which is managed by Financial Services. We also have another fund managed by Public Works, our 534 Municipal Infrastructure Fund. Now, this budget will be presented by Mr. Berkman as part of our infrastructure presentation next week. Fund 535, our Communications Equipment Replacement Fund, is managed by BWP, and they just covered that during their earlier presentation. And of course, last but not least, we'll talk about our Fund 537 Information Technology Fund. So let's start with General Liability, which is managed by Management Services. This fund covers the cost of citywide insurance premiums and self-insurance programs, along with all claims against the city. For fiscal year 2223, this fund will receive $9.3 million in revenue and has $10.9 million in proposed appropriations. The General Liability Insurance Fund rates are collected from most departments and funds through the insurance account in their line item budgets. And as you are well aware from past budget reports, the city of Burbank, like other public agencies, is facing an extremely difficult market for insurance. Staff is anticipating a 35% increase for General Liability, a 25% increase for citywide property insurance, and a 10% increase for all other lines of insurance, such as power generation, property coverage, cyber liability, auto physical damage, and earthquake. Now, based on this forecast, Management Services is recommending a $2 million increase to the Fund 530 Insurance Budget for fiscal year 2223. Additionally, staff is requesting $195,000 for an outside investigator to assist with conducting personnel and workplace investigations. And next up is our Fund 531 Workers' Compensation Fund, which is also managed by Management Services. Workers' Comp rates are collected from city departments and funds based on a percentage of budgeted employee salaries. For fiscal year 2223, Workers' Comp Fund will receive $8.8 million in total revenues to go against $10.5 million in appropriations. There are a few budget highlights I'd like to review within the Workers' Comp Fund. First, a recurring request of $352,000 to cover costs associated with CalPERS Industrial Disability Retirement Process, including independent medical evaluations, potential litigation, and any costs associated with administrative hearings for those retirements. Next are two insurance-related increases, including $238,000 towards the state self-insurance fee and $144,000 to cover the city's ongoing costs to secure excess workers' compensation insurance. Of course, despite these budget increases, staff is continuing with their ongoing efforts to reduce workers' compensation claims throughout the city. And these savings have resulted in $4 million in prior-year budget savings. Next, we'll take a look at our Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. So this fund is managed by the Public Works Department and provides for the scheduled replacement and maintenance of all vehicles within the city's fleet, including parts, labor, and fuel. The $8.9 million in projected revenues for this fund come from rental rates that are charged to city departments based on their depreciable valuable, depreciable value, sorry, it's late, of their vehicles, as well as the annual maintenance and fuel costs. Total appropriations of $16.9 million are proposed for Fund 532, with over $6.6 million of that amount going directly towards the scheduled replacement of depreciated vehicles and equipment in 2223. I should point out that the Public Works staff does a thorough review of each vehicle at the end of its life and only replaces those that are truly in need of replacement. Because so many of our vehicles remain in good condition, Public Works has been able to defer 76 fully depreciated vehicles at a savings to the city of $6.2 million. The Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund also has some capital spending planned for the 2223 fiscal year. We have the replacement of the tire carousel racks at the city yard for $200,000, the fleet vehicle lift equipment modernization for $100,000, and the ongoing replacement of the city's fuel system for $150,000. Moving on to our Office Equipment Replacement Fund, managed by Financial Services. This fund provides for the replacement of a variety of city assets, including furniture, machinery, and various safety tools and equipment. Similar to the Vehicle Fund, total revenues of $791,000 are collected from rental rates, with $665,000 in appropriations going towards the scheduled replacement of assets and equipment as needed. The $19,000 in capital items budgeted to be replaced this year include the fire department's chemical detection system, as well as the projectors at the Emergency Operations Center. And last but certainly not least is Fund 537, the Information Technology Fund. The IT Fund houses the entire IT department under the direction of our Chief Information Officer, Kevin Gray. These functions include administration, technology, infrastructure, data, and DevOps, GIS, applications, and enterprise resource planning. Fund 537 also provides for the replacement, maintenance, and upgrades of all of the city's computer and network equipment, as well as software. Overall, the IT Fund will collect $19.9 million in revenue for fiscal year 2223. Fund 537 receives its revenues from rates paid by all departments and funds based on the results of an annual based on the results of an annual I T cost of service study, in addition to one-time contributions from the General Fund. The I T Department is proposing total appropriations of twenty point three million dollars for the upcoming fiscal year, which includes a robust plan to invest seven point three million dollars in the city's technology infrastructure for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. As mentioned in my earlier presentation, five point eight million of these projects are proposed to be funded with American Rescue Plan funding, with the remaining project funding originating from the General Fund, B W P, and Development Impact Fees. A total of twenty-four I T projects are proposed in this budget and include the replacement of the police computer-aided dispatch system, uh, three-one-one integrations, mobile command post communication capability, uh, upgraded the Buena Vista Library audiovisual equipment, upgrades to conference room technology, um, ADA case management software, uh, updates of the fire and police websites, uh, the automation of accounts payable and payroll time entry, and our enterprise content management system enhancements. And a full list of these projects are available in, at the back of the Budget Request section in your budget book. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions about those specific projects as well. So I will proceed with our Special Revenue Funds. Uh, Special Revenue Funds are established by the city to account for revenues that are restricted for specific purposes. So these funds play an important role in the financial health of our city. Cumulative, cumulatively, they account for forty-six million dollars of this year's budget and they help support important needs like regional power supply, transportation services, and infrastructure, and affordable housing. Uh, managed by varying city departments, in total, the city has fourteen Special Revenue Funds that are requesting appropriations as part of this budget. And we'll review the remaining eleven of these as B W P staff already presented the Street Lighting, Titan Hydro Power, and Magnolia Power Plant Funds as part of their budget presentation. So let's start with our Transportation Funds. Uh, the city has four Special Revenue Funds which provide transit programs and transportation infrastructure, including the Burbank Bus Fixed Route Service, Senior and Disabled Transit, maintenance of the Downtown MetroLink Station, and a variety of street improvement capital projects, which will be discussed further next week during our infrastructure presentation. As shown here in the chart, combined appropriations for Burbank's Transportation Funds total just over eight point two million for twenty-two, twenty-three, with projected revenues of nine point two million. Now, Proposition A, Proposition C, Measure R, and Measure M each receive their funding from one of four separate Los Angeles County voter-approved quarter cent sales tax measures. While operating budgets remain largely the same from prior year, there are a couple budget highlights to point out in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, propositions A and C will receive, will continue their regular operations with no new budget requests. Uh, within Measure R, we have two hundred and forty thousand dollars budgeted for the First Street Bike Lane and a hundred and thousand for downtown pedestrian improvements. And our Measure M Fund will be funding one point eight million of the city's street paving program in addition to fifty thousand towards bridge improvements and repairs. We'll discuss all of these projects in depth next week when we present our twenty-two, twenty-three capital improvement program. Now, the last of the city's transportation funds is the Air Quality Management District Fund. Uh, A Q M D Fund receives revenues from state vehicle registration fees, which have a small portion dedicated for local return to cities in the South Coast Air Quality Management District. Uh, these funds are restricted to be used only for clean, clean air mitigation measures. The City of Burbank's share of these revenues is projected at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And consistent with prior years, the revenue will be reused to fund the city's rideshare program, which aims to reduce vehicle trips generated by city employees. The Measure W Fund one oh nine was created in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to account for revenues received by the city from the L.A. County Safe Clean Water Municipal Program. The program is funded through a special parcel tax of two and a half cents per square foot of impermeable area, which was approved by L.A. County voters in November of twenty-eighteen. Burbank receives about one point four million dollars annually from this revenue source, which is managed by the Public Works Department. While no major projects are proposed for the coming year, the Public Works Department is proposing to fund fifty percent of a civil engineering associate to be split with a sewer fund to address the continually increasing complexity and number of stormwater regulations. Up next is our Community Development Block Grant Fund, or C D B G. Uh, the city receives annual revenue from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. These funds are to be allocated towards activities that benefit persons of low and moderate income. The proposed C D B G budget is a little less than one point one million in revenues and appropriations for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The Community Development Department will be presenting the proposed C D B G public service and capital projects to the council at the May seventeenth City Council Meeting. So in addition to those county transportation revenues, the city also has two funds which receive revenues from the state of California that are dedicated to street maintenance and rehabilitation. These revenues are collected by the state through vehicle registration fees and fuel excise taxes and were roughly doubled when voters approved S B one in April of twenty-seventeen. The combined revenues for the Road Maintenance and Recovery Act, known as R M R A, and the gas tax total five point four million for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, with total proposed appropriations of just under five point one million. As I mentioned during our state budget discussion earlier, the governor is proposing to suspend the annual inflationary adjustment to the gas tax that is scheduled for July first in order to lessen the impact of rising fuel prices to California customers. But this revenue will be backfilled by State General Fund in order to make cities whole. Nevertheless, we'll keep an eye on that state budget, uh, process as we move forward over the next couple of months. So the R M R A Fund is proposing a budget of two point three million, which is entirely dedicated to street improvements for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. As required by the enabling legislation, the city must submit a list of projects approved by the city council to the state in order to receive these funds. The Public Works Department brought that report on the proposed street improvement projects to the city council on April fifth. And the proposed budget before you incorporates the direction and projects approved by the city council at that time. Within the gas tax fund, we are proposing to appropriate another two hundred and fifty thousand towards the street paving program. And gas tax funds also support the annual maintenance of the city's traffic signals and regulatory guide sign replacements. The Public Improvements Fund is funded by development impact fees charged to developers who bring new projects into our city. These revenues are restricted to funding projects that appear in the city's infrastructure blueprint or projects identified at the inception of the impact fee program. The Public Improvements Budget includes anticipated revenues and proposed appropriations of roughly one point four million for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Budget highlights for this fund include a five hundred and eighty-six thousand to modernize the ballfield lighting at McCambridge Park and two hundred and fifty thousand to upgrade the audiovisual technology at Buena Vista Library. So next up is the first of our city funds that provide affordable housing, which is the HUD Affordable Housing Programs Fund, one twenty-eight. Included within this fund is the Home Investment Partnership Program, which uses funds provided by HUD to increase the supply of affordable housing in the city. This fund also provides twenty permanent supportive housing vouchers, which are used to assist chronically homeless individuals. Included in this year's Fund One Twenty-Eight budget, um, is an estimated five hundred and sixty-nine thousand in continuum of care, permanent supportive housing, which will cover, cover M S N S, housing assistance payments, and administration. Staff is proposing for those administrative fees from this program to cover twenty percent of a new housing assistant position for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So that completes our Special Revenue Funds, but there are just a few remaining funds I want to cover before we wrap up this evening. So I will continue with the Housing Authority. The Burbank Housing Authority contains two funds with similar, similar goals of providing affordable housing to lower-income residents. Uh, we'll start first with our Section Eight Program, which provides rent subsidy payments directly to landlords on behalf of very low-income tenants. Of the twelve point twelve million dollar operating budget for this fund, ten point six million will go directly towards housing assistant payments and eight hundred thousand will go towards emergency housing assistance payments in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, with the balance used to cover the administrative costs of the program. Staff is requesting that eighty-three thousand of that Section Eight admin budget go towards funding eighty percent of that housing assistant position that will be split with the HUD Fund. The Low and Moderate Income Housing Fund lost its primary funding source with the elimination of redevelopment agencies. Uh, current revenue projections of four hundred and twenty-three thousand are from rehabilitation loan repayments provided to low and moderate income households and interest earnings on fund balance. Uh, staff intends to utilize this funding to increase homelessness activities within the City of Burbank up to a maximum allowable two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. C D D staff is also requesting to utilize an additional hundred thousand towards an affordable housing consultant to assist with monitoring existing affordable housing units and future housing units currently under development. I should point out that one other source of funds for the Low-Mon Housing Fund is the collection of its twenty percent share of the redevelopment loan repayments to the city. In fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the fund will receive its final loan repayment of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, those funds will be utilized for affordable housing projects and when identified, housing staff will return to the city council for project consideration. Our next fund, the Parking Authority, is managed by the Community Development Department's Transportation Division. Uh, this fund is anticipating revenues of just under six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in twenty-two, twenty-three and that revenue is generated mostly from parking permits and parking leases. The Parking Authority is anticipating, oh, I apologize. So proposed appropriations of one point two million dollars are needed to continue to fund the operations and maintenance of the downtown parking lots and structures, as well as the administration of parking agreements and parking permit programs. Now, within that one point two million dollars, uh, we are requesting a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital project for the continuation of the Orange Grove Parking Structure Restoration and Repairs. And the final fund this evening is the Successor Agency, which is a fiduciary fund maintained by the city. This means that while we are responsible for these monies, they don't actually belong to the City of Burbank. As part of the legislation that enabled, eliminated redevelopment agencies, successor agencies were established to oversee the unwinding of those redevelopment agencies. Our total successor agency budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three is right at seven point four million, most of which will be used to pay bonded debt service. In order to receive those dollars, the city needs to submit an annual recognized obligation payment schedule to the County Oversight Board and then subsequently to the California Department of Finance for approval. Uh, this process was completed in early April and the city did receive final approval from the Department of Finance. So this concludes my presentation on our remaining non-general funds. Uh, it's safe to say we've covered a lot of ground this evening as we've made it through the complete General Fund, all four of our utilities and our Internal Service and Special Revenue Funds as well. Uh, we'll be back next week to present our fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three capital improvement program, along with a review of discussion papers as needed. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have or take additional requests for follow-up.
Thank you very much, Ms. Becker. Very detailed, very lengthy, but needed nonetheless. Councilmember Frutos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, going back to, uh, page six, looking at the transportation funds.
Yes.
Um, when you talked about the Measure R, the downtown pedestrian improvements, a hundred thousand, does that include the scrambler crisscross sidewalk that we were talking about to make it safe for people crossing the street in downtown Burbank?
I am seeing no from our Public Works Director and C D D Director.
Oh, okay. I just remember we talked about as a council about the scrambler crosswalks. Like, other cities have picked up and Pasadena is a good example. They have scrambler sidewalks and something that the council wanted that we talked about for downtown Burbank.
I see Mr. Berkman making his way up here. Uh, we.
Well, the, uh, we'll get into detail the project next week, the downtown improvement, but it's, uh, basically the pedestrian improvements, um, at Bonnywood. And, uh, the money's requested because we, um, we're looking to do self-performing the work, but due to, uh, some, some field review staff looked to, um, uh, procure this, the services of, of, services of a design consultant to, to properly design it so we make sure we construct it properly. Um, the scramble crosswalk, Mr. Chriskey, I'm not sure which, which area we're talking about.
We talked about it in downtown and we talked about the First Street project. And we said when we get funding, we would talk about putting scrambler, uh, type sidewalks in downtown Burbank to increase pedestrian safety. So I was just curious, uh, when I saw downtown pedestrian improvements.
Okay.
But I can hold off.
We can circle back next week and, uh, have an answer for you.
And then my second question to circle back would be, uh, what's going on with Olive and Reese? I know that we talked about improving that section there for pedestrian, uh, safety. Um, I just want to make sure it doesn't fall off the radar because. By the Starbucks coffee shop there?
Olive Sparks Verdugo.
Yeah, I want to see where we're at for next year's budget for that neighborhood.
C D D with transportation planning and, and Public Works is working together to develop that, um, that plan and design.
Okay. I can hold off for next week. So we just want to see what we're at in the budget for next year, if it is even there.
Sure. Understood.
Thank you, sir. And then, Mr. Mayor, can I, oh, I'm sorry, on this one.
Yeah, let's continue on. Go ahead. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on that. We're talking about downtown street improvements. Uh, there was a discussion, um, a while back. I just want to know the money that we used to create the, um, dining spots in downtown where we, uh, put up barricades and all of that stuff. Did that come from COVID funding? Did that come from the street improvement funds? Where, where, where was that money from?
From the, uh, from the P bid, the downtown P bid.
Oh, okay. Oh, they, okay. Interesting. Um, I had a conversation a while back with Mr. Chriskey. Um, and there was some discussion in our, um, Complete Streets Plan, I think, about changing downtown San Fernando into one-way. What is, what, it was originally two lanes in one direction, then one lane in one direction? What is going on with that plan? Do we know the end result there?
No, that's actually something that's in development right now. We're looking to, uh, scope out the work with a consultant and, and analyze that and determine, uh, the impacts and make sure we tell the full story of, of possibilities of going one way or, or other and, uh, expanding outdoor dining, for example.
Is there a option at the end of that discussion to create it as a pedestrian-only? Is that still part of that discussion? I remember on Transportation Commission a few years ago.
No, no, we weren't looking to eliminate, uh, vehicle traffic from San Fernando Boulevard.
Okay. All right.
Well, I, I hope you come back with options. You go with Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. So I don't think that would eliminate this option that he just mentioned. I mean, back to the beginning, right? Back to the way it was at one time.
The Golden Mall.
The Golden Mall, exactly. Not too many people remember that.
What's old is new.
There's, that's, there's a few of us that still remember it. Uh, it worked fine, right? It worked fine for several years. Uh, it's, a new designer comes along, a new traffic engineer comes along and says, you know what? This doesn't work.
Understood.
And one of the reasons I bring that up is because there's a demand now for more walkable, green, you know, car-free areas.
Right.
Uh, a promenade, so to speak. Um, so please, I would, if that is coming back to us, I'd, I really would like to see that option.
Yeah, through, through the mayor, the bottom line is that we are looking to make sure we have the right balance of pedestrian and cyclists and, uh, vehicle and all roadway users for our, our entire street system. I mean, that's a big part of the Complete Streets. And downtown certainly is a, a, a major effort that we see that we want to, uh, implant, implement the right changes in the right, uh, places for all.
Okay.
We'll never get the perfect changes, but we'll get the best available.
We'll never make everybody happy.
Yeah, there you go. Exactly.
Well, not with that attitude.
That's an engineering fact. I hear it all the time. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
One more while you're still there, sir.
Yeah, sure.
Um, because of the horrible accident on Glen Oaks and, um, Andover, I'd like to, because all five of us are committed to do whatever we can. I'd like to see in the budget from your and C D D or whoever you're working with in partnership, what's in the proposed budget that we, the council, um, should either support or not support. But we're all interested, the five of us, on traffic calming measures on Glen Oaks. I'd like to see when you come back next week to see what options the council has in, in the. in the discussion, because we gave our word to the community that we wanted to make sure to do some type of traffic calming. So I'd see where in the budget.
Well, I wouldn't go as far as giving our word to the community.
I gave them my word, so by myself. This council member said that I would work as hard as I can to put traffic mitigation on, you know, on Glen Oaks.
Well, I appreciate that, council member, and we staff have heard it loud and clear. And this council may remember that with Police Department and CDD, we presented a thorough report regarding the safety of our city, specifically our hillside streets and Glen Oaks. And to that end, next week, you will hear about our Glen Oaks traffic signal improvement project, and that's, I think it's about 13 or 14 signals and pedestrian improvements, and many of the things that you're looking for that we're doing right now.
Perfect.
Yeah, whatever we can do to make it better, obviously.
Understood.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Okay. Page number eight, street improvement funds, alleys. Anything in the budget next year?
You guys are stealing my thunder for next week. But yes, sir, absolutely.
I'll wait till next week.
They will be -- I'm happy to report they will be in there.
All right. See, I'm on top of my A-game tonight. I'm awake. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Can we use any of the transportation monies to improvement of the parking structures? I know there's a request here for $450,000 for, right, the parking structure improvements? Can we use transportation funds for that?
I'm not sure without my project sheets for next week in front of me.
Okay, next week.
Next week, sir.
Next week. I mean, if we can, let's use the transportation money.
Certainly the parking fund we have, right? Mr. Prescott, would you like to elaborate?
That's dwindling, the parking fund. There is none. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Department. The plan to renovate that parking structure is already, I believe, budgeted from previous...
There's an additional amount for this year.
Additional amount for this year. We have a project that we're partnering with BWP on that will -- regarding EV charging stations that we're going to be bringing to you, that will provide the opportunity to bring additional revenue to that facility and make it look really great and functional.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Ms. Becker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all. Well, we're wrapped up with the budget, so we'll continue this to next week with our infrastructure presentation, and that's all we have for this evening. So thank you all for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. Excellent presentation to all the staff members, everybody that participated and stayed with us tonight. Okay, let's see, where's my... Okay, this is a time for brief council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments. Colleagues, who wants to start? Who wants to start? Councilmember Frutos.
Okay, going back to Wednesday, April 13, I attended the Board of Library Trustees meeting. Nothing to report out to my colleagues on the council. I attended our special council meeting regarding Pickwick on Monday, April 18. On Tuesday, April 19, I attended the Avion Tour and Ribbon Cutting. And then on Wednesday, April 20, I attended the Los Angeles County Civil Brand Commission for Institutional Inspections. And today I participated on the Policies Maker Council Call, which is my involvement in Washington, D.C., regarding our utility representing the electrical side as policymaker. And then I spent some time this afternoon with our city manager going over the 311 mobile app, and I also got a briefing by our Assistant City Manager. Out of 1,000 calls, Reader's Digest, since the project, you know, basically came up, they got an excellent tracking system. Out of 1,000 calls, they only have like 60 calls left that they're, you know, managing and mitigating. Most of the major calls that are coming in are for graffiti and homeless issues. And both the city manager and Assistant City Manager showed me how they're tracking, showed me how the different departments are involved, and it's constantly every day, hey, where are we at with this? So I did appreciate that time, but most important, I'm really glad that now the residents can physically, on their mobile app on 311, send it in, and it goes right to our city manager's office and working with Public Works. It's more efficient, and at the end of the day, it's about serving the residents, and I like the 311. Thank you, Mr. City Manager and Assistant City Manager.
And anybody, if you want to go into Judy's office and...
I've been there a couple times, Judy.
We'll do the tour for you.
Awesome screens, awesome screens.
Command central.
Let's get together during a ballgame or something. Colleagues, anyone else? Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. Wednesday, April 13, I attended a pedestrian safety discussion hosted by the Magnolia Park Merchants Association. The next day, I attended the Burbank Chamber of Commerce What's Brewing in Burbank, featuring Don Roth Lindell. Impressive discussion about the state of our utility. I know the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Springer were there as well. There was our special meeting last week, of course. Tuesday, I was with all of you at the Avion Tour and Ribbon Cutting. I also attended the Police Commission meeting on Wednesday, April 20. No reportable action from there. And lastly, on Saturday, I attended the ANCA Armenian Genocide Commemoration and Flower-Laying Ceremony. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor?
I attended a lot of the functions that we've already covered. On the 20th, this past Wednesday, the John Burrows High School March for Our Lives organization held a vigil for the 20th anniversary of the Columbine shooting. They had a nice presentation. We forget sometimes that these kids are living in a very different time, and, you know, being in high school, it's just one more added thing for them to worry about. It was interesting to hear from those kids. Speaking of high schoolers, I also attended the Radium Girls Play put on by Burbank High at the Colony Theater. And in fact, I got to speak with the kids in the Burbank High Drama Department. Those of you who don't know, the city employees here have a book club every month called Book Talk, and last year, we had a -- one of the books we read was Radium Girls, and it's a story about, you know, what happens in the workplace and the dangers of, you know, radioactive substances and how they didn't know it, and anyway. But the kids put on this play, it's really great, and they did it at the Colony Theater, so it was very professional, very professional. And I got to talk to the kids about, you know, the industry and workplace stuff and all of that. It was a great meeting with those kids. And then I attended the, on Saturday, the Armenian Genocide Remembrance. And on Sunday, I went to a musical event at Buena Vista Branch Library. They had a woman bilingual singer-songwriter, Natalia, and she did a great little program where she had like, it was like a call-and-response and song-and-dance kind of thing, and she writes all her own music. It was very fun. My son thoroughly enjoyed it and got up and danced a lot. So that was a great piece of programming, so thank you to Parks and Rec for putting that on. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Springer?
Yes, thank you. I attended the SCAG Housing Policy Leadership Academy, which I'm a member with, Maribel Layland and Alex Arseniega. And I attended the park board meeting, and I went to Bret Hart Elementary School. Craig Hemple invited me, former director of the recycle center, and he has set up a composting station there. So the kids compost their breakfast scraps and lunch, and the students manage that whole process, volunteers. So the principal, Martha Walter, was there, and Craig was there. I attended the Avion Ribbon Cutting, and I -- a gun stores discussion with Chief Albanese and a community member who was concerned about the number of gun stores in Burbank. And I attended a community garden Earth Day celebration at Pass and Chandler, and that was a lot of fun for the kids, planting, and we had edible bouquets, and it was interesting. And so, and that is planning on a soft opening Memorial Weekend, so of course, everybody's invited. And also the Armenian genocide flower-laying commemoration ceremony. And so that wraps it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I have to make one quick correction. Natalia Polis was invited to be a singer-songwriter through library services, not through Parks and Rec. Just wanted to make that correction.
There we go, because it was at the library.
It was at the library. I give credit where credit's due.
Thank you for that correction. I know the library director would have been very upset if he hadn't followed up. I guess I'm next. I attended the Easter service at the Salion Cathedral. The Archbishop invited me, and it was a great, great service. I enjoyed it tremendously. I also attended a LoSan meeting, and we had the special council meeting regarding Pickwick. We were all at the Avion Tour and Ribbon Cutting. After that, I was -- I went to the Ellen Show. On behalf of the council, I presented her a proclamation for 19 years of being in Burbank. She's closing out her show, so these are the last, like, 12 or so remaining shows, and I was honored to be on the show to present her proclamation. That was a great experience. Let's see. I called, made a comment on the BRT Metro's Planning and Programming Committee. I was hoping to hear more Burbank residents and representatives of Burbank talking in regards to against, you know, NOHO to Pasadena, but I was the only one. There were like 15 people from Eagle Rock, because they have kind of the same situation that we've got here. There were like 15 people talking on it. So I was impressed by them. What else? I attended the Chamber Monthly Meeting, the San Fernando Bay Cog Meeting. I also attended the Flower Lane, Armenian Genocide Flower Lane Ceremony here in front of City Hall. Sunday, I went to a court of, Eagle Court of Honor, that four eagles from my former troop, 209. So that was nice to be there. It's like old-home week for me, brings back a lot of memories. And today, before the council meeting, I had interviews by two third graders from Roosevelt Elementary School. That was our assignment to interview somebody that has lived in Burbank for at least 20 years, and just asked me several questions. It was exciting. They're both on the council at their respective school, Roosevelt Elementary. So, interesting. Anything else, colleagues? Yes?
I just wanted to take this opportunity to say happy birthday to Councilmember Springer, and I think I speak for all of us when I say I really appreciate your service.
Happy birthday. Now's the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do members of the council have any items to introduce? Going once, going twice? Okay, no? We now adjourn the meeting to Tuesday, May 3, for a joint meeting in the city, in the council chamber inside City Hall, 275 East Olive, in case some people forgot our address, on the second floor. This will be the first in-person public meeting in over two years. Yes, you heard me right, over two years. We look forward to opening the council chamber doors to the Burbank community. The public may view the meeting online or on television, and will be able to provide public comment in the following four ways: in person, by calling in directly to the council meeting, by leaving an e-comment on the city webpage, or by emailing the city council directly. Thank you, and good night. Be safe out there. We're adjourned.